All right, everyone, it is 2:00. So why don't we go ahead and get started? I'm going to call this meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order. We will start with our roll call, Madam Clerk. God bless you.
God bless you.
That's perfect timing, by the way. Madam Clerk?
Motion approved. Okay. Jeff Church.
Here.
Ellen Minetto.
Here.
Diane Nicolet.
Here.
Joe Rodriguez.
Here.
Beth Smith.
Here.
Angela Taylor.
I'm here.
And our student Ivy Batmal.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Our student trustee Ivy is here today, and so we're going to ask if you would lead us in the pledge.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. We're going to go right to Agenda Item 2.01. This is approval of consent agenda items. Today, we're looking at Consent Agenda Items 2.02 through 2.09. I know there were several questions that were submitted by the trustees, and we thank staff for responding to those questions. Trustee Church, I see your light on, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to pull 2.07 for discussion.
Thanks, 2.07. Got some questions on that? Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. That being said, with the exception of 2.07, looking for a motion to approve, if it's the pleasure of the board, Consent Agenda Items 2.02 through 2.06, and then 2.08 and 2.09. Looking for a motion, if it's the pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Nicolet. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I got two. I heard trustee Rodriguez first, probably because his voice is deeper, but we'll go with that. All right, so we have motion and second to approve those consent agenda items as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Those are, okay, opposed. I was going to, all right. Motion carries. Yes, motion carries, all right. All right, we're going to ask staff who are here for Consent Agenda Items 2.07, please get into position. Trustee Church, you have some questions?
Thank you. So basically, for the people in the audience that don't know, let me read what we're talking about. Approval of the Student Behavior Manual and direction to the superintendent to submit a report identifying the behavioral manual as the progressive discipline plan for the Washoe County School District. So that's the short version. The first problem or issue I see, if I'm reading the attachments right, this has to be submitted by October 15th. Is that true?
The, the first round of it, yes.
And then, I have a lot of concerns with it. Can we change it down the road? Are we stuck with this for a year? I mean, October 15th, so we're under a deadline. Three days. Math isn't my best subject, but three days. So what do we do if we don't like this, or we want to address it as a board or whatever? How do we do that?
We'll call the superintendent first, and you just want to question superintendent McNeil.
So I believe, and I see Dr. Lamarcas, I believe this isn't due to the state till November 1st. Is that correct?
Hi, further back, Paul Lamarcas. I believe actually the official date is November 15th, but we can double check on that.
Yeah, matter of fact, I stand corrected. October 15th, the trustees have to rule on it, and then November 15th. So we're still under a deadline. To me, the Student Behavior Manual is 62 pages long, and I've looked at it, but, I mean, I haven't had time to deep dive in it, but this seems like such an important subject of progressive discipline. And we have, that's such an important issue in the school district. We have a school essentially established for that whole purpose. I just can't discuss this or go over it, and of course, it's not fair to the trustees who didn't know I was going to pull this off the consent agenda or the public. What do we do? Can we postpone this? Can we, I mean, I'm looking for, but I'm just not comfortable. This is, this is a thing that the trustees have to look at in detail and have to render an opinion, and it's almost like our policy manuals, where we go through piece by piece. 62 pages of progressive discipline. Can anybody help me out on this and tell me, are we stuck with this, or can we look at it?
Superintendent, have your light on, should we respond?
Thank you very much, President Taylor. So trustee Church, this is an annual item. It's an item that is on a regular consent agenda item for our behavior manual and the matrix. It's been on the consent agenda for several years. What my suggestion would be is that if the board so chooses to approve this, and then at an appropriate time, we can do some small group briefings as far as having a deeper dive into the manual for those types of things that you would like to see. But this is a standing agenda item as far as consent. It's been on there before.
Yeah, but I wasn't here before, and we have new trustees that weren't here before. And it's, I mean, anybody that looks at it, if you look at your attachment, this is important stuff. You know, maybe it was consent when you had the same trustees year after year, but this is, this is such an important part of the overall purpose and everything of the district is how we deal with disciplinary actions. I know some places, I was in one class, and they said, well, we don't call it discipline. So I see a finger up. So did you want to call it?
I would, if it's okay.
Again. Dr. Lamarcas?
Paul Lamarcas, Chief Strategies Officer. I will, I understand that you have a decision to make. I can share with you that many stakeholders have been included in the revision of this particular manual. Every school and every school's progressive discipline team has reviewed the manual. They have been given opportunities to make suggestions for changes and/or whether or not within a particular building they're going to have an addendum or something they add to it. It's been reviewed annually by the Equity Diversity Task Force. It's been reviewed annually by the Council on Family Engagement. We work on specific revisions with small groups of administrators who are in charge of behavioral sort of discipline within the school buildings. And to Dr. McNeil's point, if, if you choose to allow it to be forwarded to the State Department of Education, we can certainly build in a review cycle this year with the board of trustees in case there are some demonstrable changes that you'd like to see considered for the following year.
If I may, trustee Church? Well, it sounds as though you like, I want to make sure I have my arms around it a little bit. You want more of an opportunity to review it, and, and not just to review it, but then if there, I mean, let's say review, because that's where it all starts, right? You review it, and then if there are recommendations, or questions, or changes, or anything like that, for those to be able to be adopted, is that, is that what your?
Yeah, I think, matter of fact, perfect. My question, I think, could we do it? Would it violate any policy, kind of little humor here, to cover it in the policy manual reviews in our, in our policy committees?
Well, it isn't a board policy, so I think if we, I think a review, I mean, having the conversation around the review, I think, if, say, if that's what, yes, the board said, hey, let's review it. I think we will want to set up a way to do that, whatever that means, because it isn't a board policy, but it doesn't mean it can't be reviewed. I would, I would probably recommend to not be doing board policy, because that's pretty restricted to that, and there's a whole lot of work to do on board policies. But I'm not saying I suggest it not being reviewed. I mean, that just might not be the place. But I think really your point is more, more that you want a chance to review and weigh in and ask more questions, right? Get more clarification. I don't want to put words in your mouth. I want to see.
Well, I think, I think, I mean, number one, it was on the consent agenda, so the fact that I pulled it off, a lot of the trustees maybe haven't looked at it in depth. And I think all the trustees have an obligation, and while nobody's actually speaking up, I think maybe all the trustees need to look at this and, and go through it. It's so important. So I'd love to see it on the, the policy thing would seem to be a good place to do it, because it's public forum, but we, we kind of deep dive into stuff, but I hate to tie up a regular board meeting with it. So I'm, you know, I'm struggling to figure out a way to do it, but I think the policy committee might be the best place, because it's, in essence, a derivative of a policy. I mean, it is almost a policy. It's just not written as a policy.
Okay.
And I see you're getting a whisper in the ear, whether that's appropriate or not, but anyway, help.
A whisper from who?
I was going to give you legal advice.
Oh, yeah. I was going, I didn't hear a whisper. So it's okay, though, let's, we have some lights on, so I want to hear from our colleagues. And if, and if there is some legal advice, which is, what do you say we do? We want to hear that.
Yes.
So that's going to always be appropriate, to get legal advice when it's necessary. So I want to make sure that's, that's clear. Vice President Minetto, I saw your light first.
For me, this is business as usual. This is something we trustees hand over to very capable people who do a really good job of including all kinds of what we need in there. So I feel like this is kind of getting into the weeds, as we've been saying lately. So that's what I think.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
We'll get back to what council added procedurally. I'm not sure, I was looking this way, listening to trustee Church. I don't know who was next.
Okay. Thank you, trustee.
Okay, trustee Nicolet, and then we'll go back to trustee Rodriguez.
I understand where my colleagues coming from, because this is very complex, and it's extremely important. I had the opportunity to attend an all-day training this Saturday, and this very topic was presented by several departments of the Nevada Department of Education. And I learned a lot. There's a lot of NRS, NAC that revolves around this. My thought is, I'm very comfortable with it. I'm familiar with it. I'm in education, so it works for me. Is it a perfect, is it a perfect plan? No. I don't think such a thing exists, but I think that we should move this along. And I do like the idea that superintendent McNeil suggested for small group informational sessions, because this is an important document, and it's important to our students, their families, and our teachers, and any staff members. So, but at this point, I would recommend us moving it along, and if you have the opportunity to take part in one of these trainings, I will tell you it's very enlightening, especially from a, not in particular what we do, but the laws in Nevada that, that really help guide this work. MTSS and restorative practices, really important information.
Thank you, trustee Nicolet. Trustee Rodriguez?
Pretty much took the words out of my mouth there. I do understand, and I, and I feel, trustee Church, that this is an important document, and I too would love to spend time on this, go more in detail into it, but I also do trust what Vice President Minetto said, kind of get into weeds. We do trust the district and the people that do this day in, day out, and I understand this, this is an annual thing. So I do get that, you know, revisit policy and procedures and just kind of move it along, you know, revisit, revisit, or revision date, but I do think this is an important item, and I would too, would love to, you know, have a day on this, because this is an important item.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Procedurally, what council was pointing out, NAC, trustee Church, is that the board policy can, this, this, according to statute, I believe, or the NDE perhaps, it needs to be approved by the board, right? And that's the annual cycle of it. The board policy committee is sitting as a committee, not as a board, and so it will need to be approved at this level. It sounds like, I'm trying to get to what it is that your objective is.
I think I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, okay, well, hang on, hang on. And, and your, and your objective being that you want more of an opportunity to kind of weigh in? Is that, is that what I'm, what I'm trying to, I'm just trying to get my arms around where?
I think the whole group. I think this is something for a deep dive, not just me reading it, giving me more time. I think it's something like, I just learned, we have all kinds of state laws and training. So essentially, what my motion would be, would be to say that.
If you want to make it, you certainly can.
Okay.
At this point, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 2.07.
Mm-hmm, that's it, 2.07.
And direct staff to hold a small group meeting or meetings as needed within the next three months. That way, by the way, nobody has to attend. I mean, those of you that have had this and understand it or don't care, fine, but then the rest of us can, can get. I'd love to have the briefing from legal and everybody on everything.
To go down a little deeper. I don't think, one, I will say this, first of all, there's a, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You're second in motion, trustee? Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Church, second by trustee Rodriguez. Let's have some discussion. My only piece on that is a couple of things. One is, I want to say is not, I don't want to say nobody didn't care. I think that, I don't want to put that out there, because I really don't think that's the case of anyone here. Some of us are a little more familiar, either because of our background or because we've been on the board longer, and, and so on, and others like you. Hey, that might be a little weedy for me, so I want to pull that, because I don't think that's, I don't think that's the kind of thing we want to put out there on the public record. I don't think anybody's sitting around this table that doesn't care.
Yeah, I retract that.
So, no, no, thank you. I wasn't, I wasn't trying to admonish. I'm just trying to say, look, I don't, I don't want the record to say that we have trustees sitting here not caring about work. That's not the case. I don't, I don't, I haven't seen, I haven't felt that with any of our colleagues. I would, my, my only concern about what she says is, is maybe the time limit as much, simply because there's so much ahead of us right now that is imminent, right? We know we are appointing trustees. We know how some, we have, we have several special meetings coming up between appointing trustees, other business, we have to get started on superintendent search, and we have holidays, and we know we're not going to have all of our meetings and holidays. So that's, I, I think going in deeper and getting to it more, a review sometimes is always good for me, too, so I don't mind that at all. I just don't want to tie directing the superintendent, because that's really the only one we can direct, right? Is the superintendent, to do it. And so that's a friendly, I would ask, to your motion, we change it to superintendent. And maybe restrict that, but maybe it being before it comes back up for annual review next year. You see what I mean? That way, it's, we're not in the same position as getting reviewed, because we haven't that time yet, but it doesn't say, hey, we got to do it by January, because that just may not fall in there.
Yeah, I'm open for a friendly amendment, changing the staff to superintendent. I think a year's too long.
No, I just mean before a year.
Maybe six months? Maybe a six?
Well, it gets, it gets reviewed once, it gets approved once a year.
Well, then we might as well approve it and take out the time limit. I mean.
Oh, no, no, because we want to, we want to review it again. I mean, I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I'm hearing other comments, it's like, I think people are saying, yeah, let's jump back into this thing before it comes back up, so we can, yeah, I don't, I don't hear any resistance, so let's, let's jump back in before it comes back up. I, I wouldn't say a year, I would just take out the three months.
I'm open for.
But it's your motion.
I'm open for a friendly.
So the friendly, we know there's one, the friendly you accept, and then the seconder, you accept that we, staff has changed to superintendent, and then the other friendly that I just, just suggested, we take out the three months.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But the three-month timeline, but the intention being, before it comes back up for approval again, we don't, we want to have had that opportunity for, you know, deeper conversations and.
Well, that, that would be like 11 months and 29 days. How about six months? How does it go?
It's your motion, so I want you to make your motion whichever way. That was just a recommendation on my part.
Yeah, well, I'll amend the motion to say, within six months, and changing the staff to superintendent.
Okay, so we, the superintendent's making a suggestion as well, just on the timing piece. I think the superintendent part, we've, we've changed, we're in agreement. Go ahead.
So how about we change, if you're good with this, by the end of this school year?
Which would be, by definition.
End of May, right?
By the, by the end of the school year, by June.
Oh, June.
Okay, I can live with that.
And the way that I say that is because that way we have consistency, which is important on this.
Okay, or that way, the, the, the practices aren't changing mid-year. Is that what you're saying, superintendent?
I would like to also, excuse trustee Nicolet, add that I like that idea, because it will provide us, I think, with some data on, on things that are working and things that aren't working, things that staff want to change, things that staff want to keep. And so if we make that toward the end of the school year, 2022, I think that'll give us data that we would be looking for.
Okay. And I, one question just popped into my head. Are there any changes in this document, for purposes of discussion of the, are there any changes in this document different from last year's?
Tristan McAlney, yes, there's, there are a few. There are some philosophy pieces that were changed, just to align better with current practices, and there were some recommendations, or there's some things put into the matrix to change the number of total suspension days per infraction to align better with current practices, with best practices.
Let me, let me add, every two years, there's a legislative session, and there was some major legislation that was passed, so the manual does reflect some of those changes, even though those, most of those changes still need regulation from the Nevada Department of Education, and those are not ready yet for prime time. Some of the other changes go into effect beginning next fiscal year, so those are in the manual as well.
So that actually adds to fuel to the fire of saying, yeah, let's, let's review this in small group for those that want to attend, and obviously, I'd like it sooner, but I'm, I can, I realize the way the board's leaning, so I'm more than happy to go with the, by the end of the school year, which doesn't mean we have to wait until the week before.
Right. That's a no later than.
Yep.
Kind of, kind of a thing. I just don't want it to, to, you know, as I said, there's some imminent things right now that we don't want to supersede, but it should be no later than. And I, and I did hear, I think the not changing practices in the middle of a school year is certainly something to be said for that, for the practitioners, for families, for students. I certainly think there's something to be said for that as well. So I think you're, I think we're okay motion-wise. JJ, you want to kind of read where we are? There are a couple of friendlies in there, and then trustee Church and trustee Rodriguez is, since you're the first and the second, or this makes sure we're in alignment.
That the Board of Trustees approves Consent Agenda Item 2.07 and directs the superintendent to conduct small group meetings on the document by the end of the school year.
That's good with me.
Should we put the year to be specific, school year, the?
I mean, we can. I think it's understood.
Yeah, but it's okay. Specificity is not a bad thing, right? All right, just a, okay. All right, you're good, you're, you're, a couple of friendlies there, trustee Rodriguez. Okay, any further discussion? Any public comment on this, JJ? All right, all right, hearing none, then. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries. The records show that it is unanimous. Thank you very much. And good, if you'd get to jump in and just go a little deeper on that, so thank you for that, trustee Church. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 3.02. I mean, 3.01, excuse me, 3.01. Sorry, sorry, sorry. All right, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action to Approve the Washoe County School District 2020, oh, I'm sorry, by the way, that, that was a consent agenda, and again, those questions that were submitted by our colleagues, those, those questions and responses are made, are made a part of the public record, just so everybody knows. Yes, sir?
Just, so we don't miss something? Do we have any public comment on consent before we move to 301?
No, I did ask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, all right. Agenda Item 3.01, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action to Approve the Washoe County School District 2021-2022, A Major Projects Program in the amount of $41,800,000 for a future elementary school in the Rio Wrangler area, as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee. This is for action, and before us, we see Mr. Cersei, who's our chief capital projects and facilitators officer, office, wait, facilities management officer, and?
Teresa Golden.
That's right. Dang it, Teresa, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. And Ms. Golden's back to see us. The floor is yours. She's golden.
Excellent, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Adam Cersei. We're here with a recommendation from the Capital Projects, Capital Funding Protection Committee. Two weeks ago, we met to present and discuss options for consideration regarding existing overcrowding and future growth at our elementary school levels in the southeast Rio, southeast Reno, Rio Wrangler area. Direction was received from the board to proceed with the option for construction of a new elementary school. The next step in a process of building a new elementary school is to present consideration of funding to the Capital Funding Protection Committee, which we did, and they approved that rec, that staff recommendation, approved, to be recommended to the Board of Trustees. So that's really what we're here to do today, and this is the exact information that was presented to the committee and was approved. So we're going to see some stuff that we saw two weeks ago, just sort of as a, it was more of an orientation to the Capital Funding Protection Committee. They also received the presentation that the board received on September 28th as context for them regarding sort of the need for the new school, and in this presentation, you'll see some of that same content. So just diving in, a little background that we saw two weeks ago. The board has approved the design, and that has been completed. Pandemic obviously threw things up in the air a bit, and we returned here just two weeks ago with the recommendation to move forward on construction. This is what we concluded with two weeks ago. Option two, as it was two weeks ago, to initiate construction. This is all the same information that you saw two weeks ago, and that the Capital Funding Protection Committee saw, in addition to the full attached presentation from the board. So this was more of an orientation for them to understand how we got to the point that we were at on September 30th. Also, kind of a high-level summary of the need, the significant existing enrollment demand. This, again, is regarding the three elementary schools, Brown, Double Diamond, and Poliquitas, the existing enrollment, the existing capacity, and the projected enrollments. All the same content that we saw two weeks ago, underpinning the decision of the board to proceed with construction. So this is my last slide, and then we'll transition into a much more detailed description of the project and the estimated and recommended budget from our Director of Design. But just to zoom in a little bit, give everybody their, their orientation, we're down in southeast Reno. You can see the stars in the existing schools, Poliquitas, Double Diamond, Brown, of course, right down the street from Damone Ranch High School on Rio Wrangler Parkway, that new elementary school star. You can see on the left, zoomed in further, there's several dozen acres of future residential units to be built. There are two roadways coming off of Rio Wrangler, and we're several hundred yards set back from Rio Wrangler Parkway. You can see that parcel highlighted in blue is owned by the school district, has been acquired and master planned with the developer down there, and we're about, we're completed with design, ready to go into construction. So I'll turn it over to Teresa to walk you through some more details on the planned project.
Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir. Trustee Church?
Yeah, thank you. I should have probably interrupted you before, but procedurally, I do have some questions for legal on the agenda item and how it's worded, and so I did submit this in advance, I think, so hopefully he, he got a copy of that. The agenda item reflects the proposal, and I'm going to just quote one sentence, "as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee." So then we look at the meeting agenda item and the minutes of the Capital Funding Protection Committee, and, so most people don't have that up in their computer, but I looked at it, and in the minutes, there were no minutes, there was no video as of a couple days ago within the normal open meeting law requirements. However, I understand there's exceptions where you can add things later, and I'm not an expert on that. Thus, thus my question. So on the agenda item, we're basing it on the motion or recommendation of the committee, but I was never able to see the motion of the committee. There was no minutes. It was not an attachment. To me, logically, it should have been an attachment to our agenda to see what they voted on, what the vote was, and I'd really have liked to see the discussion thereof. So when I look at the agenda for the Capital Funding Committee that met September 30th, 2.04, Presentation, Discussion, Budget, and Costs for the Construction of a New Elementary[1722.88] and Costs for the Construction of a New Elementary School, it goes on to say Rio Wrangler Parkway, for information and discussion only. So they never voted on that. Then, when you look at 2.05, it says Discussion and Possible Action for the Recommended Approval of essentially $41,800,000, A Major Projects Program, see Attachment A. So then I look at Attachment A, and all that is, is what's called WCSD Capital Improvement Program. It's a Funding Initiative List of Projects. Nothing in there tells me that, that myself as a trustee or the public would understand what that's for. Nothing in there says vote on this bond issue, et cetera. So I'm, my concern is that this is way too vague, but I could be wrong. I'm just a trustee. I'm not an attorney. So I'd like to ask Legal to weigh in on it.
Okay, I think he's looking to be brought up to speed. I'm going to restate just so I follow you. So what you're saying, Trustee Church, is that at the Capital Funding Protection Committee, they, they received all the information about the proposed project and so on and so forth, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then it, it looks as though that project in and of itself was a part of the A-list for projects. That's, that individual project, Rio Wrangler, was, was placed on the, the A-list, if you will, right? And then the A-list, there is a record of the A-list being approved. If, I know, I'm not trying to make it A-list, B-list, but you know what I mean. There is record of the A-list being approved, but there's no specific record of that specific project being approved. And, and is that clear enough?
Kind of, sort of. I mean, I'll let Legal kind of look at it and see if he thinks it meets the criteria. But 2.04 specifically dealt with Rio Wrangler Parkway School.
You're talking 2.04 on the, on the Capital Funding Protection Committee agenda?
On the Capital Projects.
Uh-huh.
Information Discussion. Then on 2.05, there's nowhere in the agenda item or in the attachment where any reasonable person would understand that they were voting specifically for Rio Wrangler. And then on our agenda item today, it talks about the motion as approved by the capital funding. Well, that motion's nowhere to be found. I looked and looked. It's nowhere to be found. It may be up there now. I'm told it might be up there now. I can't find it. But it definitely wasn't up there within the three business days or whatever. So, yeah.
My, my reading of that was that it was because it was included on A, but that may not be the case. So let's find out. And even if it was because it's included on A, because there is record of them approving A, right? And even if that was the case, going back to something you ended with, is that clear enough? And do we want, do we want to make that more clear so that people can follow? Am I, am I putting that kind of?
Yeah, I think, I think more or less. Again, it's subject to Legal, and I also see another light on.
Okay, I see. I got it, I got it.
Not that I'm opposed to a new school in my district.
No, no, I, I hear what you're saying. I just want to make sure I hear what the concerns are, so we make sure we get answers to those. Okay? Dr. Nicolet, and then Legal, I know you're weighing in and looking to see what's what, so.
I too wondered, and so I watched the video. It's just a little over an hour, and...
So there is video?
Yes. It was...
Not at the time.
Okay, well.
I watched the video. And, and actually, I think the committee did an excellent job of asking some very difficult questions, and they were answered, I think, very fully by staff. And the motion for 2.5 passed unanimously after great discussion. And there was discussion on 2.04 that was discussion only about how that, why that was. And basically, it was to update the committee on the presentation that staff had given to the Board of Trustees. So there's really nothing to vote on, because we had already approved it and sent it to capital funding. So it is true, 2.4 was only, 2.04 was discussion, but then 2.05 was unanimously passed for the $41 million after lengthy discussion, good discussion.
Okay.
Just for, for the record, I believe, subject to review, that I discovered the fact that the video was not there on Sunday and/or Monday morning, brought it to the attention of the administration, and then it was placed up there.
Well, maybe so. And that's okay. But I guess the, the point is, it wasn't there when you looked. It was there when she looked. And so therefore, she can answer it and give the clarity in that. And what, what you may want to just do is, as that happens and comes up, is, is see, hey, if that's up, and so that you're up to date on the most current. Because otherwise, it seems like you're saying something that's not true. And I know that's not your intention. No, no, I, I'm not accusing you of that. No, that's not your intention. But she was able to see it and then answer those questions, which I, which I think was important. So I'll get back.
We don't vote on 41 million and have it, we don't vote on 41 million and then have an open meeting law.
Yeah, no, there's no, no open meeting law involved, because clearly it was there. And so that's the thing, I just want to make sure that we're clear that we don't put that out there as though there is something happening that's misleading, when in fact, there is not. I mean, that's the piece that I think we want to make sure that that...
Well, except, I do want to clarify, I'm pretty sure it wasn't there...
Oh, I believe you.
Thursday at 9:00 a.m.
No, I believe you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, this isn't questioning whether you saw it or not by, by any means. That, because I didn't look for it. I don't know when it was there. But we do know it's there now. And again, I don't, I want to make sure that, that the record is clear in that it isn't something that's being hidden or that's not there, that it wasn't available when you looked, whenever that may have been, right? But it, but it was available at some point, and so we're able to get that clarity and answer those questions. I think that's important.
And I see Mr. Lombardo's looking at it. If, if it would suit him, if he's ready, great. But if not, maybe we could cover a different agenda item and come back.
No, no, I think, I think we're here where we are. And I think, I think that this is an important point, because I do think that the point that I thought you were making originally, which I think was a part of what you were making originally, is that even though that's the case, is that clear enough for that line to be followed? I mean, I think that's, that's a conversation that, not that I think that we should, we should, because the information is there, and so I'm certainly supportive of, of it, because we all know we need a school there. But futuristically, there's something we can do to make it more clear. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing your, your question, is that vague or is that clear enough? And that's part of what we need Legal to weigh in on as well.
I guess the big picture, look at the whole thing.
Okay, Legal? Uh, I'm Legal. Sorry, counsel?
Mr. Cersei, is it correct that to, sorry, I just need to ask you some questions I need to understand. So I was at capital funding, but I don't think it's appropriate for me to say what occurred, so I'm going to ask you what occurred.
No problem.
So 2.04, if I recall correctly, that was a matter related to the Rio Wrangler Elementary School, but not for action, correct?
Correct. It was literally this exact presentation minus the final slide, which was the attachment to, associated with 2.05. It was agendized for information and discussion only.
Okay. And then in 2.05, again, I was there, but I'm going to ask you, that the Rio Wrangler project was included in the projects that were listed, correct?
Correct. This is the Attachment A associated with item 2.05 from the Capital Funding Protection Committee meeting. You'll note the only item associated with the 2122A Major Project Program is the Southeast Reno Area Elementary School, RNC's Rio Wrangler area, for $41.8 million of construction, FFNE, and professional services funding.
And if the agenda title did not mention a major projects program or the vote of the Capital Funding Protection Committee, if you were to read it, would you still understand that $41 million was being spent on an elementary school in the Rio Wrangler area? Or it's proposed that $41 million is being, to be spent on a elementary school in the Rio Wrangler area?
The agenda title itself indicates $41.8 million associated with the 2122A Major Project Program and associated attachment. It takes the reference to the attachment, which clearly refers to a Southeast area elementary school, to understand. Oftentimes, we have proposed multiple different funding line items associated with a, a program. This particular action only entailed one project, but there's been many instances where we've had multiple line items and refer to it as a, a single program of action.
And was that attachment attached to the board agenda, this agenda? Or was it made a part of support material to this board's agenda?
It was, yes.
Okay. And are you, you're probably not, but are you aware of the timing of posting of minutes related to the open meeting law?
I'm not certain of the requirements of the open meeting law relative to the posting of minutes.
Okay.
No.
That's all right. JJ, would you know how long you have to post minutes to the open meeting law?
I believe it is 45 days.
Forty-five days for board approval and 30 days to make them available to the public. Does that sound correct?
Yes.
And does that also apply to recordings?
I believe recording is just 30 days.
Okay. So there's no requirement in the open meeting law that these minutes are made available for this item? It's, the public is on notice that they are considering, they, meaning the Board of Trustees, would be considering the A-major projects, which is attached as support material, which includes a $41.8 million future elementary school in the Rio Wrangler area. And as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee, let me ask you this question, Mr. Cersei. Did the Capital Funding Protection Committee approve this item?
They did, yes.
And if I was to ask your colleague sitting at the table, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, would, thank you, would Ms. Golden say the same thing?
Yes.
Thank you. I think you can rely on your staff to tell you what the Capital Funding Protection Committee did. If you can't, then there's probably a bigger issue here. So I think there's a clear record here.
I appreciate that, counsel. And I, and also that, that at some, at, at some point, after Trustee Church looked for it, that information was available, and Trustee Nicolet was able to, to watch it and really could yourself have answered, have answered those questions. It, it, so it, it appears, Trustee Church, I want to make sure you have that question answered before we go forward.
Yep. Yep, that was, I don't want to open meeting law violation, so that's why we put it on the record. Thank you.
Yep, no, nowhere near one. Nowhere near one. So we're going, why don't we go ahead and continue with the presentation?
All righty. Thank you. Teresa Golden, Director of Planning and Design for Capital Projects. So getting in a little bit more detail to our site for Rio Wrangler, it really is a fantastic site in regards to pedestrian and bike access. As Adam mentioned, it sits sort of back behind this housing development. It's the Damone Ranch Village 26. And it overlooks the wetlands in the area in the back. The playground overlooks the wetlands. And there is a walking path that goes all the way around the school that you can see in the green. In addition to that, we are proposing a pedestrian bridge on the east side or the bottom that you see in the blue. That bridge, basically, we'd like to just do that for improved connectivity for pedestrians and to hopefully reduce car traffic into the school. That will, will require an additional review and permit for, from the city of Reno. It will need to go to Planning Commission, but that is something that we're going to propose and is included in our, our drawings at this point. As Adam mentioned, there's two main roads into the school. There's Stepping Stone on the bottom and Green Pasture on the top. Both of those roads are two-lane, two-way, and they both have sidewalks on both sides. So again, great pedestrian access for the kids. That housing development in the middle just has the two main exits and entrances into that development. And so there's no driveways that are going to be NP traffic into the, those two main streets. And the off-site developments that we're looking at doing are to extend the turn pockets off of Rio Wrangler onto Stepping Stone, both east and westbound, and then adding the two pedestrian flashers at the intersection, one at Stepping Stone and another one just west of Green Pasture. The site itself is a nine-acre site, and Damone Ranch has provided the building pad for us, so it is ready to go for construction. Yes.
Trustee Nicolet?
Thank you. So my son and daughter-in-law and two grandchildren live in this area, and I happen to know Rio Wrangler not only is very busy and fast, that's the horses, and then so are the cars. So are there going to be stop signs at those two entrances there off of Rio Wrangler? Because you guys, that's a crazy busy street.
Stop signs on Rio Wrangler...
No, I'm sorry, stoplights.
Is at Rio Wrangler itself.
Yeah, on Rio Wrangler, into that subdivision school area.
No.
How do we get those? Because you guys, that's, those, those are babies walking. You hear me? I'll, I'll stop now. How can we get those?
Yeah. I take that one.
So this, Rio Wrangler Parkway is defined by the Washoe County Regional Transportation Commission as an arterial roadway, really intended to move traffic more expeditiously in and out of the community. And as a part of the Cherokee Meadows Regional Master Plan, there is a policy whereby schools are not allowed to be constructed at a location such that it would require a school speed zone to be placed on an arterial roadway. So think about maybe some areas that you're familiar with where that's become problematic, sort of because of a chicken and egg master planning. Think like McCarran Boulevard at a couple of locations, maybe over by Gom, Los Altos by Sepulveda. Instances like that that have proven problematic to the community at large have resulted in this regional policy. To meet the concerns, try to meet the concerns that you're talking about, we have these extended turn pockets, so these protected medians, as well as the sidewalk improvements and the pedestrian-activated flashers that we're going to be installing at existing crosswalks on this roadway. But a traffic signal on Rio Wrangler Parkway would be something that would have to go through the Washoe County RTC and/or the city of Reno in this case, and is not something that's proposed by the school district here.
I get that, and it, it is complex. And I'm sure the, the folks at Rio Wrangler going to and from work and et cetera would want to strangle me for wanting stoplights. And I get that, but wow, wow, that street is, it's, I believe it's, went from 45 to 35, which was good because it was 55 and, and really 45. And now it's 45, and it's really supposed to be 35. You get human nature. How do we pursue that? Because I just got to speak up for all those babies that are going to be crossing that street.
You know, I, I would like to just reiterate Teresa's description of the regional path connectivity. There's really excellent sidewalks and off-street pathways. There are signalized intersections just a couple hundred yards, one direction or the other from this, these crossing locations. You know, ultimately, it's important to balance these concerns with transportation, bike and ped access, and then, of course, the ingress egress of the student community. We feel we're striking an appropriate balance here. I guess I failed to mention the school speed zones that will be located on both of those ingress egress roads, the Stepping Stone and Green Valley Circle. But those, those pedestrian flashers are quite prominent at those existing crossing points, and they're at existing crosswalks. It's similar to what you've seen on Steamboat Parkway and Veterans Parkway and Rio Wrangler Parkway in this area.
Maybe I'm asking the wrong question then, because it just dawned on me, this is not an area of expertise. So, so the homes that already exist that are, I guess, would say south of Rio Wrangler, they'll go to Brown? Those kiddos won't be crossing Rio Wrangler? Maybe that's my question is, is, yeah.
Excellent. So should this proceed today? We will take the permanent zoning of the school to the Zoning Advisory Committee. That has not been set. This slide depicts a potential zoning boundary, and it is possible that students on the, call it south side of Rio Wrangler Parkway are zoned for this new elementary school. And, you know, that, there's often conversation with staff regarding transportation. You know, if you're within the walk zone, let's say, but you're separated from a school by an unsafe crossing arterial roadway, for example, often transportation's provided in circumstances such as that. So I think depending on exactly where the zoning ends up, and depending on what the analysis from the Transportation Department results in, these students may end up being zoned for Brown after all on that far side. And if they're not, and if they're asked to walk across Rio Wrangler Parkway, then there might be an opportunity to consider providing transportation for them.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Not, you at least know where I'm coming from now. And, and I'll continue to watch this project, because it's very exciting. And I know the community wants it.
It's a very, I appreciate the question. It is a busy roadway, and we've thought about this long and hard and tried to balance the, all, all these various constraints and needs of the community. And there's a, there's a number of, I think, solutions.
Please go ahead, Sue. Continue.
Thank you very much. So Adam, I'm just wondering, I mean, obviously, I know that area very well myself, and yes, the horses are very...
and yes, the horses are very fast. But I'm not, so let me just put that on the record. I'm wondering if, as we progress with this project, if it wouldn't be such a bad idea, and I know she does this anyways, but to get MJ Cloud involved with it? Because a lot of times, the further in advance that she has notice of that, we can start working on the programs as far as, you know, whether it's a walking school bus or something such as that as well.
Point taken. We have included the police thus far, you know, in our Safe Cross to School Plan, but certainly can do that as soon as we receive approval. So if they've got any additional ideas for safety, that'd be great.
Thank you. Please go ahead, continue.
Thank you. So wanted to talk a little bit about our prototype design for this school. We are calling this our double-L design, and it is the prototype we've installed in our past three new schools. But there are some changes that we've made in regards to both the building and the site, so I just wanted to touch on those. And the first one is the addition of a shade structure in the playground on the backyard. We thought it important to try and provide some shade for the kids, and that does include some picnic tables along with the shade structure. So, you know, that could be used for play, but also outdoor learning. We've also, we've already talked about the off-site improvements and the pedestrian bridge. But we're also doing a hybrid HVAC system at this site. And the reason for that is typically we do what we really would call 100% geothermal system at our other new sites that we've been doing. And so that geothermal system supplies what we would call sort of this, just this right temperature tepid water into the building to heat and cool. But it has to be just at the right temperature in order for it to be energy efficient. And at this site, the ground temperatures are really, really high. And so we have to add a cooling tower to the system in order to get that temperature, the water temperature to the right temperature. So that is the reason for the hybrid HVAC system here. And then lastly, we are looking at a window system change. The windows that we've been designing for these new schools are kind of a semi-custom design, and the reason for that is we are trying to do so much with these windows in our schools, and we've been working on a more efficient economical design. And so that's the reason for the window system change. The table that you see below is some information that we have been asked or recommended to include by our 2020 external audit that was mentioned earlier. They asked us to provide some square foot per student information compared to our other elementary schools. So we did go back and include, back to our oldest school types, which we call, the oldest one is the baby boomer. Those were about 63 square feet per student, and we are now up to about 126 square feet per student, which is pretty significant, but there's a few reasons for that. The first one really is building codes in general have changed, requiring, you know, more square footage, specifically probably ADA is the biggest reason for that. But the biggest driver really is our education specifications that we're designing our buildings around now. Our new 21st century education specs that have been, you know, reviewed and approved by the board, and that's what we're designing around. And those specs include spaces that are obviously additional square footage. So we have public spaces such as a PTA kitchen, community rooms, and then we have additional group rooms, our steam labs, our new media labs, which tend to be significantly, you know, larger than a typical library might be. So those really are the types of spaces that we have added to our new schools that, well, they do make a nice difference in our schools. So that's the main driver for the increased square footage. So on to schedule. If this project is approved today by the board, we would propose to take our plan straight into the building department for permitting and bidding. We're looking about a 15-month construction schedule being awarded probably around January and looking at a substantial completion in May of '23 and opening the school in August of '23. This is a single, what we call a hard bid project with one general contractor. We have been working really hard to improve our bidding documents because we've had three times to try this now, and we keep using those lessons learned from previous schools. So touching on the budget and those unique changes that we've made, the scope changes that I just talked about. We wanted to sort of put dollar figures to those changes so that we could see how it affects our budget overall. As you can see, the total estimated deduct in our scope is about $850,000. It's pretty significant. And as you can tell, that is pretty much a direct result from that hybrid HVAC system, which is upfront costs significantly less. But, you know, want to let you know that we have done quite a bit of analysis on those systems, and even though this is a pretty good reduced price for upfront costs, our long-term costs for utilities and maintenance are much lower for a full geothermal system. So that is why we have been using those systems. Market impacts on the budget. As you all know and have heard, I'm sure, every day for the past year, a lot of different impacts on the budget in regards to material costs. And we typically hire third-party consultants to do detailed estimates for us for our new schools. In this case, we did not do that, really because we didn't have the luxury of time. We wanted to get this project in front of the board and in front of capital funding as soon as possible so we could try and retain the best price possible as soon as possible. So that being said, we did have a lot of conversations with O'Connor Construction Management, a firm we do work with, and they have given us some good recommendations. And their recommendation for this school is to increase it from about 10% to 16% escalation from Inskeep Elementary School. The elevated material costs and supply chain issues, they are telling us, they are anticipated those to last well through 2022. So this brings us to our proposed allocation slide for this Rio Wrangler project. But I do have a lot of additional information here on past projects as comparisons. Again, this was a recommendation to provide more information for comparables on our past schools. So I have shown our past three new elementary schools here. And typically, we will get our funding, our allocations, in three different buckets that you see here: construction, furniture fixtures and equipment, and then the last one being professional services. And I did just want to touch on professional services really quick to let you know what is included in that, because it's a lot. Commissioning is one of the consultants that we use for professional services, and that is a consultant that comes in and tests all of our major building systems like HVAC, lighting, fire sprinklers, to make sure they're running correctly and to optimum levels before the building opens. Construction special inspections is another one. That is a consultant that comes in and does detailed inspections during construction, such as measuring densities of the dirt before you pour a pad and checking to make sure welding connections are correct. And all those really kind of really detailed things that happen during construction. Then we have a roof inspector that we hire, and they do oversight. They're on the site daily when the roof is installed to make sure the roofing is installed correctly. Roofing's expensive. It's a really big deal that it's installed correctly, so that's why we have a roof inspector. And then we have a construction manager, and they really do manage the daily, day-to-day construction activities, manage all of the subs, you know, as an owner representative. They are attending all those meetings, weekly meetings for construction, and that is their main role. And then lastly, last but not least, our internal salaries and benefits come out of that professional services budget. So back to the allocations. Again, I've shown the past schools, and we've shown the approved budgets along with the actual budgets, or excuse me, the actual costs for each school. So over on the far-right-hand column, you can see that our actual costs for all of those schools have come in under budget, so we are pretty proud of that fact. The Rio Wrangler allocation that we're recommending is $36.8 million for construction. That is 15% over our Inskeep Elementary School construction, actual costs. And then professional services and FFNE both are 15% over the Bow Hatch actual costs. And the reason we took those costs over Bow Hatch instead of Inskeep is because Inskeep, even though it's occupied and done, the professional services and the FFNE for that project are not totally 100% built out. You know, oftentimes, it takes six, eight months to totally build those projects out, so we're more comfortable using those Bow Hatch numbers. So total allocation recommendation is $41.8 million for Rio Wrangler. This project will be, as I stated earlier, competitively bid and publicly advertised. I'm going to go over to Adam.
So that's the conclusion of the content that was presented, and then this is really the summary slide for action. And there's just a couple of points I really like to make on this slide. This is a slide that we reuse consistently when we bring back allocation recommendations from the Capital Funding Protection Committee. On the far-left-hand column, you see projects that were originally included in the WC1 ballot measure from 2016. You can see them very specifically in reference back to that ballot initiative. The three line items at the bottom are asterisked as because they were not originally included in that program. All of the rest were. The next column in green, you can see the action presented, or the item, the information presented for action here today. The total allocation in the next column, that's the budgets that have been approved to date for all of those various projects. Of course, the red checkmark signifying that the project is fully funded, and with this action, potentially, this school would also be fully funded from a budget standpoint. And then that last column is updated each time we bring it back forward. In this case, September 15th, 2021, those numbers were pulled for each of those projects. And you can see the total amount actually expended associated with each of those projects. And as we've discussed in past meetings, that is total project costs, you know? So you can pick any one of those projects, such as, for example, the Desert Skies Middle School, and you can see how much was allocated and how much was ultimately expended. And that includes often the full design phase, the full construction costs, and then, of course, these furniture fixtures and equipment and all project expenditures, not just the cost to hire a contractor to build the building. So that's just a little bit more about what this table's telling us. But the line item, Southeast Reno Area Elementary School for $41.8 million is the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much to both of you. We'll bring it here to the table, but we have some public comment we'll take first, JJ?
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Duran.
Hello. Yes, so I do support approval of funding of Rio Wrangler Middle School because, as you know, it's get overcrowded, and the poor kids that's open up, and they're overcrowding. And also Brown was overcrowded, so we need to take action for Rio Wrangler as soon as 2023 school year. And hopefully, the reason we had to take the place because Brown, because all the, so Rio Wringer, poor kids, and they were down on zone for DePauli, then Brown on zone for Marcy Hurst. So we don't want, like, spread out, going to two different middle school. And so, and I do like, heard the concern about the safety protection at Rio Wringer, because the Rio Wringer Parkway is, or current have a big street or sidewalk. So because of Palm Lane that's close to Woodster, because they have no protection, so speed limit for the walking, for the student to walk to their school, so.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
That's all I have for this item.
Thank you very much, JJ. Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes, I do have one question. I know this is areas pretty prone to flooding every seven to 10 years roughly. Is there, is that being addressed?
Yeah, that was part of the master plan, the master developer's planning, extensive reviews and approvals associated with all these subdivisions. There are significant drainage channels on both sides of the school, kind of north and south, and then the wetlands to the rear, basically, of the school. And that's all been designed as a part of this master plan development. So I don't, I'm not aware that the property's ever flooded since it was developed, and it was certainly engineered to never see floodwaters encroach on the property.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Church?
Thank you. I'm going to work backwards, because actually, that's a great issue, the flooding. I'm pretty familiar with the area, and that scared me too. But we had the big floods a few years ago, and while it did not flood, I mean, it's actually, you can see, it didn't even come close, the way that is designed. But it looked bad when you look at it, but it's not. That said, it did, those drainage ditches do run over the pedestrian sidewalk on the wetlands. If it was bad enough, I mean, a kid could be swept away. But you definitely can't, during the flood, you couldn't walk through it. It was mud, and it was water. And so that would be something, I guess, if that happened, they would close it off or something like that. But I saw that with my own eyes during that big flood. So I don't see that as a major issue, but I'll just put that on the record. And then also, probably should have run this by legal before, but I do own a number of properties in the area within walking distance. I just want to put on the record that would have no influence whatsoever on my decision. And if I need to do any further, then legal can tell me. But it would have no basis on any decision I'd make pro or con.
I'm going to pause you for just a moment so we can respond to that, okay? On that moment, is there any need for any other, just on that piece while we're here, okay? You want a moment, or should I not have stopped him? I just didn't want it to get lost.
Under NRS 281A, would you, if this project's approved, would you receive any benefit that somebody else wouldn't receive?
I guess in theory, the property values could be affected, in theory.
Well, your property values would be affected the same as everyone else's, though, right? So it's not, it's not going, it's not as cheating to you as it is opposed to somebody else, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then you're, so under NRS 281A, under NRS 281A, I can't remember the subsection, but nonetheless, it requires that you would receive some special benefit. Based on what you're saying here, I have no reason to think that you would, so you're fine to disclose as you've done and then vote.
Great, yeah, and I think it's good. I put that on the record just so folks know.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you, trustee Church.
Yeah, so moving along. I think I heard the answer, but when these schools are designed, are they designed in terms of the library, cafeteria, common area? If we expand, that those libraries can accommodate that, those building, those common areas?
So I assume that you're referring to, like, instances where we've talked about in the past where we've added portable classrooms to accommodate additional students. I mean, the students, like we've talked before, the schools are designed with spaces appropriate for the designed number of students. Like, when we say there's 100% of capacity, the music room, the cafeteria, the library, those spaces are designed for the students that that building is intended to house. So when we talk about having additional portable classrooms or basically temporarily expanding the capacity of that school, and we talk about- expanding the capacity of that school, and we talk about how that's not ideal, because those other common area spaces are not expanded or are not intended to accommodate that many students, I think that there's always flexibility in that, right? I mean, not all those students, there's only so many students in the library at any given time regardless. I think where the rub is that maybe there's an additional lunch period that's required, or somehow a different schedule for those common areas to accommodate these additional students that are in that space. But I would not say that those common area spaces are designed to accommodate more than the base capacity of the design of the school.
Okay. I mean, again, this is way out of my area of expertise. It would seem logical to almost design a hundred and ten percent or something in there, because we've already added modulators at Polokitis, but I will defer to, to staff for their expertise, and you did answer it, that it may be just a matter of scheduling. The next question, so we're gonna get a bid. What happens then? Does it come back to us no matter what? Does it go forward? What if the bid is high, et cetera?
So, there's always a variety of potential outcomes. Option A is, the bid comes in within the anticipated budget, there are no irregularities, and all of the normal checks and balances and processes are reviewed, and then the project is brought forward, perhaps even under consent for approval, as many of our construction projects are brought for approval. There may be a brief presentation, but it would require board approval to award the construction contract because of the scale of it.
Fantastic. So, yeah, again, if it's, you know, sometimes the public comes up with something we never thought about, and that's why I value public comment so much. There's a lot of sharp people out there doing their research on this stuff, so every once in a while, they'll come up with something that we didn't think about. So, that's a good idea that it comes back. The next question, what about teachers and staff? Have we funded the teachers and staff that are gonna be in the school?
Sure, so, we talked about that a bit at our September twenty-eighth presentation on kind of the, should we or should we not proceed with the construction of this project? The majority of the teachers and staff will, in essence, be relocated or reassigned from other schools throughout the district as a part of the sort of rezoning or redistribution of the schools. And then we also talked about the additional salary and benefit expenses associated with a new additional custodian, a new additional principal, et cetera. Those would be a part of the FY twenty-four budget for the school district, and, you know, at the appropriate time, shortly before that school opens, those hiring selections will be made, and they will, you know, go through the process of establishing the culture and community of that particular school. So, you know, that's, that's still to come, but that's basically how that would work.
Right. So, essentially now, a couple of statements. We don't know what the funding will be in a couple of years, another legislature, you know, et cetera, et cetera, things change, but the bottom line is, we basically don't have the funding identified to put, to pay for anything. There's gonna be no new teachers in theory, we're moving them from other schools. We don't have the funding for principals, or the power bill, or anything else. And I find that frustrating as a trustee, so I'll just put that on the record, I've mentioned it before. I find it very frustrating that we've got the WC-1 money, and we don't have the money for teachers budgeted. We have to find it somewhere or not find it. And so, I think I've made clear my position that the legislature might need to review WC-1 in the future to allow that option in there, but that's a legislative action, that's nothing we could do other than advocate. So, I just want to put that on the record, my frustration with that. Other than that, when this was first presented to us, even though it's my district, and even though I take a lot of flak, my position was kind of like, maybe we need to wait, with costs so high, with everything else, maybe we just need to wait for the future, not do anything. And that's the whole purpose of discussion and staff presentation. Your presentation's excellent, your answers are excellent. So, this is an example of where I went in with kind of a, a thought process that you've changed my mind, and staff has changed my mind, that we need it. We're overcrowded, overcrowded at Polokitis, we've already put in modulators over there at a very high cost, and the location is very, very good, and the need is there, and Reno is booming, and so, and our enrollment is down a bit, but it's not down like we thought it might be, and we're still booming. So, I'm pretty convinced that this is a worthwhile project, and the cost, I'm actually pretty amazed at the cost, with the cost of building, that this is only slightly above the cost of the other comparable schools that were built in the area. So, I'm, I'm very, leaning very favorably towards this project, but I just wanted to put that on the record for the people in the community that might wonder why. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. I don't see any other discussion or questions, I'm looking to the board for your, your pleasure on this agenda item, agenda item three-point-zero-one. This is the adoption of A, projects A, really which, I'm gonna say it's changed, just because whenever it comes back to us, it comes back to us because there's a change, so. Uh, Trustee Church?
Since it's my district, I'd be honored to make the motion.
Go right ahead.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the Washoe County School District twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, A Major Projects Program in the amount of forty-one million eight-hundred-thousand for a future elementary school in the Rio Wrangler area, excuse me, as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee.
Thank you, Trustee Church. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? We have, we have Trustee Rodriguez already leaning in, there is a second. We already did, got public comment, I saw other trustees trying to get to it first, you guys, you gotta be ready for this good stuff. You gotta be ready for the good stuff like building schools. All right, uh, thank you, Ms. Golden, by the way. She's like, I'm done, don't come back to me, I'm done. All right, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion's carried, let the record show it is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, building schools, yay. All right, we're gonna be, go on to agenda item three-point-zero-two. This is presentation and discussion and possible action to provide direction on redistricting scenarios for the trustee districts following the twenty-twenty United States Census. And we see before us Ms. Anderson and Mr. Cersei stays before us. They gave us a little preliminary look, and as you'll recall, two weeks ago, there's a little bit of an update, I'm sure we've all seen that in our packet, and so, we're interested to hear from the two of you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Taylor and Trustees Superintendent McNeil. That was a great opening, so we're back, as we talked about about a month ago, to discuss the redistricting as it relates to the trustee districts from the twenty-twenty census. Fortunately for you today, Adam's gonna do most of the talking, so I'm gonna just roll through just to kind of get us going here, but here's sort of an agenda of how we're gonna go through these slides today, and just some refresher slides about why we're here. So, as we talked about before, Nevada state law governs how our districts are set up here in Washoe County. We have five districts that are roughly twenty percent of the population and two at-large districts, and what we're trying to get to here is around a deviation of less than five percent of that optimal or ideal population. So, when you see in future slides, D-E-F, it's, what do we call it? Deviation from equal. D-F-E, I may have those letters mixed up, but that's ultimately what we're, what our goal is during this process. These are the guiding principles that the board adopted at the last time we had this conversation. Again, as a reminder, the words that are in italics basically are best practices, well, legally defensible principles that we use to guide this process when we look at the maps and the new census data. And so, I'm not gonna read them to you, but again, this is what is guiding the work that we are presenting for you today. In terms of the public process, we have a special redistricting website that is on the kind of slider homepage that you can get to from our website now, thanks to our communications team. We also sent out a notice to a list of over three-hundred stakeholders of our business and community leaders that represent constituencies of their own, to alert them of this new website and this process taking place. And on that website, there are lots of links to what we're proposing here today, as well as instructions on how to provide public comment to you as the board related to redistricting. And so, that website is live, it's active, I just looked at it before the meeting, so it's certainly available to, to our community. Oh, I'm gonna hand it over to Adam, this is kind of the exciting part, where we talk about the actual numbers, the first time we've talked about it together, and what's guiding our work, and so, I'm gonna hand it over to Adam to take it home. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you, Lindsay. Okay, again, Adam Cersei, Chief of Facilities for the record, now, a whole bunch of spreadsheets and maps and pie charts. I don't know if everybody's excited as much as Lindsay and I are, but...
Uh, no.
All right. Well, we added in some color for, for the fun of it, but this is, this is kind of where we're at. We're starting here, the district, the county as a whole grew by just over fifteen percent within the last decade, and the takeaway, District A grew the most by percentage, and District D grew the least by percentage, which you're going to see later, it leads to the existing imbalance. But we thought this was some interesting baseline information. You can see twenty-ten census population by trustee districts, so these are associated with the current trustee districts that exist today, as well as now the current populations of those same exact districts, the growth totals and the growth by percentage. And, you know, I mean, you can see from that pie chart, I think, still a relatively equally distributed growth across the entire Washoe County. So, anyway, that's where we're at. Diving in a little bit deeper to the differences, as I mentioned, District A and District D, because of their disparate growths, will require some degree of adjustment, but as you can see, are all of the other districts remain within a generally accepted population distribution range. So, looking at those numbers a little more closely, the four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand number at the top is the total population of the county, and those two numbers on the side, two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-six is the total divided by two, so that's what we're gonna be looking for as far as equal when we talk about at-large districts F and G. And ninety-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-eight is the total population divided by five, or the magic number of equal that we're gonna be talking about when we're looking at general districts A through E. Again, that same twenty-twenty census population distribution across all of the existing districts, you can see those numbers there, and then the difference as compared to those two numbers up top, the exact per equal distribution, and then that difference from equal as a percentage in that third row, you can see five-point-five-eight percent District A and six-point-one-three percent District D, a little bit further away from equal than we're comfortable with, and all the rest of the deviations from equal for all the districts. And, you know, I'll introduce the concept here of negative and positive. I mean, for the record, it's sort of a absolute value, you know, plus or minus five percent. I've got a typo in, later in the slides, but so you're following here, the intent is, you know, plus five-point-five percent for District A means it's five percent greater than equal. The last one, obviously, that's the numerical representation of what plus or minus five percent from a raw population standpoint looks like, okay? Lot of numbers, lot of words, just setting you guys up to follow. All right, now, we're going on a field trip around the district. Y'all know your districts better than I do, but for the record, we're gonna talk about each of them really quick. District A is really big, the largest general district, spanning from Incline Village, all of Washoe Valley, and quite a bit of South Reno, they grew the most by percentage of any of the regular districts within the last ten years. District B, mostly Central Sparks and a good portion of Sun Valley, so very densely populated, also south of I-80 to the Truckee River, a growth percentage of about average thirteen percent over the last ten years. District C, all the way up the North Valleys and also spanning Spanish Springs, so higher growth rate in those two areas, as we're all familiar with, so you can see over the last ten years, nineteen-and-a-half percent growth rate in that particular district, a little bit of Sun Valley, but all the way up to Gerlach, out to Natchez, as well as both the North Valleys and North Spanish Springs. District D, sort of a Southwest Reno, downtown, midtown Reno, even a little bit on the northeast side of the spaghetti bowl into Southwest Sparks. That area is much older, much more densely developed, and saw the smallest percentage growth over the last ten years. These are all the existing district boundaries. District E, up in Northwest and West Reno, also has a portion of Sun Valley and a small portion of Northwest Sparks. So, you can see the numbers there for District E. Now, moving into the at-large districts, there's two, as you know, encompassing the entire Washoe County. District F is really the eastern half, at least of the Truckee Meadows. The eastern half of the Truckee Meadows, including all of Northern Washoe County, up Gerlach, all the way to the state line, Natchez, et cetera, grew more rapidly than District G over the last ten years, who has the western half bordered kind of up to the populated areas of the North Valleys, not, of course, District F has the remainder of the North Washoe County. Okay, so, that was the field trip, Trustee Church, we went around the horn, it was a fun tour. Now, we're about ready to get into some business.
We have, just, we have a question hanging here. Do you have a...
Thank you, and I think this is interesting, I really do. So, of, of the seven districts, are there, is there one or two in particular that are kind of landlocked and growth will be minimal in the next ten years?
Yeah. D? And B? And B?
Yeah, I mean, just geographically and projecting growth, probably Beta and Delta? My father-in-law's like hard of hearing, he always kind of wants me to, is it B or D or E? What did you say? B and D are probably the most built out, so to speak, but, you know, that's a, that's something that we talked about with staff and with some other consultants, I'd like Lindsay to add to that a little bit.
Yeah, thank you, Adam. I just wanna clarify that, in terms of what the rules are, we have to use census data only in making the population as close to equal as we can. So, certainly internally, we tossed around the ideas of projecting future growth and even got into some growth rates by district, and that certainly information that can be considered, but ultimately, our plan that is adopted now can rely only on census data as it sits from the twenty-twenty census. So, just keep that in mind, it's, it's, it's relevant information, it just cannot be used in projecting future growth.
Okay, so, we're gonna dive in. We've got some options for consideration and discussion, this is kind of a summary, and then we'll walk through the details of each of them. So, as we kind of discussed at the opening, districts B, C, E, F, and G remain within allowable population ranges of ideal, and it is certainly an option to make no adjustments to these trustee boundaries. So, that's just where we're starting from, I think, back to our guiding principles, you know, an effort to minimize disruption where possible and reasonable was something that we felt was important. However, districts A and D are outside of the allowable population range, and we have several options for consideration there. And then also, we're gonna present a couple of options for consideration related to F and G for consideration, even though they are much closer within a population agreement, we still found at least one option where... we still found at least one option worthy of discussion. Okay, so that's what we're going to walk through, starting with the options between A and D. So Option 1, we're referring to it as includes all of the Huffaker Elementary School enrollment zone moved from A to D. So currently, the Huffaker Elementary School building itself is within the existing District D, but a portion of the Huffaker Elementary School enrollment zone is within District D. And S...A, thank you. There, it's, so it's split. It's split. The building's in D, half of the enrollment zone is in A. And what this option is proposing is to move or expand District D to include the entirety of the Huffaker Elementary School enrollment zone. These lines indicate, try to indicate the existing district boundaries. The school enrollment zone itself, kind of in pink there, and then the shaded area is the area that's proposed to move from A to D, however you want to perceive it, an expansion of D. And at that point, all of the enrollment zone for Huffaker Elementary School would be a part of District D. So the numbers in the table, you saw the 5.58 and the 6.13 before, that's kind of the difference from equal that these districts sit currently with their populations. After making this change, which you can see in the table inset into the picture up above, affects 2,248 total residents. That would result in a difference from equal of approximately, you know, 3.5% for each district. So much improved, well within the plus or minus 5%, just adding this portion from A to D. Okay, so this is Option 1. Option 2 moves a little bit to the east and focuses on Smith Ridge Elementary School. So Smith Ridge Elementary School, the building itself and the majority of the enrollment zone is currently within District A, and this option would move the entire enrollment zone for Smith Ridge into District D. This one's a little larger of a population impact. This affects just over 7,100 residents, and so you can see the effect, taking it from the 5.5, 6.1 down to, you know, 1.78, 1.23. So it brings us a little bit closer to equal. This Option 2 does not include any adjustments to anywhere else between these enrollment, between these trustee districts, just that Smith Ridge area. Okay, and then, oh. This is just zooming in.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the map, sorry. So we have a question. Trustee Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. And for the benefit of those that are watching, I do have a question around 2, and then it'll be the same for 3, because it will apply there. One thing that the public might be interested in knowing is that in addition to having constituents technically from the districting standpoint, we also have schools that are assigned to us. So just to be clear for Option 2, it would also apply to Option 3, the recommendation would also be that Smith Ridge, and I assume Pine Middle School, would also move over to D as the assigned schools within the districts. Is that correct?
That's a good question. I don't know if we've considered that, but that's, I think that's something to be considered in terms of looking at the numbers of schools, because there's always an attempt to have some equity in that across the districts as well. And so I think that's something that certainly needs to be looked at as well. Because you can't, you don't want to just have the people in those areas and not have the schools in those areas. That doesn't make sense.
Sure. So, you know, that gets back to kind of our guiding principles and looking at logical boundaries that are relevant to the organization, certainly school enrollment boundaries strongly speak to that. In this option, where we're impacting this neighborhood, whether it's Option 2 or then Option 3, this would move the Smith Ridge Elementary School itself and the Pine Middle School building itself from D, from A to D. It would also include all of the enrollment zone for Smith Ridge Elementary School from A to D, and only a portion of the Pine enrollment zone, as you're aware, you know, other elementary schools feed Pine and whatnot. But, you know, we would really go off of, hey, here's the boundary of the trustee district, wherever we lie, or wherever we land, and the schools that are within that is which trustee they would be assigned to.
And there would still be some situations that there will be people that live in your area that may go to a school, such as I have right now. I have some, I have some folks that live in E, as E bumps up to C. They go to North Valleys High School, which is in C, but they actually vote in, if you will, in my district based upon where they are. But the school is in C, and so you guys may have that as well, and I know we have that. So that, so that would, that certainly will continue to be the case.
Okay, so this is just a zoomed-in slide showing Option 2, because this one was a little bit far out. We wanted to get the whole district in the slide. Zooming in, you can see Metalwood Mall and the enrollment zone for Smith Ridge basically proposed in Option 2. Okay? And then Option 3 is just both of them combined. Okay, so the Huffaker move that we talked about in Option 1 and the Smith Ridge move in Option 2, both of them still result in a population distribution within acceptable levels. You can see it's slightly further away from equal, but we wanted to present it for consideration because it is plausible. So this, this next slide is just a summary. Sometimes it's nice, we just went through a half a dozen or more slides on three different options. You can see them now here on one table. There's pros and cons. You're eliminating a split feeder to a degree, Smith Ridge area, Huffaker enrollment zone, or both of them together. You know, the pluses and minuses aren't particularly relevant. We're talking about plus or minus 5%, trying to optimize or minimize difference from equal while also considering some of these other affinities, right? Like logical boundaries of enrollment zones and things of that nature. So I think this is really for looking for input from the board. We've got a number of other slides to cover. We can discuss this now or later, but wanted to just go through this in detail with everybody and let it sink in, get your feedback.
As my colleagues have asked questions, and let's continue to do so, mine is connected to what Trustee Smith said. I would love to see the, just the impact in terms of the numbers of schools that accompany these options as well.
Yeah, I think that's something we can provide. I just want to reiterate that that can't be like the deciding factor in terms of the census data really guiding that, but the number of schools, I'm sure that's something we could put together.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that this has to be the deciding factor in terms of the numbers of people. And within that, how does that impact the numbers of schools? So certainly not priority one. Trustee Smith?
I, just to carry on with that, I definitely agree with making sure that we are in alignment with the requirements of the people. I will say that particularly when we get into the conversation element of this, I do like the idea of school communities having simplicity with their trustee representation as well. That is, I know that is also one of the other guiding principles here. There has been comment to that effect, and that is something that I do believe in when and where possible. I know that's not possible everywhere, but when and where possible, it is nice for schools to have single representation. And when I say schools, I mostly mean elementary schools, because I know as we get into middle schools and high schools, there's a much larger feeder system there.
Other comments at this point, Trustee Church?
Thank you. First of all, to me, there's almost like two options. Number one, send it back to the drawing board. And, you know, I've often wondered, just as a voter, why don't we, since there's five districts and the two at large, why don't we just align with whatever the county does, and then people can easily know, okay, my county commissioner's district's the same as the school district? Again, kind of logical, but then it would maybe miss out on some schools. Number two, we haven't had a lot, obviously, the public's not real concerned about this because we haven't had a lot of emails, but the ones that I've seen are, and maybe the public is concerned, but I just haven't seen a lot of emails on it like we do on some of the matters. But, you know, some of them say, well, God, can't we have, or gosh, can't we have, you know, Sun Valley or Sparks just all in one and make it real simple, you know, that kind of way, as long as we're within the population growth? So I get those analogies, and I look at like my district, which is basically Damone Ranch, and then up to Incline, and then they've got a whole thing that goes all the way up to Interstate 80 by Verdai, but not into Verdai. So it's like, who came up with that? It's a lot of nothing land, but for now, but who came up with that? The jackrabbits don't vote, so that doesn't matter. So, you know, unless we just send it back to the drawing board, any of these options are fine with me. And while the next District A trustee might not agree, I don't mind giving up a school, you know, it doesn't bother me, and it would seem to make sense to give up the school and the voters all in one, not to have the Smith Ridge, Pine voters, half of them in my district, but the schools in the other. So I have no objection. I mean, I think, I think one reason the public doesn't respond a lot to this, 99%, I know we just talked about the school in my district, real wrangler, but we don't, we don't vote, oh, my district, this. My concern, and I'm pretty sure I speak for most of trustees, if not all, what's good for the kids, what's good for the taxpayer, what's good for the public, that's what we vote on, not, not, oh, it's my district, you know, I don't, that almost never enters my mind. It's what's good for the public and the kids. So even though I'm elected by A, if there's something in North Valleys that's important, I'm all for it. So those are just my comments.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Dr. Nicolet?
Just to affirm, November 1st is really our target date for you to, for us to submit this information.
That's right. Thank you for bringing that up. The Washoe County Register of Voters has asked for this information by November 1st. So that's what we've been kind of backfilling from.
And what we have the potential to do, should it be the desire of this board, based upon our conversation today, if there's additional information, people may like that, might impact their decision, we have, we do have an opportunity to have this appear on one more agenda. We've given ourselves an opportunity to, staff has aligned it that way so that we can have some discussion here, ask for additional information, whatever, share concerns, comments, ideas, and then bring it back in two weeks. Now, and then in two weeks, so when it comes back, then the decision will, will need to be made, because that meeting is October 26th, just before the deadline from the county. Trustee Church?
I'm okay moving forward today. There are no bad options. There are no bad options, and rather than kick the can, I'm up to the other fellow trustees, but I'm okay.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Other, Trustee Rodriguez?
Oh, I know this affects us all, but mostly obviously, Trustee Church and Smith, I do want to remind the board that we do have a lot of things coming up, especially the appointment of a new trustee as well. So we do have some long meetings ahead of us. But I do want to stand this as a big decision.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Smith, you want to weigh in and impact your district greatly as well?
I do, but I was wondering if there's more to the presentation that they want to complete before we get into that substantial part.
Okay, why don't we do that?
But I'm more than happy to do that now, but I know they're, they still have a few slides to go.
We have a few more slides. There are, there are a few more slides. Which really, which really goes on to the other two districts. Right, so yes.
Yeah, that's the end of the content for A and D. Great discussion, and we'll go through the rest of the districts here quickly and continue the discussion. So now to the at-large districts F and G. This is really where we're at today. You can see this one zoomed in on District G, and the current difference from equal of only 3%. Of course, it's just the two of them, so they're either plus or minus. But Option 1, we actually wanted to present this as a standalone slide, is to no change, to recommend no change, that is entirely viable option, and we wanted to make sure it wasn't underrepresented. But we'll call it Option 2, zooming in really to the heart of Reno, looking at the existing enrollment boundary. We saw the, or enrollment, the existing trustee boundary follows Virginia Street for quite a length, except for two instances where it veers into neighborhoods to the east or into District G. And then also where it seemed to maneuver through the neighborhoods kind of to the northeast of this area in an odd fashion. So we just looked at logical geographic adjustments that we could consider that would be defendable and would make sense sort of geographically and within those communities, and might improve the population distribution agreement difference from equal. So if you take...
If I may, just on this one? So basically, it's, it's, just get rid of the pockets, is what this would do in effect.
Yeah, so what this map, yeah, that's right. The pink line that's going straight up Virginia Street, it's hard to, it veers...
We have some pockets, you can, we can...
What we're proposing here is to straighten it out. So those, those shaded areas are currently in District F, and we would move that line over to Virginia Street, and those areas would then be moved into District G. Up there in the northeast, that is Ryland and Wells there, that's sort of highlighted in blue. We'd be moving that area as well from F to G. More substantial roads and sort of boundaries within that community, that felt like a logical neighborhood and geographic adjustment that would also add a few more impacted residents to bring us closer to equal. Technically... I don't believe there are any schools. Mount Rose Elementary School might be the only one I would need to verify for certain, but the result of the impacted residents of 5,709 total would take us from a difference from equal of 3% down to 0.6%. So this is another slide that shows the same pockets, maybe it's easier to follow, maybe not, but the impacted residents in each of those areas, but it's the same Option 2. Each of those pockets in this option are being proposed to be moved from F to G.
And in effect, that just makes the line go down Virginia Street.
Yep.
Basically. I mean, just roughly speaking, but in effect, that's what that does.
Which it does for quite a distance. If you go back to this original slide, you can kind of see how straight it is there, all the way going down through South Reno, but for those couple of pockets, we thought that made a lot of sense, and crunching the numbers, it actually works out quite nicely. So that's how we came up with Option 2. And that's really the content for F and G. We can discuss or move on just a little bit, just a couple more slides here.
Basically, G gets smaller, F gets a little larger.
Uh, F, F gets smaller, G gets smaller.
Oh, F gets smaller, right, other way around, sorry. Yep. F gets smaller.
It's alphabet soup here.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, F gets smaller.
A good bit closer to equal.
Much closer.
So Districts B, C, and E are depicted here, you know, geographically, together. You can see they're all adjacent, contiguous. You know these communities very well. There's a number of valleys and mountain ranges sort of disrupting the neighborhoods or breaking, breaking them up. You can see the population and the difference from equal. B and E are right at about 1%, and C, as it exists today with the 2020 census population, is only 2.49% away from equal distribution as well. So we did look at a number of potential adjustments from C to E, from C to B, and really ultimately were unable to identify any that strongly resonated with, hey, we're reconciling some sort of school enrollment boundary adjustment, or some obvious geographical neighborhood sort of consolidation. There's obviously some scenarios... There, there's obviously some scenarios where we could move lines and get those numbers a little closer to zero, but on balance versus the disruption that it would be potentially to those communities, just change for the sake of change, we actually are recommending that no changes be made to these three districts. You can see they're within a high degree of agreement or a difference from equal. And that's all that we have for this presentation on B, C, and E. So that's kind of the end of the content. Lots to discuss. The main takeaway, if anything, as far as next steps, is we've tentatively anticipated another presentation at our next board meeting, which would put us on pace, hopefully, to achieve that response back to the county registrar on or before November 1st. But this is agendized for action here today, and we'd love to take your feedback and continue the discussion now. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we do have some public comment. Why don't we go there first? And then, and there's a little bit that came in, we've seen some along the way, that I think there's one or two that came in today as well, so.
Pablo Nava Duran. The board received an email from Riley Sutton.
Welcome back, Mr. Duran.
So I did check, this is my, it kind of mess up, I did not like it. Something need to be changed, had to do if, if one message school or zone for different, for example, if District Z, if a student go to District C school, but their boy, but a parent void on District E, then it had to be changed, change the courses. So it had to be like a single reputation for once, for single school, so it had to get limited for the free feeder, but I know the target gets going in November 1st. So we got no time left. So we hopefully, we hopefully like to take some action, that kind of, kind of stuff. And for the middle school, high school, it's a much broader spot because I do see on a movie, my neighborhood from A to D, and I kind of propose to that because we zone for, so Smith Ridge zone for Pine, and we zone for Damone, which is District A. So if guys move to District D, and then we, my sister, who go to be, go be night grab by 2024, they either go to Galena or Damone, they, District A school, but we had to avoid for District D, that little power mix. So I do support an option one on District A and D, because that give a more, help a care of more reputation to the school, because there's zone for Reno High, the, our zone for Reno High. And I do think, and additionally, probably, possibly be a candidate for 2024 School Board candidate for District A. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. Okay, thank you very much. I do have a question, staff on, I think I found the typo, Mr. Cersei, is it on District E on this page here? It looks as though, and I say this, it's my district, obviously, it looks like the number from, difference from equal is actually, that should be in print, shouldn't it be parenthetical, that eight, that 987?
Which page are you on, sorry?
Right there, right there is good.
You got it.
It's my district, so.
I, yeah, I goofed, well, I originally calculated the difference from equal illogically, like the, if you're, if you're less, if you're less than equal, you're positive. And I corrected it on some of the slides and missed it on a few others.
It, it, it still, it's not, the, the sign almost doesn't matter if it's negative or positive in this case, it's, it's how much we vary from equal. Anyway, whether it's a little bit higher or a little bit lower, so, okay.
Good catch.
If you're looking, I'm like, that, okay. All right, I'm not sure what the prize is, but okay, great. Thanks.
See, it's, it's fun. You, you get, you can geek out with numbers with us. You're having fun.
I, I am having fun, but I'm good. No offense to any of you numbers people out there. God bless you. Pete, nothing but love for you, man. All right, so any other commentary? I want to go back to you, Trustee Smith now.
Thank you so much, Madam President. So districts like zoning are things that I love, which I think is fairly well established. In those years on the zoning advisory committee, a logic that we followed was that good zoning, and in this case, good districting, should really not need too much explanation. It should make sense to families, it should make sense to voters. In theory, you should be able to look at a map and generally understand why you're voting for the elected officials that you're voting for. So with that said, related to the areas that Trustee Church and I are looking at, I would be in favor for either one or three. I am leaning towards three. I do appreciate the public comment that we have gotten around that. I will say, for example, keeping Huff Baker together since I have that school and expanding that to all those families, that would be very important. I do believe that there could be value in having Smith Ridge, I already have a portion of that community now, so I already have a portion of that. And Huff Baker also goes to Pine. So as we talked about, it becomes more imperfect when you look at split feeders, as we call them, whether in zoning or in districting, when you get to the middle school or high school level. That is where it gets a bit unwieldy. But I do believe in keeping elementary school communities together. So based on that, I would, I would offer to my colleagues and to Trustee Church that I would probably lean towards option three for that reason, because I do believe in keeping communities and families together with their representation on the elementary school level.
Oh, thank you, Trustee Smith. You want to weigh in on that a little bit, Trustee Church, or?
I haven't received a bribe yet.
That's on public record.
But, but, and for the record, I have not, yet. But, yeah, I, I'm not a territorial person, and the logic makes sense to me, so option three is perfectly acceptable to me, and I think we should move forward today on that. So, yeah, again, I'm not territorial. I think we vote our conscience on everything, so giving up that, you know, doesn't, it's okay, no, no problem.
Trustee Smith?
On that note, would it be appropriate to make a motion just as it relates to this option here, and we can continue the conversation?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, very good. Then I move for item 3.02 to adopt option three, which moves a portion of Huff Baker Elementary School and Smith Ridge Elementary School from District Enrollment Zone A to District D.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Church, motion by Trustee Smith. Any other discussion? We've had public comment. Keep saying none, that's just on this piece, right? On this piece, on the, the A, D option, if you will. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Give the motion carries. The record show it is unanimous. So those adjustments will be made in Districts A and D to keep those communities together.
And President Taylor, just to clarify, this will take effect at the next election cycle. So it's not, won't take effect immediately, but the next time that candidates are running for office and take office.
Right, so don't start emailing a different trustee yet.
Right.
That's an excellent point, and so that's 2022.
Actually, 2023, January 1, 2020.
Right, you take office on, different jurisdictions do it a little bit differently, but in this case, the person that takes office on January 1, 2023 would be for these new districts.
Yes, okay, January 1, 2020.
Would run in these new districts with these, it doesn't take effect immediately.
On the 2022 ballot, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, the 2022 ballot, these new districts would apply, but that person would actually take place, begin to serve and represent these new constituents or neighbors, as my colleague calls them, January 1.
Now, that raises a question. I guess it's appropriate now, would, would it affect the voters? Would that change the election? You know what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, let me answer what I think you're saying, right? Well, I think, so, so let's say we, those constituents now, based upon these percentages that we've just voted to, to move into District D, now they will vote in the District D election, not in the District A election. They were in the District A election last cycle, right? And now new cycle, they'll be in the District D election.
And just to add on, President Taylor, in terms of timing, that seems like a long time away, but the reason it's important we get it to them soon is that when filing opens in March of 2022, you will have to be within these new bound, district boundaries. So that's why the lead time is so long.
And I'm sure you'll come up with them for all of us, but definitely would like a copy of something detailed so that we know what to tell our constituents.
Yeah, I think the, the move, based upon where the lines are, once that's submitted and to, to the county and approved, that's when that, the information will be there, and certainly, it's certainly good to have. Yeah. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, that's good. And maybe something might be on the website or something as well, that for those who may have questions, so. Okay. Michelle's back for nodding, thank you, Ms. Anderson. So some way so that we have the information as well as the constituents. Okay? So now we'll move on to, whether we do B, B, C, E, I think was next?
G, F and G?
Okay, oh, we record, they made no recommendations on that, right? Okay, F and G. F and G, oh, yeah, that was the next one. Okay, comments on this, we'll start with Trustee Smith?
Yeah, before we go to F and G, I just wanted to offer to my colleagues and then also to our presenters, are there any refinements that anyone is interested in? You know, just as we're suggesting potential refinements to F and G, are there refinements around neighborhoods and school changes that would stay within the appropriate boundaries for the numbers, but keep school communities together? I'm not sure if there's any interest in that, but I do like some of the refinements for F and G. Of course, I'll defer to my colleagues on that, but just curious for B, C, and E, if there were any refinements there that anyone was interested in.
We're going to get to B, C, and E after F and G.
Oh, we are, okay.
I just went out of order, yeah, that's, yeah. No, I'm with you, I was going to, same thing, so thank you, but I went out of order in the presentation, and I was corrected for that. So, yeah, so thank you for thinking like me. Okay, so F and G. Yes, yes, right, I know, me too, right? All right, F and G, we'll start with District F and, F and G, and there are a couple of options before us. Comments in particular from District G, we don't have a District F colleague as of yet.
Well, I don't want to sound like I don't care, but my only thought is that, that I believe G will continue to grow, given it's, although that's not a variable, but, so maybe adding 5,000 is a good thing or not a good thing. Quite frankly, for me personally, adding 5,000 plus people to love sounds fabulous.
That sounds like a perspective from Trustee Nicolet. I, I, I would say a couple of things. One is, it seems like it's, maybe because it's like, it's just kind of neat and tidy to just get the little pockets out, if you will, to balance, because it seems to be more out of balance anyway. And then 20 years from now, there'll be some movement, and who knows, somebody blow up a mountain, and something, some area will grow that we didn't even know was going to grow. But that seems logical in, in, in my thinking. And additionally, just which, just we want to make sure we keep this in mind, oh, no, they're going to run anyway, so I was going to say, we're going to appoint somebody, they need to, but they're going to run anyway when this takes effect, so it won't matter. So in that case, these boundaries will still be in case, be in place as we look to appoint a colleague for, for our vacancy in District F. It's according to these, they could still live in one of these pockets, because it's only until the end of 2022, which is when the new ones take, take place. So that's a far. All right, so I mean, I'm, I kind of like the tidiness of getting rid of the pockets, and they probably pocketed them out, so to speak, because to maybe have a little bit more balance 20 years ago, and the numbers, and particularly, and maybe even additionally to keep school communities together, there may have been some consideration around that as well. So just, just comment, any other, our colleague in District G said she's good either way.
Just to fill it in, I'm an A-type personality, so I like that tidiness, just visually.
Okay, there, there's something we, we, let's see, yeah, so is there a motion, there a pleasure to board for a motion?
I move that the board accept option two for District F to District G.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion on the floor for option two, Trustee Nicolet. Then we have a seconded by Vice President Minello. Any other discussion? Okay, I'm hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right.
Who was the second?
The second was Vice President Minello. The motion carries, the motion is unanimous, but the record show the motion does carry. And now we get on to what both my colleague and I were, were getting to, District B, C, and E, and the recommendations, we can look at the numbers, not much variance in here, but your conversation, we'll go back now to your, why don't we just go ahead and restate, if you will, Trustee Smith?
Sure, of course. I was offering to my colleagues and to our presenters, in light of what we recently just adopted for F to G, are there any areas of refinement that could come back in two weeks for us to consider again, knowing that we've gotten the body of these decisions made? Of course, I open that up to my colleagues, to whom this actually affects.
You're leaning in, you're going, Trustee Rodriguez, it would be the three of us, so we'd just make our way around, Trustee Rodriguez and Vice President Minello.
I love the idea of nice and tidy lines, and I, I know between the three of us, we do overlap schools and neighbors and whatnot. I don't know, is there a way to kind of clean this up a little bit? Have you guys discussed this, or maybe kind of spread the wealth a little bit?
So focus, focus your definition of tidiness on the closeness to zero. I'm just, I'm just teasing. We, we, we looked at a few different scenarios, and I'll walk you through them verbally. We obviously didn't include them for specific consideration in the presentation, largely because we just really didn't feel like the impact was offset by the benefit. So just sort of looking at this map, everybody knows we're golden, I mean, District C is the, the most populated. So all these options involve moving some population from C to either E or B. Another thing, and we'll talk about this a bit, but we talk about this sometimes in school enrollment rezoning, that we try to, I don't know, have the most simple adjustments, like sometimes, well, I want to make this move, but in order to make this move, I have to make room for this move through another move. Now you're impacting sort of an undue total number of individuals just to make one move. So anyway, we'll start in Golden Valley. Okay, so moving Golden Valley proper, if you will, sort of North Valleys High School and that area from C to E is an option. It doesn't perfectly align with any school enrollment boundaries, but it does fit numerically. It moves District E a little bit, makes it a little bit more populous, I don't have the precise numbers in front of us. So that's Golden Valley on the, call it northeast side of the freeway only. We then expanded it to get all of the Alice Smith enrollment zone across the street, if you will, as well. And that takes us a little bit beyond the allowable limit. So it's, it's close, but there's, there's just a lot, a lot more people across that freeway, on the other side of the freeway than you would imagine. So that one didn't work. So that Golden Valley area was an area that we looked at, it is numerically viable, we just really weren't convinced that the sort of value was there in making that change. Moving over into Sun Valley, everyone can see that that's represented as a, a community by three different districts. That's frustrating to us to a degree. We strive for a little more continuity. However, anybody that's studied Sun Valley a little bit from this standpoint knows there are some 20,000 residents in Sun Valley. It's really densely populated, there's four elementary schools. We've been very successful to unify the vertical matriculation of the schools in that area through a singular middle school and whatnot. But from a population standpoint, not student standpoint, a total population standpoint, the only way that we could get all of Sun Valley into, most logically, B, would be to significantly relieve B through another move, which is kind of what I said before, that felt excessively disruptive just to get Sun Valley into one district. The most potentially- Uh, the most uh potentially logical option for moving students or residents from C to B. If you can see how that line kind of goes across uh Seventh Avenue or whatever and then drops down Leon or whatever it is. And then, you know, that that sort of uh downward rectangle, moving that up and having that go basically straight horizontal is numerically viable um of an adjustment. Um, but again, we just really weren't sure that that didn't necessarily reconcile with any existing student or school enrollment boundaries. It's just moving a line to move a line to make it make the numbers look slightly better or make the lines look slightly straighter. So that's an option. And then lastly, over into Spanish Springs. Again, uh, from C to B, uh, we could go up to approximately uh Wingfield Hills Road, I believe it's called. Um, so again, that doesn't align with any existing school enrollment boundaries, but moving that line for B up, I mean, it's really not visible on this map, but you likely know where Wingfield Hills Road is. Uh, moving it, moving that boundary up Vista and Pyramid to Wingfield Hills Road and bring those residents into District B is a numerically viable option. That again, we just, we did not feel, I guess, um, I don't know, it didn't resonate with us as providing value. Given the level of population agreement that exists today, despite the uh non-straitness of the map that kind of looks on here, I just, I wanted to tell that story because we did look at these options and it it can become a bit of a slippery slope, you know? Hey, I just, I want to move here and here and here and trying to be a little bit, I don't know, more disciplined with like, if we're gonna make a move, it wants to provide good value. That was our thinking. And going back to the guiding principles, perhaps, that, you know, let's not, let's try to minimize disruption wherever it's possible. But for the purposes of this discussion, I wanted to describe some of the sort of due diligence that staff put into this. Um, and then also recognize that uh numerically and within the boundaries of what we're trying to accomplish here, those are all um viable options, but just weren't sure that they uh created a net positive outcome. Thank you.
Okay, that that answered a couple of questions I had. As I look at the map and and try to consider some of the little dips and someone and 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 getting the Sun Valley, the Sun Valley community together would be a real bonus for them. And regardless what district that might be. Um, and that would certainly that would pull from the, I guess, probably both of us if you really got to Sun Valley community together. Um, but then that would flow over into the District C. Now, if if and and in hearing that and 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 listening to that, if if the Sun Valley community were to come out, were to really come some out of mine, I have a small piece of it, some out of mine, some out of, some out of E and some out of C, then that would make B too large. And then the question would be, what comes out of B? Right, to most likely go into E because C is already too large, so. And I, and you, did you look at those? I think you say you were looking at those numbers. The numbers don't work or based upon the the or did I just make up a scenario?
No, no, you you're you're following the logic. It gets a little bit cumbersome with Sun Valley because it is so densely populated. But you can quickly see how I've got to move this piece to move this piece to move this piece. Now all of a sudden, we're making, we're moving five lines.
Yeah, that's true.
For what, for what positive? And um when when we're already, you know, 1% from equal or 2 and 1/2%, it was, we we wrestled with this puzzle quite a bit. And really just being frank with you guys where we're at, um, our recommendation is is to not make any change at all.
Well, I mean, go go ahead.
I mean, I do respect that, but uh, you know, when I was coming into this, I was really focused on my district, the people there. And then coming to realize that it is being represented by three different trustees is quite I can imagine frustrating. Um, and I think this would be an opportunity to actually address this because otherwise we have another roughly 10 years to look at it again. Um, something to think about.
Something I think I I guess I'd probably like to see is what what what, it would be five lines. I mean, it would be a lot of lines. It would be my line, it would be like the line from E would have to adjust, it would have to move north and have to kind of come down from the corner a little bit really because that's where Sun Valley is. Um, can you see, do you let us know what that would look like? I mean, I I if if there is an opportunity, um you know what, I I think I'm gonna land here. We haven't had, we haven't had, that's a lot of movement. Um, and I would love to be able to get that community together. We 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 haven't had um requests from that community to do that. We did have, we did, yeah, we, yeah. From that, yeah, we have. I guess we have, we have. Certainly not a lot, but we have, we have, we have had a couple. Um. Hmm, interesting. We think Vice President Manette, trust uh, is sure the trustee in District B?
Thank you, Madam President. I would love to have all of Sun Valley in B. I just, with my history with Sun Valley, I would just I would like that, but on the other hand, I don't want a ton more work for for you guys because you guys already work very hard. Thank you.
So I I would just comment. I mean, we've already explored the scenarios that I described, plus many more. Um, I think this feedback regarding uh the communities and the board's interest in trying to unify all of Sun Valley within a single trustee district is excellent feedback. It's really what we're looking for here today when we have anticipated coming back at the next board meeting with some, we've received some action here today. So I'd be perfectly happy to work up several options and several of them may fail numerically and several of them may really demonstrate themselves to be a bit too cumbersome. Um, but I I can't say for certain. I'd be happy to dive into it and bring it back for a more detailed discussion.
I think I feel I feel better about the decision against knowing that, um, that that's a, that's a lot of movement for for smaller numbers. Um, but I don't mind taking a look at what that might, then that gives that that community also an opportunity to 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 weigh in more with the with the with the stronger voice. I I will say, it it does, it it separates the community as a whole, but what it also does is it gives three districts, um, um, you know, some different, more diverse voices in those three districts that we wouldn't have ordinarily. If if we if we all lost that piece, it makes those districts, leaves those districts more homogeneous. Um, and and I like the different voices in them as well. It's like, is that worth the trade off of the the whole, the whole community being in there together? But I think diverse, diverse more voices, I I certainly enjoy that in my district. Um, and I would lose, I know I'd lose a piece of that. Superintendent?
Thank you very much. I I think um it would probably also allow um for more public comment for the next couple of weeks, which is always a good, a good thing. I think we're in a good place, a good timeline as far as the other districts are concerned. And so this allows a little bit more time for staff to take it back. You already have the kind of the line movement in your head. Now I just need to get the maps out. Um, but then this allows for more public comment, I think, just for a couple more weeks.
Mm hmm. Okay, I don't, do we, do we need a motion to that effect, counsel? Should we, should we ask staff to to come back? So so at this point, then we're looking for a motion. If it's the pleasure, I'm gonna look to my colleagues who are involved in this as well. Um, to ask the superintendent to direct staff to come back with uh with more options for B, C, and E based upon the conversation that we had. No, that's that wasn't a motion. That's, okay, there's a motion and a second. Okay, thank you. I I guess it could have been a motion. I try not to make them. I can, but I certainly try not to. Okay, so we have it happening over here, JJ. If you pick and choose, but yeah, we have it happening over here. All right. Thank you very much. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries. Let the record show this unanimous. Thank you. This is good work. Um, great work. You guys have anticipated so much. And I made this redistricting process actually really, really simple and allowed us to stay with those guiding principles that we put forth. So I I appreciate it. All right, why don't we take, uh, why don't we take a 20 minute break? We'll take a 20 minute break here. We'll have a little, little break for a little snack and we know we have a little business to take care of. So we and we have a couple of items that we said we would, we would not hear before 4 o'clock. And um we're after 4 o'clock, so that will be in line for anybody interested in those items as well. Okay, so we'll be back in uh, why don't we say 25 minutes? Because we have a meeting we gotta have. So we're gonna say 25 minutes. So we can at least be in the neighborhood and not have, not have the community just kind of waiting for us. So 25 minutes. We will come back. That should be about a quarter till. Thanks, everybody. All right, everyone, let's go ahead and get started. Thank you for indulging us. We had a bit of a little session we had to have. Okay. We're gonna jump into, oh, we already see who's in front of us. Okay. All right, we're gonna jump down because we have some guests that who are gonna be with us via Zoom. We're gonna jump down to uh agenda item 3.04 and then jump back up to EOD and 3.03 because we have guests again uh here and also joining us through Zoom. Um, okay, let's see. This is Discussion, Presentation, and Overview of the Washoe County School District Student Information System, Infinite Campus. This is for a presentation and discussion, discussion only. However, we will hear public comment on this because we know there's some uh public interest of particular on this. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Chris Turner and then you have others who are uh who are joining you. So please go go right ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I'm Chris Turner, Chief Information Officer. We're here to talk about Infinite Campus today. I'm joined by Applications Coordinator Jeff Cornelius. Uh, and also because Infinite Campus touched so many parts of the school district, we are joined by in the Office of Accountability, Chief Accountability Officer Joe Ernst and Dr. Bryn Lapenta. Hopefully they're behind me. And then Catherine Loudon, Counseling Coordinator, as well as some guests from Infinite Campus, the publisher themselves. They're in Minnesota, so we we appreciate the change in the time on the agenda because they're two hours ahead of us. So join, joining us, I think, from Infinite Campus are Jeff Galarno, Chief Technology Officer, Stephanie Sandrell, Senior Client Relationship Manager. I didn't put everything on the agenda, on the PowerPoint because it was always in flux who would be joining us, Chris Frederick, their General Counsel, and then Chief Customer Experience Officer Mike Rhodes. Let's see. Here we are. Okay. So as you may recall from previous presentations in which I participated, I prefer to provide an agenda so that expectations are clearly outlined, as you can see on the slide. And I would also like to preface this entire presentation by saying that should questions arise, we would like for everyone to please hold them until the conclusion as they may be answered later in the presentation. Slide number three. So while we're here to talk about Infinite Campus, it does help to begin with a discussion of Student Information Systems, which is the collective phrase that describes the Infinite Campus product category. So Infinite Campus is what we call a Student Information System or SIS. Student Information Systems are in use in schools across the country. And Infinite Campus, Illuminate Ed, Skyward, and Power School are just some examples of products in that K-12 market. Student Information Systems provide an abundance of functions for schools, for families, and for students alike. Like the ability to register for classes or create a student's schedule. As parents, we are most familiar with Student Information Systems because they document a student's work and their course project progress as well as the attendance in in their daily attendance or even their course attendance or their tardiness. But Student Information Systems can make schools much more efficient by supporting some other operational functions like locker assignments and whether school fees were paid. We log all that in Infinite Campus. And finally, Student Information Systems serve as a communications channel for students and families for their teachers. Uh, there are links contained in Infinite Campus or commonly in Student Information Systems for school telephone numbers, teacher voicemail extensions, and teacher email addresses. So now we move to discussing why schools use Student Information Systems. I've already covered some of those areas. Now recover them because it's important. As you can see, Student Information Systems help make schools much more efficient, as I already discussed, allowing us to collect the information that we talked about on slide number three. Areas like grades, attendance, and even the creation of a student's schedule. But Student Information Systems also keep us more informed. Transitioning us in school operations away from the old days where we had a collection of spreadsheets that were commonly out of date and maybe not necessarily well secured. And even early on in my career and in my previous position, uh, where there was those paper or those card-based emergency cards that every school collected. So if you had a large family, if you had two kids, four kids, 10 kids, you had to fill one out for every child every year. Student Information Systems allow us to move away from that antiquated record keeping and make us much more immediate and efficient. And if you do have a family with more than one child, all you have to do is fill it out once. So for families, Student Information Systems also act as a portal, a collection of information for their students. Areas like, again, grades and attendance. But also you can find your school's announcements and your school's calendar, what might, what events might be taking place in that school as well as contact information. Like I already mentioned, parents are no longer bound with a student information system. Parents are no longer bound by that 7 or 8 a.m. to 3 or 4 p.m. contact time with schools. You can use the Student Information System to click on an email address or to find a voicemail extension and leave a message with your teacher or your school. And finally, we've seen how Student Information Systems can be a catalyst for a student's own achievement. Because students can view how their effort and their performance is reflected in real time. And I've seen it in my own household. And those of you that are parents here in the district can see it for yourselves. Um, students can see the marks that they receive in class just as soon as this, as this teacher inputs those grades. They can see where there might be an attendance mistake and they can follow up with the counseling center or the office and get those amended. So we believe that Student Information Systems provide student agency, allowing students to see what has, and of course importantly, what has not been submitted. And allow students to self advocate, again, that agency word, for their own work and and, you know, help them grow into that relationship where they interact with adults and advocate for themselves. So now that I've discussed Student Information Systems in general, I'm gonna pass this off to Jeff Cornelius, who will provide additional details around our use of Infinite Campus.
Hi, Jeff Cornelius, IT Coordinator for Applications for the District. So Chris has just talked about student information kind of as a whole and what that software does. So what is Infinite Campus? Um, Infinite Campus is our district student information system. It's a web-hosted student information system. The software is managed and supported by Infinite Campus themselves. So why Infinite Campus? How do we get there? Um, our previous student information system was a product called SASE XP and it meant uh SASE Cross Platform. Um, and that was a Pearson product. And in 2008, 2009, Pearson announced that they were going to shelve it and it's the end of life. They are no longer going to support that product. So that basically forced us into a process, start looking for a new student information system. So we uh went out, um, we put an RFP out and we went through the RFP process with several vendors. Um, and uh eventually we acquired Infinite Campus through that process. So Washoe County School District, we began implementing uh Infinite Campus. And then uh and then went live with that product in the 2010, 2011 school year. Shortly after we went live with the product, a couple of years later, the Nevada Charter School Authority, and followed by Clark County, also adopted Infinite Campus, which kind of got the ball rolling. The state took a good look at it, and in school year 2015, the state adopted and implemented Infinite Campus statewide. Now, there is, the, the, the state, Nevada Department of Education, put out a memo in June of 2017, and basically that memo, they were reiterating an authority given to the state superintendent. That was actually an authority given in NRS 385A.820, which basically allowed the state to choose the student information system that all districts must adopt. And that was, by the time the memo came out, it was already a done deal. Everybody was already using it within the state, but it kind of made that official. So it's something that is mandated by the state to use, which is a good thing. Everybody's got a standard system across the board now. In 2018, the Nevada adopted, um, the Nevada IC Governance Board. And essentially, that has members from the state, that has members from every district in the state, and essentially their job is to look at functionality across the state. They look at functionality for reporting purposes, and they look at things like our updates to the system, when we can take those ones, gonna be the best time for the entire state to take them, so they're not stepping on us, like in the middle of a testing window or something along those lines. So they take all that kind of stuff into consideration, and, and really discuss their functionality. So what does Washoe County School District, what do we collect, and what does the district do with the data? Well, we collect demographic data. We track student achievement in attendance. And we fulfill both the state and federal reporting requirements. Now, when you take the product, and what we call out-of-the-box, or what we call core functionality, that's what you get. When you purchase that product, that's, that's what comes out of the box. That's what Infinite Campus supports. We have a couple of modules that shortly after implementation, that we contracted and consulted with Infinite Campus, and they built out a couple of custom modules for us. One of those modules is our MTSS module, or our Multi-Tierred Systems Support Module, and the other is our Behavior Minor. And that was at a request from those departments to add additional functionality for their programs. Digital tools. We have, um, what I would call fairly, fairly strict and rigorous process when we go through an approval process for our digital tools in this district. Once those digital tools and those educational resources go through that process, some of them require us to send student data. So the majority of the types of data that we send, depending on the functionality of those applications, would be student roster data. And we do that so that our teachers don't have to hand-enter that data. Not only at the beginning of the school year, but they would have to hand-enter and maintain that data as students change classes, as they move buildings, and things like that. So that's the data that we had, that had, that we sent up to those vendors, primarily on a nightly basis, so that they get up-to-date information, and they can see those changes from day to day. Access. So who has Infinite Campus access? In Infinite Campus, rights are assigned based on job duties and responsibilities. So the way that you can kind of start looking at it is, there's kind of a three-tiered approach to it, where you can kind of look at it. If you look at teachers, teachers at the classroom level, they have access to student data for the classes that they teach, for those students, for those classes that they teach. So if you step up a notch, and you go to building level, that's for your school office support, your principals, counselors, you get attendants, clerics. Based on what those duties are and those responsibilities are, they get to see the students in the school. And then you have the higher-tiered level, which would be your central services, academics, accountability, you get schools' leadership, IT for system support. Those are the kind of people we can grant access to one school, multiple schools, or the entire district-wide access. And when we're talking about granting access, there's read access and there's write access. So just because you're a school office support doesn't mean that you get to see everything on every student within that building. You get access to certain modules, and you may have read access to those modules, or you may have write access to those modules, depending on your job function. If you're not supposed to be in there updating data on something, you don't have access to go in and update and write the data. You get to read that data. When an employee or staff member leaves the district on separation, their access is revoked. So we have processes in place that do that. So go ahead and turn that, the next slide over to Chris. He's gonna talk a little bit further in some of the access and security features.
Thank you, Jeff. So this slide reflects some information that we've already covered, but merits repeating, because a student's attendance and grades, besides those, those areas, families also have access to other information that I talked about, like school announcements and notable upcoming dates. Importantly, though, parents only have access to the core Infinite Campus product through the parent portal, whether that means through the website, if you log on to the website, or you use the app. What Washoe County parents can see in Infinite Campus Parent Portal parallels what all parents can see in any use of Infinite Campus in other school districts. But as Jeff discussed in slide number six, the Washoe County School District has contracted with Infinite Campus for tabs beyond the core product. Areas that were identified that were important by other departments here in the district, like the Behavior Minor tab and the Multi-Tierred System of Support Module. As I said, those were areas that were identified as important, where we could track information, and those were developed by those departments in Infinite Campus directly. That we, we had, we just support the tool, we, we weren't involved in the, in the creation of those modules. Families can request a written copy of their student's Infinite Campus record by submitting a scrib order via the Student Accounting webpage on our district website. So you just go to washoeschools.net, go to Student Accounting, and the scrib order link is there. But families also have the opportunity to view their own student's information by making an appointment with the school, the principal or the teacher. They can look over the principal or teacher's shoulder at the Infinite Campus record there. And I think that's it, and now I'll pass it off to the Accountability Office. We'll play musical chairs here.
Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome, Dr. Lapenta.
Hi.
Oh, hi, I was gonna, I was gonna welcome you too, but...
Um, it's President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, members of the Board of Trustees. My name's Bryn Lapenta, and I work in the Department of Student Accounting. So Student Accounting is, has two divisions. One is records, and one are all things to do with things like enrollment and withdrawal. So today, my role here is about records. So we use a document from the State Archivist that is called the Local Government Records Retention Schedule, and that tells us how long to keep documents, how long we should keep our records, our student records. It varies how long we keep them. Some of them are two years, like attendance. Some of them are permanent, like transcripts. And then most of them are able to be deleted after a student, six years after the student had graduated. So when we talked about this in the Infinite Campus Governance Board, which is a statewide board, as Jeff had talked about earlier, we, we set a time to delete, to where we would like to delete the records for age 28, because students who receive special education services can go to school until they're 22. So since most records can be deleted after that, they can be deleted six years after that. That would set the age at 28. So we've set, for our records that we're currently deleting in student records, we delete those in June of the 28th birth year, after noticing parents via the newspaper. Currently, we have discussed with Infinite Campus, they do not have any kind of global functionality to allow for the mass deletion of data. And I believe one of the reasons for that is that things are so intertwined. You know, schedules hold grades, grades, make transcripts, and all of that data. Student enrollment data is what also holds that. So I think that there, there are pieces of that, and so it hasn't been something that they have, have a, developed a functionality for at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Lapenta. Dr. Taylor, Dr. McNeil, fellow members of the board, Joe Ernst, Chief Accountability Officer. So in the, in the Accountability Department, Infinite Campus plays a pretty critical role in meeting the, the reporting requirements that are required by state, Nevada, and the federal government. What we have is, we have a number of state, federal requirements that come with various grants that we receive. We have comprehensive evaluations that we run to demonstrate how we have fulfilled the grants that we are awarded. And Infinite Campus system makes it considerably more efficient for us to get at various system-wide data. Infinite Campus is really, it's a central data repository for student achievement data and student data consolidation. It helps us gather important information to inform the district, and at school-level decisions, that we use this data to help drive various decisions. And so we're, we're making data-driven decisions. And then when you look at transparency, uh, one of the frequented web pages that we have is WCSDdata.net. What that does is, that is comprehensive overview of our school district. It shows you how many school enrollments we have. It shows us how many staff that we have. It indicates school S-BAC data, and all of this is transparent for our public. It shows graduation rates with the specific schools. And again, everybody can access this, and Infinite Campus is the system that really binds this together. And then you can also see on that same website, national data comparisons, which we know are also very helpful. So with that, I will turn it over to Mrs. Loudon.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, through this process of looking at Infinite Campus, I really appreciate what Dr. Turner said, which is, it really enabled us to kind of take a look backwards. And so those of you who have been in and around working with schools 28 years ago and had access to several different programs, I'm sure what Dr. Ernst, or what Joe Ernst and Dr. Turner and my colleagues were talking about is really how much it improved the boots-on-the-ground at the school level. And Infinite Campus is something that, when I talk to school counselors, school social workers, teachers, students, and parents, which I did as a result of having this presentation, what I really found is, it's not just two-way communication. Because it involves the student and all of the systems supporting the student, it really provides a way for students to have individualized access and consistency. And Infinite Campus provides a structure that enables a parent to directly access a teacher, a teacher to directly access a parent, to save time, when instead of having all these sticky notes and big things on the wall to do your master scheduling, like people used to do in the past, you can very quickly see if courses are available, if the student needs that information, if there is something in place for them. You can also, what's really neat is, you can, they can, the students themselves, check their quizzes, their grades, and have an opportunity to turn that around immediately, because it's in real time. So a parent can log into Infinite Campus and find out, before the end of their morning, if their student's attendance is in order or updated. And a staff member at the school can look at attendance and see if someone called, or if that's been called in immediately. Students that transfer from school to school, there's consistency in providing the information. Whereas before, when people had multiple files and things to look at, you had to see if the language spoken at home was English or not, and through a variety of different ways, and you heard Dr. Turner talk about that. Our teachers didn't have a capacity where they could actually contact in a whole class at a time. Grade books were not consistent the way that they are now. You couldn't even check to see if a student was in a class without Infinite Campus, without going through a whole bunch of different steps, because you can pull up their schedule. And when I talk to school counselors and school social workers and teachers, what they say they like about Infinite Campus is the way that it organizes everything for them so that they can do their jobs better in the long run. And students like it, because they can interact with it in ways that people talked about. So things like, um, some other examples that we talked about with counselors was that whole continuity of care, being able to make sure that students have what they need. There's also some crisis management, emergency response advantages to Infinite Campus. It's a safety tool. Being able to access parents, being able to address if someone has had feelings of suicide, being able to locate them immediately in an emergency, being able to tell if they have a nut allergy, or if they have accommodations or needs that wouldn't be in place otherwise, helps to save lives. And what I found through this process, and what I really learned through this kind of walk-through history and these conversations with counselors, social workers, teachers, and counselors, is how much, they very much like Infinite Campus in general, and how they use it in their jobs every day.
Thank you, Catherine. With that, we would like to invite Dr. Turner, Mr. Cornelius, back to the podium. And they'll be introducing our, our guests from Infinite Campus.
Okay, thank you both so much.
So we're joined remotely with the publisher, Infinite Campus. They're located in Minnesota. And I think they'll be, they're zooming in, and we'll give them the next slide, if I can advance the slide. Whoops, I went too far. There we go. So I'd like to welcome Infinite Campus, and, um, I can't see who's online, but I'd like to welcome Infinite Campus, whoever it may be, Jeff Galarno, Stephanie Sandrell, Chris Frederick, and Mike Rhodes.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, it's propagating. There's Jeff.
Good afternoon. Before I introduce myself, can everybody hear me okay?
Now we're gonna get a little more volume on them.
It's a little faint.
Okay, I will...
There we go.
I will work to raise my voice and make myself clear.
You're very clear now, thank you.
Okay, very good. Let me know if that fades. Uh, good afternoon again. My name is Jeff Galarno, and I am the Chief Technology Officer at Infinite Campus. Dr. Turner asked me to very briefly speak to a couple of topics, one of which is concerning some requests that the school district has received for our database schema information. Oftentimes, this is referred to as our data dictionary. Now, we do share this information with our district customers upon request, but this, this information, because it is confidential information concerning our product, we share that documentation only under a signed non-disclosure agreement. The school district does not have our permission or authority to share this information with anyone other than staff members who have a need to know. The second topic that I was asked to talk to is in regards to our company's focus on security and data privacy. Now, as you may be aware, as mentioned earlier... Now, as you may be aware, as mentioned earlier, we operate our own data center to provide our student information system for district customers. This means that we provision and manage all of the hardware and software that is necessary for the school district customers to use our SIS in our production setting. As such, we must operate a highly secure data center to ensure that our system remains FERPA compliant. That is very, very critical for us. We take extreme precaution to ensure that there are no security vulnerabilities, ranging from, you know, the perimeter of the network endpoints, all the way to within the application itself. But recognizing that a vendor statement on this topic is not enough, we undergo an annual system and organization control audit. This is conducted by a third party. It is commonly referred to as a SOC audit or a SOC report. It is very common in our industry. The audit report itself is governed by the American Institute of CPAs, and is specifically designed for organizations such as ours to validate that we operate a secure and a reliable system. Now, we do this annually. The audit period runs from February 1st through January 31st. In this report, year over year, we have historical record that indicates we, there have been no known security breaches resulting from network or application vulnerabilities over the course of our business. We do share this audit report with district customers upon request, but similar to the schema information, it too is only disclosed under a non or under a signed nondisclosure agreement. So in closing, I'd like to say, Infinite Campus focuses exclusively on K-12 education in the United States, and we've been doing so for 28 years. We serve roughly 2,000 district customers with over 8 million students. And as was mentioned earlier, that includes all of the school districts in the state of Nevada. Security and data privacy are paramount to our organization, and we take the protection of student information very, very seriously. I want to thank you for giving me the few minutes today to speak to this, and I will now turn it back to Washoe County School District.
Thank you, Jeff. That concludes our presentation. I'd like to take Pete Etchar, the astute COO's advice and provide pictures of students rather than, say, questions with a question mark or Q&amp;A time.
Okay. Why don't we do this? I was gonna say, I know we're gonna have some public comment on this, and I'd rather let's go ahead and hear that. We don't typically have public comment on items that are not action items, but we know this is of a good deal of public interest, so we want to allow that opportunity. So if we do have public comment cards, I think we do, J.J., why don't we get, if it's okay with the board, and then we'll come back and have some discussion. This is not an action item, so we'll come back and have some discussion. And then, any of us who have questions, Dr. Turner asks that we hold them until the end. And then our friend, our guest from Infinite Campus, thank you for being here and sticking around while we go through this, we appreciate it. We know it's much later back there in Minnesota, so. And I doubt very seriously if the sky looks, still looks as blue as it does behind you. I think you're cheating. I think you're cheating. I think you're cheating. Okay, but why don't we go ahead with our public comment, and then we'll bring it back here to the board.
John Appolito.
Welcome, Mr. Appolito.
Thank you. My name is John Appolito, and I'm with Protect Nevada Children. And at protectnevadachildren.org, you can find some of the information about Infinite Campus that's not mentioned in the presentation. Plus, you can find the instructions on how to find all the data stored about your children in Infinite Campus. You can also find 1,500 of us on our Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children. Of course, the three minutes is not near enough to respond to the presentation you just saw. One or two of the board members wanted to allow Protect Nevada Children ample time to respond. A couple of quick things. The federal government paid about a billion dollars so 49 states would have massive databases that are compatible. Nevada spent their $13.5 million on Infinite Campus and Power and Sane. The ACLU and the 10th Amendment Center both opposed the creation of these statewide longitudinal databases. Both Education Week and the National Review wrote about their opposition to these databases. Experts have called Infinite Campus "the most massive database ever created on students." We know of at least seven data breaches Infinite Campus has been involved in. The district refused to provide a list of all the data fields in Infinite Campus, but this district in Colorado does publish the list. They just said it was the same, 82 pages, thousands of data fields. The problematic data stored forever on our children in Infinite Campus is the discipline, minor discipline, MTSS, medical, and counseling, which includes psychiatric. It is important to note that Washoe County School District, middle school counselor that recently got arrested on child pornography charges, had access to the private counseling tab they just spoke about, that most parents don't even know exists. It is also important to note that third-party vendors like communities and schools have access to everything in Infinite Campus on students they work with. Remember, Paul? A subset of IC data is shared with the Nevada Department of Education for their Sane system. This is 49 pages, thousands, about 1,000 data fields, and it also includes discipline, minor discipline, medical, psychiatric. It's all in here. Sane data is stored forever. No one really knows the implications of Sane in the Infinite Campus databases, and how that may affect the future of our kids. Just the fact that these databases exist is very problematic. I wish you board members were more concerned. Again, to learn how to view and/or print all the data stored in Infinite Campus, go to our website, protectnevadachildren.org, and you can find us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. And I probably will publish something as a response to this, and then I'll let you guys know how to find it later, because this is not near enough time. All these people, it's not right. I think some of the board knows that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
Melanie Sutton.
Staff just want to see if they can find, let's call someone else, and we'll come back to Ms. Sutton.
Dawn Gallimore.
We'll have her come, we'll have her come in just a moment. It's okay. Okay, you're right here, okay. We were just gonna skip you and go back. You weren't gonna miss your turn, come on.
Thank you, good afternoon.
You're welcome, Ms. Sutton.
Sorry.
Sorry, take your time, get your phone.
What?
You okay?
Huh?
I'm, you take your time, you're good.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Ms. Taylor, I would like to thank you for the mask that you are wearing, even though I don't agree with masks. My mother is a three, two-time survivor of breast cancer in the last three years. But I would like to agree with John Appolito on what he said, even though I wasn't here. He texted it to me. Originally, I thought, when I first moved here, I thought Infinite Campus was amazing. I was like, this is awesome, I can keep track of my kids, blah, blah, blah. And then after the last two years, realizing what Infinite Campus was about, and realizing how they're tracking my kids, I'm like, that's scary. So, yeah, so I'd like to agree with what John had to say, and again, thank you for your mask.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
Dawn Gallimore.
And by the way, Ms. Sutton, I hope your mom's doing okay. I missed it, but I do. I understand, I hope she's doing okay. Mr. Gallimore, welcome.
Hello, there, Board, Trustees, and Superintendent. Sad to see you go, whenever that is. I'm Don Gallimore, Sr., longtime citizen of Reno, Nevada, and opponent to Infinite Campus and anything data collection-driven. I've been up here for decades. When they said Common Core, I said, hell, no. But for the most part, I'm trying to make sure that my kids, who are now adult age, and now my grandkids are safe. I know that Infinite Campus is, or was a part of Edmodo. Edmodo was sold to the Chinese, so any data that they shared, I'm sure the Chinese have. So our kids aren't safe, and neither are you. But for the most part, I just wanted to mention that Infinite Campus has so much information about our kids that we can't even comprehend. And I would hope that those proprietary services or service that you have are truly what you said, that they are highly protected and leave our students' data private, as private as we can. One of the other things is that we really should know that cradle to grave is, I'm a citizen lobbyist here, unpaid, and I've been doing it since 2009. And one of the things that, one of the pieces of legislation that we had here in Nevada is that the information would be from preschool to, and this is legislated, preschool to, I don't remember, 10 years after graduation from college, eight years from graduation from college, something like that. And then I've been notified that this cradle to grave collection and storage is in fact in place. So I would like to have basically some clarification on that if you can, because cradle to grave information storage is far too much. It's more than anybody needs. Our children and seniors' information is the most vulnerable. And so every time that information is stored, it's stored forever, and it can be used against children and the aged. So I want to make sure that the cradle to grave situation, and I fought for it for a long time, does not currently exist. And that's pretty much it. So thank you very much. You guys have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Gallimore.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Duran.
So I saw, I saw your presentation about Inter Campus, so I did read about, this is Nevada, talk about, okay, so this is Protect Nevada Children. It's a, I know John Appolito talked about the property of cancer of Deshays Middle School being charged, that's their concern about the campus. You know, you now notice that many teacher administrative, mean, the teacher administrative have an asset for Inter Campus, you know, to grade student, you know, teacher will grade student, administrator to put policy on a behavioral policy, something like that. So if a administrator or teacher find out, have information about student, find out student who, that a student, and so come out and like have a, doing an appropriate manager, I think that we should do a hell of, they should be held accountable for that. So I do note, I do, I saw the news, saw the news. This is Reno, so I saw news that there was a few report cases on data, I think that we did a pretty good job, except the cancer over here being charged. And I think that we should take a more act, more training for police administrator to learn like, there will be a concrete strategy for, if we do, if we sell information to the students.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
That's all I have for this item.
Thank you very much, J.J. Let's bring it back here to the table, and again, thank you to our guests and staff who are here for questions, comments along the way. I know that there, I know there are a lot, there was a lot of writing going on while this was happening, so we'll start with Trustee Smith, and we'll go to Vice President Minnetal.
Thank you so much, President Taylor. I have a few questions, but want to make sure to spread the time around. And I also do understand, Mr. Galarno, that some of these questions might fall under that confidentiality agreement. Feel free to tell me if that's the case. My first question is, who owns the data? Does Infinite Campus own this data, or does Washoe County School District own this data that's being collected?
Are you dropping that? I'm sorry.
It's okay. Who did you direct your question to?
To be honest, I'm not entirely sure. Whoever feels that they are the right person to answer the question, if that's okay. We have, we have so many presenters here.
You, Washoe County.
I will, I will respond to that. In every case, in every case, the school district owns the data. Infinite Campus does not own the data.
Wonderful. And so my follow-up is, is data sold at any time ever?
No.
If I may, is it shared, other than what, we know what the agreement is here, we have, we share it with the state. Is it shared outside of that at any time ever? Just to piggyback on what my colleague has asked.
Sorry, there is data shared with our digital tools, our educational resource providers. That's part of that process, where we have a strict, rigorous process where those data sharing, there's data sharing agreements that are in place, they look over their privacy policies, and that language that they are not allowed to sell to third parties, it's all in there. The FERPA language, it's in our data sharing agreements.
Okay, okay, thank you. I was related, so I thought I'd jump in, Trustee Smith, thank you. You said you had, you wanna?
I do, but I'm sure some of my colleagues.
Spread the love, okay, gotcha. Spread the love, gotcha. Vice President Minnetal?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. So the parents can look in there and see little Joey was a naughty little boy that whole week. Can, do the parents have any say about when, if they can pull that out? If they can say, can I have that sponged? Can I, do the parents have any, or is it just there? Here she comes.
If Dr. Lapenta, yes, go right ahead.
I have another question, too.
Let's make sure we get your mic on.
But?
Okay, good, thank you.
Hi. For the record, Bryn Lapenta, Senior Director of Student Accounting. Parents can dispute a record, and there's a process for that. We have that on our website, on the FERPA page, on how to challenge a record. And basically, the parent provides in writing to the principal what they feel is inaccurate, false, or misleading, and then the principal reviews that and makes a determination.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I ask one more question?
Please.
Is, is teacher data included in this? You know, we have MS, PGA, PGA, PGO. Is this strictly for the kids and then the teachers? Because teachers can have disciplinary letters, too, and things like that in their files as such.
There's not human resources data within Infinite Campus. There's some basic teacher data that's associated with their demographic profile. It's associated with those students in those classes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Minnetal. Trustee Chair, you go, and then I have a couple of questions myself.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Appolito raised a number of interesting questions, and my concern is not Infinite Campus, it could be Joe's Services, it doesn't matter. The question is who, what, when, why, and how long? And what I'm hearing is, A, it's cradle to grave, or basically from the time they sign up till whenever. My understanding too, so correct me on any, I'll make statements, and then correct me if anybody, if I'm wrong. We have, in the school district, contract employees, psychologists, you know, mental health, et cetera, who have access to it. So they don't work for us, but they are vetted. My third comment is, there's, if I heard the speaker right, there's no data breaches at the headquarter, Infinite Campus level, but there have been data breaches at the different school district levels, or whoever else the users are. My fourth, and this is a question, have we had Infinite Campus data breaches here at Washoe County School District? And I guess that's enough for now.
Okay, those are sort of common sorts, class questions, and then just some feedback or some responses, if we have some to staff or to Mr. Cornelius? I think it's Cornelius? Yeah. Please, Howard. Mr. Cornelius?
Yeah.
And Dr. Lapenta, you're up as well.
So there is nowhere in Infinite Campus where there's a mechanism for us to delete data, so.
I'm sorry, there's what?
There is no mechanism for us to delete an entire student record. So those students that we've had since the beginning of Infinite Campus are in the system, and they're still in the system, and the data- in the system, and they're still in the system, and the data that's associated with that.
If I may follow up on, another short question, if I may follow up, is that true, I know there's a base level, I guess, a baseline level of data, so to speak, that the state, you know, the demographics and some of those things. And then there are also modules, I think, with the term that was used, right? That we put in, do we control that, do we control the either storing or deletion of that data, the, that we've asked, that we've added additionally? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and the data is still there, and it's all associated. We don't go through those modules and delete any data either, because it is integrated within the system. So there's, there's not a time where we're going to go in there and wipe out a student record, or we're not going to go in and take chunks and pieces off of student records. We've never had to do that. We've never done that.
If I can jump in, what Jeff is, what Jeff is talking about is, there's no field in this database that allows us to massively delete a field. So we, if, if, in the instance where it was determined that we no longer wanted a certain field of data, there's, we would have to go into each student's record and delete it individually, press save, and move on to the next. There's no functionality for the mass deletion of data.
Right, and it's, and I'm referring to the record in its entirety. So on an individual, in its entirety, that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I guess my, I didn't mean an individual field, what I meant, I guess because, let's say there are five general fields that we keep, because that's what the state requires, and let's say there's five extras, totally making this up. And you're saying there's no mechanism to delete the five that we know we all keep, that the state requires, and yeah, then that's for the state to determine, however that works, right? But there's no opportunity for us to say, once these students get past a certain age, right, as you said, Dr. Lapinta, after, after the age of 28, because of our special, special students are involved in special ed and whatnot, the age of 28, we can't go back, Angie Taylor was a student 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, and now I'm 30, I just, right? And so we can't go back and say, okay, let's, I know the math is bad, but just work with me, okay? It's 28, I know, but anyway, let's, so we can't go back and say, okay, well, now she's made 28 years old, and so at the end of this school year, everybody that finished at a certain point, eight years, we can, we can purge those records, there's no.
That functionality does not exist in Infinite Campus as it is today.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I think, I think, Ms. Cornella, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Mr. Cornella, I'm gonna turn this, I guess, to you. Is there any conversation about, because there's so much concern around student, around, and rightly so, right, student data, data privacy, I certainly understand, just as one trustee, I certainly understand the need to keep information on students. To collect, it helps us manage, manage their educational process, their support, all of those things that are necessary, testing, I mean, those things are absolutely necessary, certainly. But at a certain point, when we no longer need that data, when it doesn't make sense for us anymore, like after the age of 28, for an example, to keep that data, is there any conversation at your level to provide a mechanism for that, some kind of an update or something, so that the data, data doesn't live in the cloud, or on a server somewhere in perpetuity?
Jeff?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Cornella, I'm sorry, I was directing that to you, sir. With Infinite Campus, is there any conversation at the, at the Infinite, at your level at Infinite Campus to create a mechanism so that at a certain point, if districts were interested in purging student records at a certain point, right, when it, when it made sense that that's allowable? Because right now, there's, there's no mechanism for that.
Correct. There is no mechanism directly in the user interface of the product. There is a mechanism to do that programmatically at the database level. To the best of my knowledge, we haven't received that request from any school districts, but programmatic access to the database would be the only way to do that. We have not had discussions about building such functionality into the, into the user interface.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm hearing is that, that that's something that should a school district, whether it's us or any other school district, for an example, say, hey, you know what, at some point, we want to be able to purge student records after a certain period, or whatever the case may be. That's a conversation they may be able to have with you, and, and so there may be a mech, there may be a way to allow that to happen, not at our level, but perhaps at your level.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir, as of interest, I didn't know that was, so thank you for that. I appreciate that. And then I will, I have a couple more, if I can get to a couple more questions. Let's see, do we know how, so because it's all in, in Infinite Campus, the data that the state collects, it's in there in perpetuity as well, right? Because it's all in ICP, you answered that question. Let's see. Just to follow up a little bit on the, on the data breach information, certainly has been shared in our community, we heard it tonight, that there have been several data breaches, but I know at the, at the headquarters level, there hasn't been any. Have we had data breaches here? Or how many? I know there's been, and that conversation has gone on for a long time in the community. I love to just say, yeah, this is, this is what the deal is, and so we, at least we know what's happened, and how we making sure it isn't going to happen again, and any of that stuff will be very helpful.
The discussions of the data breaches that come up, and with respect to what Jeff explained from Infinite Campus, nothing has occurred at the headquarters. Those other news stories related to Infinite Campus data breaches occurred at the school level in other school districts.
How about us?
I'll defer to Jeff on the history of data breaches here, related to Infinite Campus.
I'm not aware of any data breaches here. The only data breaches within Infinite Campus that I'm aware of are where somebody may have compromised their username and their password, and it has gotten out, and somebody may have gained access that way. Outside of that, I don't know of any other data breaches, and I'm not aware of any within our district.
There isn't really data breach, that's something.
Jeff, are you aware of any other within Infinite Campus that didn't occur that way, where somebody's username and password was compromised, and that's how they were, they gained the access?
That is the only way that I'm aware of, where people have done that.
Yeah, so it's really a matter of, like, your bank account, they get hold of that, then.
Right, right, so that's, that's a little different understanding, thank you very much.
What we've seen is, it's savvy students watching a student log, or a teacher log in, when they look over, I've seen it in my career, too, where they just ask the teacher to check the grade, and you watch the teacher key in, and then you know that, then you know it, and then your account is breached that way. That's why we emphasize password security.
Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to you, Trustee Rodriguez, and there may, go ahead.
So kind of going on to, I imagine, year after year, building all this cloud or server space, having students now could be willing to their, you know, late 20s, early 30s, building up this information, who's, who's paying for that? If we're unable to delete it, or unless, unless we're, how are we paying for that? I mean, I imagine this cloud or this service, building, 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 saving on some information. I know I got a cloud service for Google with my family, costs me money every month.
Well, you pay for it as part of our contract. So server space, storage space, whatever we need, it's part of the contract.
So would it be physically conservative to try to delete some of this space, make room for new?
With Infinite Campus specifically, we pay by student, it's a flat rate through, and I think that the whole state gives it at our same rate. So we pay by our active students, so the fact that we have more data over time, I don't believe that that's part of the contracts that we're, we're paying for. I don't think we're having to pay for extra space as that blows, as that grows. Is that right, Jeff? As far as you know?
We do charge for a per student per year, that's active enrollment, as you said, plus there is a fee for storage, and you are operating on what we call the campus cloud choice offering. And there is a, there is a storage cost for that as well. I do not know off the top of my head what that charge is.
Right, but I guess, Jeff, the question is, is if we're growing drive space over time, storage space, is our cloud storage space different? And does it grow over time based on how much data we've had stored in there?
It does grow over time. I do not know the, the terms of the contract.
Okay.
For that storage.
So we're paying for inactive students that are graduated, graduated, dropped out, what have you, so we're paying for inactive students?
Well, however much our storage, our storage is, whatever the algorithm is in calculating that, then we would be paying for that.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. We're going to go to Dr. Nicollet, Trustee Smith, and then we're going to go to our student trustee, Ivy.
Thank you, trustee Joe, that's, that's a wonderful question. I was wondering myself about the, the circle of life there. I am confused, though. Dr. Lapinta mentioned that at 28, there's this Infinite Campus Committee in Nevada, and it's, thank goodness for that, because we're all having to use it. But I'm confused, what was the age 28 have to do with, is that just when we stop collecting, but we, we still keep it?
I think, I think what I'm saying to you is that we're, as a state, concerned also with the data that we're holding on students, because good record's practice is to offload the data when you don't need it anymore. And so we do that in our, in the department where we have records that are electronic that we store in on-base. So those, like, are transcripts and have to be kept forever, so those are permanently archived. But parent permissions, testing data, that kind of stuff, we, we get rid of all of that stuff when the students are 28 on June 30th.
And that's through Infinite Campus, so we get rid of? No. Okay, thank you.
However, we, as a state, determined that we do want to get rid of this. So we then talked to Infinite Campus, and they did not have any kind of functionality to do that. So we have been talking to them, how do we do this? And I think that's what Jeff was talking about before.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And I know we're not, this is discussion only tonight, and I appreciate that you're working on that, because I think that's definitely a must. That data has to.
I agree with you 100%.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you. And I'm certain that Infinite Campus, with their experience, can make that happen. My next question has to do with, wonderful handout, my gosh, so much information and agreements, and, and I'm not an attorney, but I do understand this document, the Infinite Campus Clarification Document. So these, the system architecture, security architecture, et cetera, who chooses these functionality items? And, and how are they chosen? They're very discreet items, and I, there's not enough detail for me to really understand them, but does this change? How do you, how do you make these decisions? Let me read the topics. System architecture, security architecture, student demographics, and then requirements, and then there's attendance reporting, and office attendance requirements, behavior and discipline requirements, and then there's the parent-student access. So is there, like, a long list of functionalities that you can choose from, and then do we, as a school district, choose each item?
I'm going to answer that with a yes and a no, because there are certain modules, like the Infinite Campus, they've got a nutrition services model, module, that we do not use, because we have our own. So that's a module you can pick and choose, some of those things. Some of the core functionality within the application, immunization, attendance, your basic demographic screens, grading, those things all come as part of that core product, and it is not like a à la carte menu, you can choose, pick and choose. But there are different modules within Infinite Campus that you can choose whether or not to use. Online registration, our state is paying for that now, but that was a module that, actually, we worked with Infinite Campus to develop, and then it became part of core product, but we could opt not to use online registration as a district if we wanted to. It's a great product, state's paying for it now, but, so there are pieces and parts of the, the application that you can choose from, and, but the majority of the core functionality of the student information system itself, you cannot.
I understand that. Okay, thank you. And so then my final question is going to put you on the spot, but, and maybe our good friend in Minnesota. You know, the dynamics of this are ever-changing, we know that, this is technology, and software is, you know, tomorrow you've got this, and next week you're going to need that. Are you, as experts in Washoe County School District, and I ask this as a trustee, because I need to feel that you feel good, do you think this is a good product? Is Infinite Campus responsive? And when you find a fatal flaw, which I know you do, is Infinite Campus, Minnesota, are they responsive to us, and react favorably and expediently?
My opinion on it is that Infinite Campus is an outstanding product. I was on the RFP committee when we went through student information systems all over the nation. We went through a whole bunch of them, and got it down to three, to the top three, and at the end of the day, I still believe that today, it's the best product available, as far as the student information system goes. It is integrated, fully integrated, and as a database person, I kind of understand what that means, but that means that, you know, some of our kids that are at one school and other schools, when they transfer, their information's transferring with them, everything is following them. Depending on your level of access, you can look up and see data at different locations. Infinite Campus as a vendor is outstanding. We have a relationship where we have a call center, where we can call in cases to them, problems and things like that, but we also have an escalation path that we can take. So myself and another one of my employees, we are both on that escalation path, so if something critical comes up, not only do we log a call with their call center, we both make a phone call, and Infinite Campus is on it. We've had outages in the past with Infinite Campus. They've been very quick, as quick as can be, to get our outages back up and running. They're responsive to our requests. If we have functionality that we want developed, they're happy to get on the phone with us and figure out what those business requirements would be, and to help us determine if it's something that's feasible or not. And my experience with them has been outstanding, it's been great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelia. Trustee Smith, and then student trustee Ivy.
I'm happy to go after student trustee, but no.
Okay, sure, thank you. Always want to hear from the students.
Thank you so much. I just want to say, I, I really enjoy Infinite Campus, just by sitting here today, I've had three notifications telling me about my grades, I know exactly what teacher I need to talk to tomorrow, and what I need to do to raise my grade in the class. And I, I really haven't ever heard a lot of complaints with Infinite Campus from other students, except for students complaining that their grade is too low, or they didn't deserve that grade, is really the biggest complaint I hear. But I did want to ask, I do have, personally, and I know other students, too, with, like, a complicated health history. I know looking on the app itself, I can see that, I can see all my vaccination records, which is great, and all my immunization records, but I was wondering, do they ever, like, list out your 504 plan exactly, and what accommodations you have, or if you have an IEP? Is that ever enlisted within Infinite Campus?
The data is there, I'm just not sure what kind of access. I don't think that you would have that access as a student to that, but the data does exist in Infinite Campus now. When we're talking about IEP information, we have another system that's outside of Infinite Campus, so we don't generally use all of that IEP information. Some of the special education, based on state requirements, we take from our special education application, and we import that in, the basics for state reporting requirements, and that gets pushed to the state. Other than that, that IEP information doesn't exist in Infinite Campus.
If I may add, just, Ms. Loudon got up, because she can add to this, she's our director of counseling, and so she can provide a little more insight on that. Get your mic on, Kathy.
Thank you so much for that. I want to speak specifically to 504. All the 504 information and forms are not in the 504 flag in Infinite Campus. We also have other places where we keep that information, similar for students with an individual education plan. However, there- and forms are not in the 504 flag in Infinite Campus. We also have other places where we keep that information similar for students with an individual education plan. However, there are some accommodations that are shared with teachers, which is a part of that Office of Civil Rights Compliance ensuring their equitable access to their education program. So there is some of the accommodations in Infinite Campus to make sure that teachers, and only the teachers of the student that has them, and other partners that would be in the school that have been, like we talked about the roles, assign that information, would have that information.
Perfect. Thank you.
And your question was surrounding if that, if students can access that information?
Well, more from the same point of like, if a teacher were to pull up my like profile in Infinite Campus, would they see that, oh, she has like a 504 marking and what do I need to do to, like if she needs to test in a separate room or what accommodations I need to set up?
Yes, absolutely. So a teacher would have access to that information, just the accommodations, so that they could be sure that all the teachers that you had yourself specifically could be compliant with the 504.
Okay. And then I have another question regarding, so if I graduate and then 10 years down the line, I say I want to go to law school or join a community college or get another degree, and I need my high school transcript, I would be able to go back to my original high school and get my transcript? Do you have all that data?
Dr. Lapenta?
Bryn Lapenta from Student Accounting. For the record, I, yes, we have that, we have the system called Scribborder. And you can order online or you can call 775-861-4428 and get a live person to help you. And we have to, we're required by law, the document I talked about earlier where the state archivist has all, tells us how long we have to keep everything, we're required to keep your transcript forever and even after you die. So it, it goes beyond the grave because we have some from the 1800s.
Oh.
Good, too. No, thank you.
Yeah. So if you ever get that old, you know, you can, that'll be available for you.
However, and I also would tell you that if you were a student who had a 504 and you go to college and the college would like to see your 504, we could also get that for you because we will have it until you turn 28.
That was my other question. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Then we're going to go back to trustee Smith. Then we'll hit trustee Church. I have a couple of other questions as well, so.
Thank you so much, President Taylor. The first thing I wanted to say is that I really do actually appreciate the members of our community that do pay close attention to this. I think that this is a very, very important matter. And I think that the more critical thinking that goes into it and the different perspectives really brings us to a better outcome. So thank you very much for those people that do bring those things up. I also want to note that I did look up the information that was on the paper that was handed out. I do see on that that those breaches were apparently on the site level or they represented attempted attacks that did not appear to be successful. But I do want it noted that I did review that paper and I do appreciate those outside eyes. With that said, I have a question about where the data is kept. Are you able to confirm that geographically this data is only kept within the United States? Or does it ever go overseas to a data center abroad?
I can confirm that it is all kept within the United States. None of the data goes abroad.
Thank you very much. And my last question, I do appreciate that we've got that yearly SOC 2 audit, which is great. I know that, I'm sure a lot of this is very proprietary. But could you just give us some high-level overview of the type of internal auditing that might happen, code scanning, that kind of thing about how Infinite Campus is monitoring itself internally?
You mentioned code scanning. A lot of it is around our operational controls that we have in place anytime a system is updated, following specific processes. I don't have it up in front of me right now, so I really can't give much more of a specifics on what those controls would be. It's largely on our operational processes and those processes, including systems that we use. For example, application code scanning, looking for vulnerabilities in the application itself, scanning our network, looking for vulnerabilities. And that those are run on a regular basis and reviewed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you trustee Church. Trustee Smith, now going to trustee Church.
Thank you very much. Again, comments and questions. Number one, I think we've experienced nationwide data breaches that nobody knew about. So I, number one, I'd have to say, you don't know what you don't know. We don't know of any data breaches, but that's not, nobody could positively guarantee there hasn't been any, you know, locally or nationally. And there's always the bad actors, as Mr. Appolito talked about. There's always, yeah, he had access, but he turned out to be a bad actor. Now, question. What if, and if I understand right, this is, Infinite Campus is statewide, is that correct? So if we as a board wanted to cancel Infinite Campus for whatever reason, how could we do that?
It's not an option. You'd have to go through the Nevada Department of Education. The state superintendent has the authority to name the student information system that all districts must adopt.
And then if I heard right, we're paying for data storage that never ends, but we can't get out of it. I don't know how much we're paying, whether it's pennies or whether it's thousands of dollars, but we're, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, that's a catch 22, isn't it?
I think it is. We'd have to look at those algorithms for storage.
So we don't know if it's pennies or thousands or, we don't know.
Right. Today, I don't have the answer for it. We could probably look that up and try to figure it out.
I'd sure like some, an answer. And then, so now, again, 20 years, 30 years from now, somebody does a Nevada revised 239 public document request and says, I'm, I'm 45 years old or whatever, I want my information, tell me what's stored on there. We would have to comply and that would take a lot of staff time, right? That's a yes, I'm seeing you nod.
Yes, absolutely.
Hi, Bryn Lapenta, student, what's my department, student accounting. So I have student records. And so if, if your person, we do a thorough search whenever you request all your records, no matter what database, you know, we have lots of databases, including microfiche, that we're currently converting to e-record. So we would do a thorough and exhaustive search to make sure that you had access to all of the information that we have stored on you.
And that's time consuming?
Yes, I have, there are six staff members and that's what they do.
Wow. And then, I guess to Mr. Appolito's comments, number one, I want to say I'm one of the trustees that wanted to give him more time. That was overruled. I respect that decision, but I certainly would have, had it been my decision, have given Mr. Appolito or his group more time. And in the future, if Mr. Appolito or anybody else weighs in on it, I'd love to see, maybe like a PowerPoint or something. And you can send that to the board members at any time. We just can't, you know, we can't deliberate on that. But, you know, just because you didn't get to do it today, you can do it at any time and then we can look at it and, you know, because it's easy to stand up for three minutes. And some of that I was trying to verify what you said. So I'm playing on the computer trying to multitask. And also I would ask those people that complain to give us a solution. You know, don't just tell us the problem, but tell us the solution. But I do see some of the problems, that this never ends, that we're paying for storage, that we might be absorbing the cost of researching that data, where if we, if we didn't have the data, we could just tell them, no, we don't have it. One more question. If we did, let's just suppose for whatever reason, we, the contract ended. So we go with Joe's Information Service instead. What happens to all that data now?
We would have to go through probably another RFP process to find the next system. And then there would be contractual dollars that would have to be spent in order to take the data that we needed to take out of that other system and convert it into the new system.
Because we own it. I remember him saying, we own it.
We own it. We would have to do, take some contractual dollars to make that happen because it's, it's not like you just flip a switch. You have to develop it and program it and, or move that data over. And when the data is moved over, then we would have to notify Infinite Campus that it's time for them to purge and delete that data.
But would they purge that? I'm saying a nodding, so they would purge that data?
They would purge it.
Yes. Yes, by a contract, we will expunge all of that data.
Okay, that, but the bottom line is, we can't because we're mandated by the state. But if that ever changed legislatively, then, is that a legislative action or is that a DOE action? Seeing a lot of heads.
Sure.
And I, everybody's looking at me. I do not know the answer to that, whether it's a mandate. I apologize.
It's, it's a mandate. The question is if whether or not it's statutory.
Yeah, I don't know who mandated. I, I don't, that was after my time in the legislature.
At, at risk of hurting my ear, and that's a pretty good question, I think.
I believe it's in the letter NRS 385A.820. It's, it's in the letter that was in our packet.
Okay. Thank you.
Statutory. Okay, I have a, I have a couple of questions. I will say that the, I will just respond to why we don't have open presentations at board meetings, although it may seem to be helpful. And we've had, I've had this conversation with several people here before who've asked, and it's not a bad thing to ask. But then we'd have to have an open presentation for everybody who wanted to present on every subject. And that's just unwieldy. So that's why that's not allowed. As much, as much as information may be good information. So that's when I would suggest take advantage of, you know, and many of you do, you know, send the board the information that you would like to have. But it would be an open, come on in and present whatever you want to scenario. And, and we certainly cannot, we certainly cannot do that. And so that's why unfortunately, we aren't, we aren't allowed that. Again, and I've shared that before. And that's a decision that I know I get to make as president. Maybe another president may do it differently. But we would be here all day having presentations and all kinds of stuff. And that would be, that would not allow us to get our work done. However, the information that people share with us, I think is informative. I will say it's because of the, the constant emails and questions and so on that we've gotten from members of the community that we've had here. I was one of the trustees, I was the, who signed on and said, yes, let's have this.
Yes, sir.
Because I think it was important to have. And as much as I've had some presentations on Infinite Campus before, a couple of them since I've been on the board the longest, I learned a bunch from this one today. And, and so I'm grateful. I'm grateful for having it. We learned some stuff. I have, I actually have a few more questions. And so I appreciate the questions that are asked. Continue to ask them. And there's some information, by the way, that we can't share because it's proprietary. And I think, you know, we know that as well. And so that's just one of those things. It's just, that's just a part of it. But we certainly will share everything that, that we can. And I think we've, we've shown that we've, we're willing to do that. And on that same vein, I just want to make it really clear, do parents get to see, I know parents can log into Infinite Campus and see those basic areas or topics or with tabs, ah, there we go, tabs that are, that are standard. But when we have those that we've had in module standpoint, if I'm a parent and I have a child and I know there's, you know, but there's some other tabs or whatever, how can I see that information? Because it isn't going to come up on my app. As a parent, do I get to see that? So I can see what information is out there on my kid? How, how can a parent do that?
That would be something they would, you want to make an appointment with their school.
Okay.
And they would be able to go in and set up that appointment and they could look over whoever's shoulder and they could guide and navigate through Infinite Campus. They'd be able to pull up that information, see all those records.
So a parent can say, hey, I looked, I want to see what's that discipline have, whatever, you know, we had discipline, whatever on my child, so that I'm, I'm fully aware of what's there. Because, you know, as a parent, I'd be concerned. And you did mention that a parent can look over the principal's shoulder, I think, that's how you said it, Dr. Crennus?
That's a delicate situation though, too, because sometimes those discipline records can include other students' names and that would violate their privacy rights. So that's why it has to be a carefully orchestrated appointment with the school official in order to look at that record so that it could be redacted in a way that didn't violate any other student's rights.
That's a good point. But as a parent, I can still get that, even though it may have to be redacted or whatnot.
Right.
At least I know I have access to that information. And I think that's really important. I think something else is important. Have we found anything? We know we had the unfortunate situation that was mentioned by a public moderator, the middle school counselor, who was, you know, inappropriately involved with students. Is there any indication that, that that counselor, I mean, you know, it's, it's bad behavior. I think one of the trustees here says, sometimes you have people that do bad behavior. We have 8,000 employees and sometimes people do stupid things. Why? Because they're people. And sometimes, you know, that's just part of people making bad decisions, unfortunately, and especially in a situation when it involves a child. Is there any indication, and I know that because that person wasn't, was, wasn't employed with us, is there any indication at all that we found that, that that counselor utilized his position as a counselor to gain any kind of advantage or anything like that? Did he utilize Infinite Campus to say, ooh, I'm a target Angie? Or whatever. Do we have any indication of that at all?
From an IT perspective, we do not. But we did not conduct the criminal investigation. So I'd have to defer any sort of more detailed responses to school police.
But certainly as far as we know.
As far as we know, no. You know, we, we employ normal HR processes. People get background checked when they become employees. And we trust that process as best we can. And then we assign rights where appropriate for two teachers and counselors and principals to access that information. And then like the slide said, as soon as an employee separates from us, we revoke the access immediately.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Because that's certainly, you know, certainly something that there's a hole or a gap there, then we want to close that hole or gap. Right? We can't control everybody's behavior as much as we try and string them into all of that. But if something slips through, we want to close that. And then my, my last question is, and I think Dr. Lapenta referred to this, do we have instructions on, do we, and do we inform parents on the website? Hey, if you like to get the Infinite Campus app, this is how you can get it. If you like to access your students' data, this is how you can get it. Do we?
The access I was referring to was on the student accounting website about FERPA, on how to challenge a record. But I believe Jeff could answer the question about how parents get the portal access.
And honestly, off the top of my head, I don't know exactly how that's communicated out. But I know that the school's communicated out. The information does get communicated. I just don't know the mechanism. But I can find that out for you.
I think I, I think like, I mean, let's make it as easy as possible for parents to get the info.
Yeah.
You know, if that's something that maybe-
We can make sure that it's out there and find out the mechanism to get it out, but.
And typically during the online registration process, because every child, every parent has to register their child on an annual basis. So typically, those of us that have, or used to have a kid in the distance.
Your kid's grown now.
I know, I'm getting old. But you would go in and you would register and that's how you can access the portal and the parent portal. And then also, I would also say that our principals do an excellent job during what we would use to call open houses. And we've done a lot of those virtually. They will explain to the parents how to use Infinite Campus. And then our Family Schools Partnership Department also does a phenomenal job on telling how to, sorry Catherine.
Thank you, thank you Catherine.
I'm about to use Infinite Campus.
No, I appreciate that. I think just as easy as, as we make it as possible for parents. Because it's in every, I mean, we want parents to access the data and then to follow their child and, and get their infinite, get access to their Infinite Campus. And like our student trustee Ivy said, we want kids to be able to get that information and parents as, as much as possible. So, thank you. That was the last question that I had. Dr. Nicolet, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I'll ask my question last, but I, I do want to say thank you very much to everyone. And Minnesota, you too, you know, thank you very much. And I mean, I really appreciate this. And quite frankly, I, I know that now I know this much of something that could wrap around this building. And so I am certain that I will hit up another trustee and thank you, President Taylor, this time around. It takes two of us to get something on the agenda. And, and I thought this was important enough. And it, and it still is important. And I want to continue to learn more about it. And I want to thank all of you for your expertise and your time. And, and I know that you wanted to share with us as much as possible so we could understand and there's a whole lot more to know. And so my last question is, do you, do we have an internal audit process as well that we periodically perform on our Infinite Campus in-house?
Yeah. Well, our, our internal processes, the data that we have in-house, it's kind of managed with our security department and they do run processes to check for those types of vulnerabilities, things within our walls. But we have an audit log within Infinite Campus that we pay for annually. And that particular audit log is a data change tracker. So what that does is essentially, if there's a field change within Infinite Campus, it tracks what existed in the field prior to the change, what it changed to, and who made the change. So it's a nice feature to have. So it's a nice feature to have. We go back, it only goes back 12 months. We've never had to go back that far. But those are some of the securities that we have within the system.
Understanding a little bit about security, you don't want to tell too much. I get it. So, yeah, keep those audit practices going because these are our most precious gifts, and we are responsible for their well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trusty Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just want to wrap up or not wrap it, just clarify a couple of things. So one, this is, Infinite Campus is mandated by the state.
Yes.
So we don't really have a choice in the matter, really. Okay, I will say this. As a parent, I do enjoy, you know, Infinite Campus. My wife probably knows how to use the app way more than I do. But, you know, I do appreciate, I do think it's a great system, and I appreciate your, as experts, giving your two cents on this is an outstanding system to compare to the ones out there. That being said, I would strongly like to see something about if we're wasting money on students from, you know, 2000, whatever, started 2010. I would like to know that we're not, I really hope we're not paying for money for stuff we don't need. I understand what we do. I understand the purpose of a permanent record. This is an electronic version of it. I have them as a student. Yeah, I would really, just fiscally, I would really like to know that how much we're paying. So if we can get emailed that or something, get clarified on that, that'd be outstanding. But again, I do thank you in Minnesota as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I would add before I turn it over to the superintendent for real final remarks is to all of you, thank you. We thank the community in particular, John Epilito, who continues to push this thing and drive it. I don't think we'd be here if it were not for that, honestly. And I think we've all benefited from it. So thank you, and I mean that sincerely. I think that, I appreciate Mr. Cornell. I appreciate you taking the time. I know it was late back there. You're taking the time to be with us, and your openness and your willingness. And although when we got feedback from the student, she said the really complaint, only complaint she hears is that students don't like their grades. I don't think you can change that in Infinite Campus. Well, you probably could, but I don't think we want you. I don't think we want you to change that. Now, don't do anything on that front, though, we have that one. But what I'm hoping you heard in the conversation is there's a great deal of concern about how long we hold on to student data. And if there are things that can be done to address, I think you heard a lot of concern from the board, and we've certainly heard it from the community. So just encourage you to take a look at what might be there available once we no longer need it. We know we need it for a while, but so that we can purge that if there's any way possible that that can happen. I think you pretty much heard that, and we know we heard it from the community. That will go a long way as well. So we appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you so much. And we appreciate the partnership. Dr. McNeil?
Thank you very much, President Taylor. Well, I just want to thank the entire team. We take these presentations very seriously. And Chris and his team, and Bren, and Catherine, and Paul, and Joe, who else did I miss? Thank you so much for Infinite Campus. We take these presentations to our leadership team, and we're tough. And I got to tell you, we were tough on this one. And we sent it back to the drawing board probably two or three times. But that's what we do. And that's why you trust your staff, because we do our due diligence for this. With that being said, even though this isn't an action item, what I am going to direct my staff, what I would like for staff to look into is the contract on the additional data and how much that is. So that when we renew the contract, I know that you guys drafted that down. And then also the purging of student data past that point that we were talking about. That if a district, and thank you very much, Jeff in Minnesota, for letting us know that, that if a district is able to do that, I am certain that there is a cost for that, but I would like to know what that would be. So thank you. And thank you again for your all's participation.
We appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much. Okay.
Bye-bye.
Thank you so much. Have a good night back there. Let's take a quick 10 minutes because we know we had a little early dinner. Let's take a quick 10, and we'll come on back and jump into Agenda Item 3.03, our ELD Agenda Item, I believe is next. All right, thanks, everybody. We'll be back in 10 minutes. Why don't we go ahead and get started? I know the hour continues to go on. So we will, we will jump right into Agenda Item, and we'll go back to 3.03. Thank you for your patience as we were able to hear from our guest in Minnesota. Agenda Item 3.03, Presentation to the Board of Trustees Regarding Schools That Have Volunteered to Join the English Language Development, or EDL Site Facilitator Model Beginning with the 21-22 School Year, Then Transition to the English Language Site Facilitator Model, And Changes to the English Language Development Department As Previously Approved by the Board of Trustees On March 9, 2021. That's why this is on presentation only. We asked, if you may recall, we asked staff to come back and kind of give us an update, how things were going. And so before us, we have staff back to give us an update. So thank you very much, Dr. Parks. I'll turn it over to you. And then Ms. Wa, thank you for being here again.
All right. Thank you, President Taylor, and good evening, Superintendent McNeil and members of the Board of Trustees. Yes, for the record, Troy Parks, Chief Academic Officer. First, I want to make sure everybody gets to meet our new Director of English Language Development. She is amazing, and we are super happy to have her. She comes to us via the teacher route, assistant principal route, and most recently served as the principal at Libby Booth Elementary. So our new director is Megan Wa. Go next. Oh, yeah, I was trying to not clap. Sorry.
This is not public comments.
Sorry, I couldn't resist.
No, it's not public comment. This is, so that's different. Let me create a record. This is not public comment. This was an introduction of someone. So that's different.
All right. Well, here's the magnificent Megan Wa. All right. So, quick outline. I think it's very important that we reorient ourselves to what we're really talking about when we talk about our ELD Site Facilitator Model. We're, the Office of Academics is coming to you in the future, and we're excited about the opportunity. All of our presentations will be aligned and speak to the specific area of response to recovery, our strategic plan that we're aligned to. Obviously, we have a lot of state and federal compliance that we have to also adhere to. And Megan is going to be able to share with you the progress this year since she's entered the position. We have some current data to share that is kind of preliminary. And then I'm really excited for you to hear part of Megan's vision moving forward for the ELD Department and how we're going to continue to serve our students. With that, I will turn it over to Megan.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor, Dr. McNeil, and members of the Board of Trustees. And thank you, Dr. Parks, for such a nice introduction. It made me a little nervous.
You only get it once.
Oh, great. Okay. Well, I guess I'll have to live up to it this one time, too. So the ELD Site Facilitator Model, just to go back and do a very quick definition, especially for our new trustees. Basically, what it is, is we look at the work of the ELD teacher, and we change that focus from a traditional pull-out service model for EL students and focus more on a coaching model to build the capacity of all the teachers within a school building to become teachers of language. It's a student-centered model, which means that we put the work of the student at the forefront and coach the teachers in order for them to have the language lens along with the academic lens while they plan and prepare their lessons. So we wanted to do a very quick rundown on what it means to teach language versus maybe English language arts. So when we look at teaching language, students learn language, they require strategies focused on vocabulary and language knowledge. Students enter schools with different skill sets and backgrounds in their native language, which could also include English as their native language. Therefore, teachers must build knowledge around the English language for them. These practices not only benefit students learning English as a second language, but all students within the building. Teaching literacy, however, is centered more on a foundational understanding of the act of reading, writing, comprehending, et cetera. So there is the two differences between teaching language versus the English language arts. When we look at our Response to Recovery Strategic Plan, Goal One specifically talks about how we're going to help raise achievement scores and meet the needs of all of our students within the buildings. So this model fits very nicely with that. In order for students to continue to achieve, especially as they acquire language, they must continue to be immersed in that Tier One instruction. So when we look at building the capacity of every teacher that works with that student to be a language teacher, then the students stay within that Tier One exposure, and they're immersed within the language and the content for the full day as opposed to maybe the traditional pull-out models that have been followed in the past. The teachers and the coaches work together to embed the instructional strategies into that Tier One curriculum together. Teachers are given resources through what we, the foundation that we partner with, which is the WEDA Foundation. And those, that information also allows teachers to have an understanding of where their students are in terms of the steps to acquiring the English language. And then they can continue to look at how they're presenting their instruction, studying it, et cetera, through that Plan Do Study Act model. The second goal, or Goal Three, is to develop and retain those highly effective personnel. So when you become an ELD Site Facilitator, there is a requirement that you enter into the teacher leadership pool. So it lays way for teachers to take on more of a leadership opportunity within their building. We continue to offer what we call GLAD, or Guided Language Acquisition Design, training for all of our teachers who are interested in taking that. We have our collaboration with learning facilitators. Our ELD Site Facilitators attend all coaching academies and monthly professional learning with our program facilitators within the Department of English Language Development. We continue to offer the cohort for teachers to obtain their ELAD or TESOL, or Teaching English to Students of Other Languages endorsement. That is partnered with Now UNR. It was with Sierra Nevada. And we also continue our partnership with the WEDA Foundation.
All right. So a quick synopsis of how we got here this year. For those of you that were on the Board of Trustees last year, you'll recall the Pupil-Centered Funding Formula. And we were going to make some adjustments. And as the new Chief Academic Officer, everything I had learned about the ELD Site Facilitator Model, it made perfect sense that we would proceed and accelerate because we strongly believe that it better meets the needs of our students. As Megan pointed out, we expect the students to be in their regular education classroom as much as possible, and that's where the language was taught. And therefore, we needed, we would need with this model, less actual EL teachers. So it seemed to be very fitting. If I could come to you as a salesperson and say, we're going to get better results, and it's going to cost you less, I think a lot of people would say, yes, let's do that. And our first presentation to the board, I thought it wasn't going to be that simple. But got some feedback from the board via our superintendent and got some direction to get some stakeholder input. And it was very wise to go through that exercise and really learn what some of the misunderstandings were about the model. And needless to say, it helped me grow in my new role and learned a lot about getting that information from stakeholders on the front end. So you don't hear this very often, but thank you, Board of Trustees, for that direction. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm going to go over that data just a little bit. So as part of the process, we did put out surveys to the parents of EL, of our EL students. We did get a low response rate, but we did learn from that. And with the data that we have here, we would say we feel like most of our parents that responded were feeling pretty good about their children growing in English language. And all of them, 56%, I should say, are also in support of our model because, of course, we would want more support for our children if they were learning another language. And we felt like this model really fits that. Also, as part of the getting input from our stakeholders, we held virtual focus groups. And I'm just going to hit a few of these bullets. Part of the misunderstanding was that we would be phasing out EL teachers. And while I could understand where that came from, we are not phasing out EL teachers. In this model, we will need far fewer because the idea is that all of our teachers, who are content teachers, would have the skills and abilities to be able to meet the needs of our EL learners. So we're dispersing that responsibility and not making, as Ms. Wa said, a pullout in order to get those skills. And with that fourth bullet, would we be, an increase in our site facilitators lead to reduction in classroom teachers? Again, no. It would simply require us to do more professional learning and arguably help our regular classroom teachers become much more proficient at meeting the needs of our EL students. Some of the, these are some of the questions that came up. And just real quick, yes, it is a heavily research-based way of approaching learning for our EL students. In any role in our schools, our educators must have very strong relationships with students before they can, before a student will receive instruction. So, yes, the site facilitators are expected to have strong relationships with more students than they would if they were, say, a pull-out EL teacher. But with the model, we do emphasize that as well.
Okay. Just to give you an outline of some of the progress so far this school year, we had 10 new schools opt into the model. That includes our first high school, which is Reed High School, and middle school, which is Dilworth Middle School. In the high school, the secondary level, it's a little trickier just because, you know, the size and the scope is so much grander. So we've been working on different ways to approach the model. And in high school, at Reed High School, they're focused mostly within their math department and coaching the math teachers to embed the instructional strategies and really focus on the language of math for our students. At the middle school, they continue to look at all three grade levels, six, seven, and eight, and cohorts of students that way. And then working with the teachers that have maybe a larger percentage of EL students within their classes. Our ELD department staff continues to be dedicated to working with students in that supportive, schools in a supportive role. And we're also increasing our visibility within all of our schools, too, to show our support and coaching. In that way, we, too, can gain a better understanding of the middle and high schools as they continue to opt into the model as well. So this is our current enrollment. As you can see, our EL total as of the 14th of September was 9,186 students within the Washoe County School District are considered students that are learning English as a second language, with a 12,961 students total. And that is current, and then also former. And then also former EL students who continue to be monitored through our ALPA testing. So as our district is growing in capacity and diversity, we have to also look at the need to grow in our service delivery models. And the ELD site facilitator model is exactly what we need for that because, again, it is building that capacity within every single teacher in every content area to be able to address the needs of our 12,961 EL students in addition to all other students from Washoe So when when the model first started in the school year 1819, it was introduced to schools with a very low percentage of EL students. Some of those schools were actually even at risk of possibly losing the entire allocation. Most only had half of a teacher allocation at that time. This allowed the schools to maintain a teacher dedicated to that EL instruction through the coaching, co-teaching, and facilitator process. Currently, schools are opting into the model based on the needs and the vision of their school. Some schools, it may just be a numbers need. And for others, they're really getting on board with that desire to build that capacity of language instruction in all of their teachers. And you can also see as we've gradually increased the percentages of our of our schools that have the higher percentage in the model as well. So these are our exit rate data for the the ALPA or the WEDA test. So from the district and state, the variables that we use to monitor are within the domains of that WEDA framework. These domains are listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And students are assessed yearly on what's called the access test. For this, we look at number of students exiting or testing out of the needed services. But again, they continue to be monitored for another four years or graduation, whichever comes first. Individual schools use platforms such as Ames Web, MAP, and other district formative assessments, while our classroom teachers also rely on formative type assessing such as checks for understanding, grade level common assessments, and then also reading and writing samples of our EL students. So this data shows how the trend in that that cohort has progressed and continues to outperform the district as a whole after they have moved into that ELD model. This is our adequate growth percentile. So much like our exit rate data, we look at the students that are growing or outperforming their cohort. Again, this is based on access tests. It is based on their performance within those four domains that I explained. And you can see that our cohorts continue to either stay within the same percentile of the the district or outperform. So what does this tell us? That we did have lower proportions of students in that 1819 cohort. They did begin at the higher exit rates. However, they've maintained their growth, so they've they've continued to outgrow. And then schools in that 18 and 19 cohorts of the ELD model continue to have higher exit rates and AGPs in the years following the implementation. So they didn't take what typically happens as an implementation dip. They stayed at that strong level, if not grew higher after they entered into the model. So moving forward with the model, our ELD department program facilitators and I meet with principals in emphasizing the benefits of the model. As a former principal myself, I have met with, listened to, and am learning from my colleagues about the needs of their schools. And through this, I've been able to identify areas of strength and then opportunities for growth within the model. So we will look at all of those. I've already worked with business on looking at more of the allocation part of the model. We've talked about strengthening our services around our newcomers because as as that population continues to grow as well. And then, again, looking at the supporting of the scheduling within those secondary levels, which can be pretty tricky as most middle and high schools, so I'm learning, have different schedules. But all in all, what we want to do is continue that feedback loop that we are receiving from our our schools to ensure that we continue to just strengthen the model as we move forward and more and more schools opt in. When this slide was built, we had seven schools, and now I'm up to almost 10 more schools that want to opt in for next year at all three levels. So that's really exciting. And some of our bigger elementary schools as well, we're looking at a gradual release of support model and different ways that we can really look at how we can provide what the school needs while the teachers build that capacity within the school. So all in all, though, we are aligning, Russell aligning, our language standards to the essential standards for the school district and continue to be present in the school's PLC committee meetings and also within their MTSS department.
Well, thank you very much. I know we're down to our question slide. It's been really good to see this actually in action, you know, these 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 few months after. I know we have two new colleagues now, but it's because it was such a different model and way of going forward, there was just a lot of angst, a lot of concern. You know how this was changing, so on and doing things differently. And we certainly didn't want to send the message that we wanted, we were phasing out because that's part of what God, oh, you guys are phasing out EL. He's like, no, 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 no. But it was all of that. And so kind of slowing it down a little bit really has paid off. I mean, I can, it's really, really paid off. And it's, I'm very excited to see the results because at the end of the day, these students are getting, they're getting more support. They're getting more support and and students and teachers, it looks like teachers and principals are starting to say, hey, let's jump into this. So really, job well done. And welcome to the new position where they hit the ground running in the middle of change.
Hey, you know, gotta love change. Change makes us grow.
You're a principal, so you're good. You're a principal. You're, yeah, yeah, this is nothing. Comments, questions? Do we have any public comment on this, by the way, JJ? No? Comments, questions on this, on the ELD model and how it's been implemented and the results that we're seeing? Trustee Church and then Dr. Nicolet?
Thank you. This is so important to me as a Spanish speaker, which, of course, is not the only language, but it's the major one that we deal with. And if you cover this, it's a lot of stuff. I hope there's not a quiz because I'm in trouble. But what happens to the kids during like the summer?
Let me take this one.
You can take the tough one.
Well, we had a very large majority of our EL population participate in the summer school courses this summer. And since those are now going to be probably the norm, so we can rely heavily on those. Prior to that, individual schools may have held intercessions and other activities that that would help our our EL students continue within that immersion of English.
And you may have covered this again, I apologize. Are we seeing, I saw your stats on from 2018 to now, but I didn't interpret them totally. Are we seeing an increase in the number of EL students in terms of the, are we seeing more immigrants?
Yes. Our EL population is growing. I think the last data pool that we did showed an increase of about 400 EL students from last school year to this school year. And that also includes our refugee population. That is growing as well. We we work very closely with the Northern Nevada International Center.
And math is not my best subject nor anything else, but roughly, roughly 15% are in the Yale program of the total student population or?
It's, I believe it's around 19%.
You're a fed good trustee church? Okay, thank you, Dr. Nicolet.
Thank you. And I was one of those new trustees who went, whoa, slow it down. And and I'm glad that we did because, wow, the information has really helped me understand. And I would ask my trustees, fellow trustees, to read the answers to those questions. 13 pages, thank you very much. It's just very insightful. I'm glad I asked them. I do want to say that for the site facilitator information, those examples of evidence, that was very enlightening to me. And I really appreciate that information. And I'm still digesting it because I don't know what all the acronyms mean, but I will look them up. And I won't bother you with that today. I do have a question of the of the the 12,000 that we have enrolled and pending, how many of those are newcomers? And what's the average age of a newcomer?
And just for the for the record, would you define what we mean by newcomer? Just for the public, so people can understand what that means.
Thank you.
And so the average age, I mean, there really isn't a clear understanding on the average age. I can absolutely pull that data to see if I can provide you with an accurate average. But we do see students come everywhere from elementary up through high school, a lot of times because they are families and they have multiple children. A newcomer is considered a student who has been within the country for three years or less.
And does that include our preschool population or or that you look at that differently, separately?
I will get back to you on that. I was just trying to remember if we pulled the pre-K data or not. So I don't want to misinform you.
And and I noticed that, and this was one of the questions, and 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 again, I really appreciate, you did a deep dive on answering those questions. So the schools that have currently not decided not to opt in, and I, wonderful explanation about the the reason why it's an opt-in process. Thank you. What is the main one or two reasons why a principal, Diane, principal might go, hmm, I don't know about this? What are you finding out?
Currently, the number one reason right now is an allocation. So when when we look at reducing an allocation or two from a school, at first that, you know, a prince, as a principal, you kind of go, well, how are my kids going to get serviced, right? Because we're so ingrained into our typical service models. But then we're also looking at really reducing a body from a school. That means, you know, that can impact duty, coverage, like all of those different areas. So so they're very hesitant right now, some of them, on, you know, looking at that reduction because, number one, they have a norm, right? And change, it would be change. And number two, you know, it's it's hard to willingly reduce your staff by one, in some case, two people.
Spoken like a true principal. And and I will say that full disclosure of cool news is that I was principal for a day with Principal Megan way back when at Diedrickson. And we did an MTSS that day. That was the first time I learned about multi-tiered systems of support. And we, your your team, the MTSS team, was looking at some EL components. And so I learned a lot that day. Thank you.
And I can quickly address your question, Trustee Nicolet, around the opt-in, how we got there. Our original proposition was that we would base it on your your current EL population, and we'd gradually phase in the entire district. But as I said, that seemed pretty straightforward to me at the time. But getting the stakeholder input, it became very clear that that there was some misunderstandings. And as we were working with our principals, I probably can't claim original thought, but it came up that, you know, what if we made this a volunteer situation? Because like I said, when you look at the results and you look at the philosophy of the model where, no, every teacher is responsible and every teacher is going to be trained, it really is, from an educational perspective, much more likely to read and lead to higher learning for our EL students. And quite frankly, for for our students that lack language skills, academic language. So that's how it came about, was through listening to stakeholder input, we came up with a softer approach than telling them who's going in because we felt like the the product is so superior that any educator is eventually going to go, we got to do that because that's better for students.
Thank you for, a thought that I had running around in my head was, so we have the mindset, I totally get it and I embrace it, is that every teacher is an EL teacher. I mean, of course, that makes sense, whether math, science, doesn't matter. Are we finding, I want to be very careful about this, are we finding that our new teachers come in with that mindset? Or is it something that you're having to cultivate?
Well, I will, I will give the surface level, but more recent principle. And I would say, in general, yes, that would be the case, much like technology and a lot of things that are brand new out of college, they they don't know any different. And so it's a very natural for them to incorporate those types of things. And it is, speaking for people who've been in education a long time, there's a tendency to remind ourselves about how it once was and try to keep with that model because sometimes we get caught up in, no, it it works for for me and I believe we're getting results. But our argument is, is that we strongly believe it's it's going to be better for our students. And yeah, it does require extra training and responsibility. Former Principal Wa, do you have anything to add to that?
We are also seeing a lot of new teachers coming to us who have graduated dual certified. So a lot of them might carry that ELAD endorsement. It's very common in other states, especially for that to be a requirement of graduating teachers from from different universities to have the ELAD endorsement. It's also some, in some of the states, too, that they they must have that or carry that ELAD. So that part is is really convenient because they might come to us with already a tremendous amount of knowledge behind language acquisition. And if they do not, then new teachers are are fun and and moldable. So we like to, you know, I think that when you have someone that wants to dedicate their life to educating students, then then they work with you and learn that process.
Thank you very much. Superintendent McNamara?
Thank you very much. And I'll just add real quickly. I think also our partnerships with our higher educational institutions and our interns, we talk a lot about growing your own. And when we're able to have our interns in our buildings, they actually can see the instructional models. And that makes them all the more highly desirable to hire right out of, right out of the pocket right there.
Thank you very much. I think that's, we, that that concludes all of our questions. And thank you again for the work and for pushing this forward. And it looks like it is working just like you planned, the Dr. Parks. People are excited about it and jumping on and and really tribute to you as well, our new director, Ms. Wa, the just people that have confidence that you're going to lead this forward and it's, and this was best for students. So thank you very much. We appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity.
I betcha. All right. All right, now we're going to get to agenda item 3.05. Emily, thank you for your patience. And we'll be talking about the search for the superintendent, so the new superintendent. Well, the old two, I shouldn't say that. The sorry, no, sorry. The current superintendent, sorry. I will step out as we have this conversation. So this is agenda item 3.3.05, discussion of possible actions to provide direction to staff regarding the process for selecting the superintendent of schools for the Washoe County School District, including consideration of timeline for a high Including Consideration of Timeline for Hiring, the Scope of Recruitment Efforts, whether it's local, regional, or national, and Search Facilitator Options for Possible Action As Ms. Ellison Gets in Position. These are the three things we'll start with. There's going to be many, many, many more opportunities for us to discuss, a whole lot more. The scope of this is huge. We understand this is important. I think that arguably, maybe not even arguably, this is the single most important thing that we do, is to hire a leader for the biggest enterprise in our community. But we will start with these three, just to kind of start building the skeleton, if you will, so Ms. Ellison can begin the work. Again, there are a lot more things, I'm going to keep us on topic for these particular items because we can easily bleed because there's so much more. But we're going to start here. And this is all we've asked Ms. Ellison to prepare, just as we begin. It's like, where do we start with? If we can start with these three, at least that gives her a direction. And that's where our goal is here. We just want it, we want it to at least get started because it's a big piece and there's some timing issues around it, and that's part of what we'll consider as well. So, Ms. Ellison, thank you.
Well, thank you. Emily Ellison, Chief Human Resources Officer for the Record. Thank you for indulging me in standing to give my presentation. I had a recent surgery and so sitting for a prolonged period can be challenging. But like Dr. Taylor said, I'm here today. Dr. McNeil has announced her retirement, and so we find ourselves in the midst or beginning a superintendent search, and you will likely see a lot of me moving forward. This first slide, I wanted to provide a depiction of sort of the big bucket milestones in the process. There will, of course, be a lot of detail added within each of these buckets as you all work to define how you want this process to proceed. But I feel like it's important for people to understand kind of the major milestones that occur in a search process. And then today, we're focused on the blue box, the kickoff box. And that's talking again about the facilitator, the scope of candidate outreach, whether it would be a local or regional or nationally-focused search, and then, of course, the timeline. They're listed in this order by design because, as you can imagine, some of these decisions build on each other and then dictate future steps. And you'll see on the next two slides that we effectively contemplate facilitator and scope together as they are very much interrelated. So, you'll see across the top, I have a couple of search options, right? There's the approach with a national firm, a local consultant, or an in-house search utilizing district staff. And then there's a comparison on the left of some major considerations. It actually goes on to a second slide. I'll just highlight some of the key variances between the options. Of course, extent of expertise is one consideration. Internally, when we look at the resources available, there are two individuals on our staff, myself being one of those, that have experience with executive search akin to this level, but not specifically with superintendent of schools. So, that's a consideration. The availability and depth of resources to support a search of this nature is going to be a significant consideration. For example, the dedicated resources. Of course, firms or consultants that are focused on this work are going to have dedicated resources to devote to these specific activities. Stakeholder input gathering is a substantial component of this process. And technology and tools in order to gather that feedback and then synthesize that information in a way that's useful to you all for decision-making is something very important to consider. There's certainly the matter of existing candidate networks. And again, organizations that specialize in this work offer a different geographic reach and existing database of potential candidates and contacts and networks. And then, of course, there's the public perception of impartiality to consider. And then finally, and this is depicted on the next slide, is cost. And I know that we are all very cost-conscious. We exist in a fiscally constrained environment. But when you really think about, again, the depth of resources and dedication of resources, when we look based on our experience last time and some national averages, from a national firm perspective, we're looking at about 45,000. The last search was 30,000. A local consultant might be somewhere around 20,000. And although there's probably an inclination to believe that an in-house search wouldn't have a cost associated with it, the employees that we have today have full-time jobs. And so, we will need to assign some of their work, either my work, or Katie's the other person on my team who has this experience, to be completed while effort is focused on this search. This is certainly not something that can be done in someone's spare time. So, considering the facilitator and scope options together, when you kind of think about them, they really align as, you know, district staff is really kind of appropriate for an internal or local search as the facilitator. A local facilitator might be well-suited to a regional search, or perhaps supporting specific components of the process. So, for example, if you went with a national firm but really wanted to tap into local expertise in gathering stakeholder input, local consultants are likely going to be well-suited for that type of work. And then a national firm would be focused on organizations whose work is exclusively recruiting for school district leadership. As it relates to facilitator and scope options, the recommendation of staff is that the Board of Trustees opt for a national facilitator and a national search, and direct staff to take action accordingly. The next slide depicts the search timeline, and I built this around utilizing a search facilitator. So, you'll see a couple of steps in there that are built around that process. There's just a few things that I like to emphasize as it relates to the timeline. So, it is tentative, but it's not, right? Because once we get into really defining the steps that will happen in each of these milestones, you'll come to see that scheduling can be really challenging, right? You've got two meetings a month. This ends up being, you know, a big-ticket item that often warrants a considerable amount of board time. And so, as you all contemplate this schedule, please know that, of course, there will be changes as specific activities are added. But in order to achieve a superintendent's start date by June or July 1 of next year, the kind of months that we're targeting here will need to stay pretty consistent with. And so, as you're planning for spring break or whatever other things that you have going on in your life too, please be mindful of that January-April timeframe in terms of board attendance and availability so that we're not struggling a little bit later down the road with folks wanting to participate in the process but not being available. You'll notice that the first four meetings are outlined pretty clearly. So, obviously, October 12th is today. October 26th, if the board chooses to utilize a facilitator, I would bring back an item on a request for proposal in order to solicit facilitator options. On November 9th, I would bring back an item to update the job description and contract while facilitators were preparing proposals and submitting proposals. And then, targeting November 23rd or a special meeting TBD, based on your availability, for facilitator presentations and selection. At that point, if a facilitator is going to be utilized, the facilitator really kind of takes over the next portions of the process. They would work with the Board of Trustees to define all of the steps that will be included, how candidates will be screened, what interviewing will look like, all of that. I tried to be mindful and plan for the impact of holidays in identifying some of these early dates and to make sure that we've got adequate time for the facilitator to be able to do effective outreach and networking to generate applicants and candidates. And with that in mind, our recommendation is that we would adopt, or that you would adopt this timeline, knowing it will change and it will adjust as it becomes more specific as details for the hiring process are confirmed.
Excuse me, okay, so, before, thank you, Emily. Let's start, let me jump into that right away. Are there really three decision points, as she stated before us? First is facilitator. You know, we are a boss, so to speak, of seven, right? Soon to be seven once again. And so, having a person, a point person, firm, staffer, whatever, to facilitate this and coordinate this for us is certainly something we would like to do. It's just that we need to do because, you know, again, we're a group of seven, but we act as one. And so, it's just a matter of whether we go local, regional, national, which connects to the search, to the scope of the search, which makes sense certainly the way that you laid it out, Emily, so thank you. And then, looking at the timeline, which is tentative sorta, but not really. Tensive sorta, but not really. So, we do have, just have a little bit of public comment on this first, and then we'll just know those are three motions that we'll be looking to make and to make decisions on so we can give some marching orders, if we will. So, let's go with our public comment.
Pablo Navat Duran.
Mr. Duran, welcome, sir.
Hey, how you doing? So, as a future for Human Resource Management for 10-year or more, so that's my dream job. So, as I do know, I do like the timing for the superintendent about, seem about right because we got some time for hire a white person. So, to come to hire a white person, we need to hire a superintendent. Or I think hire for superintendent on national, national would be great, but there are downsides that costs a lot of money, you have to pay for travel spends, all kinds of stuff. Like, for example, if a candidate from New York or Massachusetts, they have to come and we know to interview and then come back and they say, "Okay, you got hired because I don't want to waste their person's time and money," all kinds of stuff. And I do know Mr. and Mrs. McNeil, Superintendent McNeil is resigning on June, end of school year. And the superintendent had to, the new superintendent had to begin by July 1st. So, we have some time before July 1st. And as a HR person, future HR person, which, you know, I'm currently taking HR classes, so I do know timing is very, we need time to find a white people. And to have a white people, we need to have a guy for Washoe County School District become a successful district in state Nevada because we're ranked 49th or 46th in the nation. And we need to move Nevada forward, or Washoe County School District to ask forwards so we can be a great progress and a great district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
That's all I have for this item.
Thank you, JJ. So, let's bring it back here, let's begin to talk about a search facilitator, comments and so on on the board. Thank you, Ms. Ellison, for returning. Local, regional, and national, this is, I would just give my two cents on it, but again, we make this decision as a board. To me, the only way to go is a national search and a facilitator who's from a firm that does it on a national level. It doesn't eliminate anybody local. I think it's really, really important that as we make our selection, should we decide to go this route with whatever firm or person or whatever that we hire, that we stress that we want to make sure that they're paying attention to whom may be available locally. We may have somebody here local, may have somebody inside, may have somebody that doesn't work for the district, but they have great experience, and we certainly don't want to eliminate anybody like that. I think it's really important that we leave that door open. But I would also say, we just want to get ourselves, we want to spread, that's not the word I'm trying to say, I can't think of it now, we want a broad net as much as we can so we can attract the right person, but make sure that, I would think that make sure that, even though this person may have local, may have national contacts and so on, that we pay special attention to those who may be of interest in a local level, maybe even a regional level, but local in particular is what comes to mind. I will say, as I look at this timeline, there's, and many of us that, you know, have been involved in various searches of various things and so on, there's a timing period. There's usually there's a time when things flow, when there's change that happens, there's a season. And typically, that timing around that is right exactly where she has it here in the spring. And that's why these dates really need to, at least a month, as she said, we want to do the best we can to stay in there because this is when superintendent movement happens, is in that time, is doing, whomever we hire as our firm or facilitator, what have you, that they're recruiting and screening. And yes, we know it's right after the holidays, but people who are looking to make moves and even those who are not looking to make moves, I mean, that's another advantage we get from hiring someone, that this is what they do, is superintendent searches, they'll knock on the door, there's some people that aren't looking. And that might be good too. But again, we just want to leave the door open. And I think we especially note that we want to make sure we don't exclude local people because there may be, certainly may have some good candidates here locally. But we don't want to miss this window as much as we can when the recruiting happens and screening and so on so that we're interviewing people during that time so we aren't behind the radar. And that's, those are my two cents on it this year from you. Trustee Church?
I just said, could you clarify, I think I heard you say you want a national search. Did you say you want a national, like a commonly called a headhunter firm? Is that what you're endorsing?
Yeah, I'm actually kind of, just because Ms. Ellison said that they're kind of connected, the facilitator as well as the scope. And so, that's why I kind of talked about them. Did I get that? That's why I kind of talked about them together. I think a national, I think a search firm, we don't care where they're from. If there's a great search firm here that does superintendent search is great. So, I think a search firm, I think it'd be difficult to ask staff to do that. First of all, they already have full-time jobs. And then, you're involved in the hiring of your boss, and that's kind of a precarious situation that I don't think we want to put anybody in that position. So, I think a firm, period. Let me qualify that, Trustee Church. Someone, or a firm who will have broad contacts and connections, or who have people that they talk to, and then that being connected to, then the search has a national scope without eliminating anybody in the local market. Does that help?
Sure. And I have a number of comments.
Please, we're just going around for comments. And then we'll make some motions and go forward.
And I, so I don't know if we're just talking specifically about the search or just the whole thing in general.
I kind of threw all that together, so, whatever works for you.
Because it's hard to narrow it down.
Yeah, it is.
I've given this a lot of thought and done research and stuff. I personally want it in-house. And that doesn't mean we couldn't contract for an employee or a firm.
So, you want in-house facilitator, so to speak?
Yeah, I don't want to hire a headhunter firm. And I'll explain why. But yeah, I don't want a headhunter firm, whether they're local or otherwise. And that doesn't say we couldn't hire or contract for somebody to assist in that. And that kind of goes to the comment about impartiality. To the maximum extent possible, we're impartial, but you can't claim we're not partial. We've got politics, we've got beliefs, we've got belief systems, we've got ideas in our head, each, in every one of us. So, whether it comes down to the final decision like last time or not, you know, we were not above that accusation last time. And I wasn't on the board, and I'm not saying it was founded, but looking back at the last time, I would have to classify it as not good. We spent a lot of money. I think a lot of the outside candidates were dismal. They weren't good overall. And the committee recommended certain people, and then we, depending, I guess you could argue, but we didn't go with the committee's recommendation. And there was a lot of factors, COVID, et cetera. But we didn't go with the committee's recommendation. That caused some angst in the community. So, that said, I think we can do it in-house. This is an entirely new paradigm and world we live in. There's so many community groups that would put the word out for us. There are so many labor groups, citizen groups, community groups, et cetera, that would put the word out for us. The other thing as a factor is the timing. The primary for the elections are in June. We have four seats that are going to be elected. Sometimes in the primary, as in the last time, we knew in one of them who was elected because of the 51%. So, either way, we're saddling the new board with our decision. And maybe saddling isn't the best word I could use, but they are going to be bound by our decision. And that decision might be a two- or three-year contract. You almost call, some people call it a poison pill. Moving on from that, I think we need to start now, timing, you know, as soon as possible. I cringe at the idea of another special meeting, but if we have to, we have to. But I think the sooner we get going on this, because time flies, things happen, candidates back out, I mean, anything can happen. So, the sooner the better. And I'd have no problem hiring a superintendent a few months ahead of time for that continuity, learning, mentoring, et cetera. And the other problem I see, and I mean, I've given this a lot of thought, and you know me, I've been sitting over there for years at many, many meetings, so I've seen this play out. You know, I've seen our history of superintendents, and some of the past ones have had issues. and some of the past ones have had issues, and lawsuits, and everything else. Um, you know, so I'm like, just trying to, to drink it all in and come up with a good solution on how to do this, but, but our history hasn't been the best. And I also note that, um, some of our superintendents have had like PhDs in education, another one had an academic background, not academic, accounting background, and we're dealing, the superintendent doesn't teach. The superintendent is in charge overall of everything, including education, but they have to deal with the labor contracts, they have to deal with the labor unions, they have to deal with the discipline, they have to deal with lawsuits, they have to deal with a billion-dollar budget. So, in a sense, education is but a part of that, and something that can be delegated down to the assistant superintendent, or the, um, the person, you know, I forget, Ms...
Trustee Church, if I may, can I keep you on facilitator?
Well, that's what I was asking, that's what I was trying to ask, whether we were commenting on just the facilitator.
Yeah, just on those three items. That's all the, that's all the agenda item allows us to do. What you're saying is a really important conversation, we just aren't having it here yet.
Okay. So, at any rate, I think we need to go in-house, and I think we can do it, and I think the community would be supportive of that. And finally, the one thing I want to think about, last time we had a committee, I think, uh, to avoid the partiality thing, I would love to see a citizens' committee, and to avoid stacking the deck, I think the committee should consist of seven people, each one appointed, not by majority rule, because again, that causes inequity, but each trustee would appoint one member of the committee, then the committee would take on a lot of that responsibility. So, I'd really like to emphasize that committee idea, doing it in-house, and getting on it right away, and I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Other comments? Trustee Rodriguez?
Uh, Trustee Church kind of stole my thunder with the committee. Um, I do agree with that.
Now, I'm gonna pull you in. I, I, I was getting ready to jump in. We're, we're not there yet.
Right.
That's recruiting, screening, and selection.
Okay.
Right, we're gonna...
I guess I'm, I...
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're just trying to say, who do we hire, what direction do we go in terms of facilitating the search? Um, um, how broad do we want the search? What's the scope, and then what's the timeline? Again, very important conversation around that, but that's after we get down.
Fair enough. Okay, uh, that was, that's pretty much really what I was gonna go about.
Okay, all right. Again, then, not to say it isn't important from either of it, I know it does, but if we, otherwise, we can be in all of these things, and we'll never make decisions to make sure, because you're right, timing is really tight, so we have to stay focused and get these things going. We'll make, certainly we'll make decisions together, just, just trying to keep us...
I guess kind of on that...
In lanes that she drew, she drew for, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
I guess my concern doing it in-house is how many people would we have to dedicate to that, and would it be overtime or any fiscal stuff on our end?
Absolutely. So, there are only two people in my department who've ever done executive search at this level. I'm one of them, and so really, this will be a full-time job, and so either we would be, uh, tapping someone to take on my responsibilities, which then creates a domino effect, um, or we, my director, a, a talent acquisition manager, Katie Delone, has also experienced an executive search, and so I would need to tap someone to take her responsibilities, so that she could focus on this effort.
Would that be something you're comfortable doing if we were to make a decision on that? Dedicating two people to that, yourself included?
Well, uh, I am a recruiter at heart, so I do love recruiting, um, but I think that there are a lot of things happening in this district that, um, my time and attention are, are, are needed on and, and, and should be focused on. Um, and again, I think I have a very capable team, um, but I think when you consider, you know, the resources that a firm has in terms of gathering community input and synthesizing that data for you, when you consider the established candidate networks that a firm might have compared to, I don't have a database of superintendents, right? Um, so, when you consider weighing those things, um, to me, the recommendation makes sense to utilize a firm, because they bring expertise and substantial resources for a search of this nature.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez, and thank you, Ms. Ellison. Vice President Manette?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I am, I do not think it should be district staff. I think that puts them in such an awkward position, and because what if, you know, you rank somebody, which you probably wouldn't, and then we end up picking somebody else, you know, mm-mm, no. Um, I'm kind of partial to the national search, as you were, uh, I think the issues we have with national searches is that our open meeting laws, that everything you've ever done in your whole life is exposed, and I think that's hard for some people. I, I, I'm not opposed to a local search, but, you know, I don't, how local does that mean? Does that mean Nevada? Does that mean, you know, we don't know?
No, I, I would just address that piece and then say something else, because you mentioned the open meeting law, which is, I think, a, a really good consideration. Um, I, I don't, in my, in my mind, if, if done right, the, a national search doesn't preclude local, and I think it's really, really important that we make sure we don't preclude local candidates, but if we say a local search, it precludes national. You see what I mean? And that, and I think that closes the door on, on us being able to select the best possible fit for our district. Um, and I would say from an open meeting, I'm glad, so glad you mentioned that, because of the Nevada open meeting law, if we were to do the search in-house, then, then as the candidates come in, people can request the documents for those who apply, and so, and that will, that, that will significantly reduce the number of sitting superintendents who will be, who will be willing to throw their hat into the ring, because it will be public knowledge as it comes in, and then as it should be. It's not that because anything that you're trying to hide, but, but, um, we want to keep it as open as possible, and typically, a sitting superintendent, uh, should we be able to attract someone at, at that level, people at that level, um, they're willing to do that once they get to be a finalist, and that's when those would come forward to the board, because then they're close to being able to get a position. But if you're one of 20, you know, you're probably the ones your school board, you know, talking about how you're, you're throwing your hat in, and you're just an applicant, so to speak. So, that, that, that ties, I remember this from my, my, I served on four presidential searches, searches at the university, and each of those always went to a search firm because of those types of things, the internal piece, as Ms. Ellison spoke about, um, the open meeting law piece, and, and respecting the, the current position of the person as they may, may apply, um, to not, um, to not reveal them, so to speak, um, and we wouldn't know them either, right, um, until they're finalists, because then that's a different kind of risk you're taking, um, in terms of that. So, just something else to keep in mind. I'm glad you mentioned it, because I forgot about that. Ms. Ellison, you want to say something?
Yeah, I think I would just add, right, I, I think it's something that all of us have experienced as job seekers. You don't advertise to your current employer that you're looking for a new job, until you feel like you've had one, right? And so, um, it, the open meeting law certainly changes the dynamic in the initial, um, recruiting and exploration phase of this process.
But again, as, as we, the public gets information as we do, so it's not to prohibit the public from getting information. I think it's really important to say that, um, but it's just done a little bit differently, to try to get the best pool, and then as that pool is narrowed down, um, and then it's a little bit of a different game if you're, if you're an applicant. Um, yes, Trustee Smith?
Thank you, President Taylor. Ms. Ellison, I have a question. If we decided to go with the national route, can you explain a little bit more about the RFP process? Do we just put that out, and then firms respond as they want, or do we also extend specific invitations to respond to certain firms as well?
So, what we did last time was I brought to the board, um, an RFP document, um, that then we would send out, we, meaning me, um, would send out, and I, I have the list that we used last time, but there were probably, um, I don't know, 25 or, or 30 firms that I sent it to directly, um, based on Google searches, and we sent it to Council of Great City Schools, and, you know, the school board associations and all that, so trying to, to network the opportunity to generate proposals, um, and then, of course, working closely with communications to get a formal announcement out, um, have that information on our website, all of that.
Thank you very much.
If I can just respond on that piece. Several firms have already reached out, because that's part of what they're doing, as I've gotten them, I've forwarded them, and some of you may have gotten those as well, so that's another, just kind of the great buy, and this thing is kind of already working as well.
Thank you. Um, so, my follow-on to that is, there are a few things that I do agree with Trustee Church on. Um, one, although I was a community member at the time, um, I share his view that the last search firm and that process lacked, um, what I was hoping to see as a, as a community member, so hopefully, there are some lessons learned in that selection and through that process as well. I do also like Trustee Church's, um, suggestion around activating community groups to amplify whoever is chosen. My hope is that even if we didn't do this in-house, that those community groups and, um, those different organizations would still be willing to help, because I do believe that that could be a layer of amplification, um, with a national search. With that said, I, I am also leaning towards a national search. I think that, um, this is the most important job that we have. It signals to our community that, um, we're very serious about this. It does not preclude a local candidate, um, whether from Washington County or other areas nearby, um, but yes, I'm also leaning towards a national search.
Thank you.
If I may just comment briefly, you know, in terms of, um, the performance of the last, um, consultant, I should have expanded on the RFP process, and so, um, at the October 26th meeting, I would bring forward, um, what that proposal document would look like. Then we would, um, collect proposals, and then they would come back again at a special meeting, or November 23rd, in order to make their presentations, and then the board actually makes the selection of the facilitator. So, I think in terms of lessons learned, um, I certainly am looking at my old documents to say, you know, we, we put this in the RFP, but we, what we got back was this, and we wanted this. So, I certainly can do that, but I think, um, you know, when it comes to the selection of the search firm, that is not the responsibility of Human Resources. That decision will be brought to you all to choose the firm that you would want to go with.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Trustee Church?
Thank you. And again, this over, I'm just chomping at the bit, but absolutely positive. I'm chomping at the bit to talk about some of the other issues, because they overlap, but absolutely national search. We're talking about the facilitator, and obviously, I don't think I'm making any headway on suggesting it be in-house, although on the open meeting law, there's certainly at least an argument that contracting with another company, they're still our contractee, wouldn't necessarily wash our hands of the open meeting law requirement. Um, but I understand, it's tough in Nevada, and people are hesitant to even put their name out as an inquiry, you know, and then the boss, you know, then they might lose their job elsewhere. I got that. But that's Nevada open meeting law. We're stuck with it. Um, one thought is, whatever action we take, if we speed this up a lot, and we don't get good applicants, that gives us a little leeway for going back out and saying, no, we don't like it. We, we need to do more. We need to do something different. But that last firm, I believe they were out of Texas. To, to put it mildly, I was very, very disappointed. I would never recommend them to do anything for me again. The next comment, making an analogy to being a rookie cop, at some point, I wrote my first ticket. Took me forever. At some point, I did my first DUI arrest. I don't know who was more nervous, the guy or me, um, trying to lift my leg and not fall, but, um, then, and I was sober, but, uh, just for the record, uh, but that said, there maybe are some good companies out there locally or nationally that are involved in marketing, or whatever, that because they're new and want to get their foot in the door, might even do a better job and be more dedicated, more mom and pop, not having a, a bunch of different clients that they're finding superintendents for, because that other company was like, all you got was a bunch of superintendents from other districts. That was all we had. There's got to be more out there. So, this is where I'm kind of segueing into other stuff, but to me, the facilitator would look for former city managers, county managers, CEOs of big companies, um, military officers, I'm biased, but a general or an admiral who, just an example, I don't think he's interested, but I know a retired two-star general who ran the Marine Corps recruit depot, where they trained the 18-year-old, 19-year-old kids.
Keep, keep, keep me...
Well, that's what I'm trying to...
Okay, I'm trying to help. I'm trying, I'm trying to help.
I know, um, and it, so, those are a few comments. Number one, the OML issue. Number two, the facilitator, we need to make the RFP so broad that we can bring in new talent. The, the fact that it's their first recruiting effort doesn't mean they're not going to do a good job for us, and if we can speed the timeline up and they don't, we can then fire them or put out a wider debt. Um, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I thank, thank you, Trustee Church, and I, I think there, there's some, certainly some things in there, uh, that I, I'm going to agree absolutely with. It, it may be that the best person for us, or firm or facilitator, whatever, maybe they've done this before, maybe they haven't, and I think we'll get a chance to make that selection during the RFP process, and I, and I agree, the RFP process doesn't have to eliminate someone if they haven't. Certainly, we want to know what kind of experience they've had and so on, but we don't have to say that if they haven't done it at all, they can't apply. I don't, I mean, that, again, part of what we want to do is, is, is give ourselves the best options that we can, and, and some of the options begin with that, so I'm going to agree with that. I, I am going to say that, um, my experience with this from an open meeting law standpoint is that, um, is as I described it. I've done it too many times before, that it, it is a different when you have, when it doesn't come to us versus when it goes to a firm. So, there absolutely is a difference, and it, because it makes it so hard in our state, um, that's how, um, most, um, at this level, CEO, executive level searches in education, um, um, have chosen to do so. Um, and that being said, in case you don't know, we know our superintendent is retiring. The superintendent in Carson City, um, has also announced his retirement, and they're in the process of a search, and they have hired a, a, a firm or facilitator to do that as well. So, that's just a part of what you do. So, we're in the mix of it with everybody else who's going through this and looking. Everyone else knows that the window to when you want to be interviewing is right around there in March. Um, I don't think we have the luxury of saying, hey, let's do it. If it doesn't work, let's do it again, because then we're going to miss that window. I'd be concerned about that one a little bit. So, let's, whatever facilitator we, we, we select, whether it's, if, if it seems as though that's kind of the way we're going to be going, right, whether it's local, national, whatever, let's make the best selection we can, because we're going to get one good shot at this. Yeah, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get one good shot. So, let's make the best selection we can, put everything in it, right, and then give everything we can so that, that person, that firm, that facilitator, whether they're from here, or whether they're from Chicago, whatever heritage we land, so they have the best chance for success. Let's not count on being, I just don't think the time allows us to be able to go back, go back around and then still make that window. And I'd be a little concerned about the message that it sends to potential stellar candidates, that, oh, shoot, they went through this thing, they had some, they didn't like, now they're kind of, that, that, I don't know that that's what, the way we want to go anyway, so, um, you know, it's, it's just comments. Trustee Rodriguez, your, your, your light was on than Trustee Church.
No, I just...
We'll go back to you, Trustee Church.
I just, uh, you know, I'm trying, trying to take it from the suggestions of subject matter expert, and, uh, trustees have been through this before. Uh, you know, I think a national search might be the best way, and also probably be the most cost-effective way versus having a domino effect of full-time employees, having to backfill, backfill, and dedicating people to this search, uh, and then the impartial, the impartialness of this, I think would be awesome as well. So, I think that might be the way to go, just kind of listening to everyone speaking.
Thank you, Trustee.
Just gone through this before.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Church?
Uh, number one, I just echo what you said, that the RFP needs to be broadly written to include the mom and pop, the ones that have never done it. They don't have to have a proven track record. That, that would be our decision as a board, so I, I do echo what I said, what you echoed, and I'll echo it back.
You're right. You echoed me echoing you.
Yeah, so, and then number two, um, based on what you said, you know, whether we have the time or not, if we don't like the search, to tell them to keep looking, or whatever, well, I guess we cross that bridge and we get to it. But that said, there's nothing, this is great, because unlike the last two, we were under the gun, and I wasn't here, but I, I'll use the collective we. This time, we have lots of notice, and so that's wonderful, and however, nothing prohibits us from rushing, nothing, nothing says, well, come June, we could have, we could put in an acting temporary, I see some good people in-house here, Pablo. No, I'm sorry, but, you know, I was thinking elsewhere, but we have, uh, good people in-house that, that could easily fill those shoes, you know, while we continue the search, so we just can't rule that option out.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we, we, we want to make the best decision. If we aren't good with our decision, we have to go back around, and it, it makes more sense to not do it just because it's June, um, but at the same time, I want to give us every, I, I would like us, let's give every chance we can to have a... us, let's give every chance we can to have a good, solid search that is very successful, that yields a, a, a good candidate that we think is a, is a good fit for our community, our families, our staff and all of that. So that being said, we need to, um, we need to go forward. We need to go forward. We have three things ahead of us. Um, we have three things ahead of us. Um, and that being, first of all, we're looking at our search facilitator or firm, what have you. Do we want that to be national? Again, it's really important. It does not preclude anyone local. That just means the search for a facilitator will be national. That's what we're looking at. So looking for a motion on, in that regard, whatever the pleasure of the board is.
I'm going to move for a motion to stop three.
You can, we can if we want to, sure. Well, we didn't discuss timeline though. So let's just do that real quick. So just, just, and, or you can make a discussion for the first two or, you can do three. You know, we don't have to discuss it. Make the motion and let's see where we land. I don't, I think that one's pretty easy anyway.
Sure. I move for item 3.05, that the Board of Trustees provide direction to staff to do a national search for a facilitator, a national search scope, and to adopt the timeline as noted on slide five of today's presentation.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor from trustee Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
The second, and he had his light on, so I'll give it to him, trustee Rodriguez. Any further discussion? We've had great discussion. Any further discussion? Thank you. We bled a little bit, counselor. I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying. On the agenda, I'm getting kicked under the table. On the agenda, trustee Church?
Just can you clarify again? I'm looking at the dates. What would be the timeline?
It's on slide, she said as dictated in slide five. JJ, will you put it up on the screen? There it is, trustee Church.
Now I gotta put my glasses on. So, um, today we make the determination. So we're talking roughly November 23rd?
I'm sorry, November 23rd for, roughly, or especially, that's, that's Thanksgiving week, so we'll have to land somewhere. I know there are a couple of trustees that have already said they won't be available. And one, one thing that Ms. Ellison shared with us is, this is, this is our, this is our targeted timeline. We know some dates may have to adjust here and there along the way. But this is, we want to stay in this, this thing.
All I would like to add is that having it around that November 23rd timeline is important because we would want to give whoever you select enough time to prepare to come back in December to facilitate some really rich, in-depth conversation around many of the decision points that you're talking about tonight. And it's important that that happens in December because you've only got one meeting. And also, we've got to give that firm enough runway to then begin recruiting after the holidays in January. So they, the meetings need to stay kind of around those timelines.
Do we need to amend the motion or is that clear in the motion?
No, she, she, she kind of said that in her, in her presentation, that, that even though it may not be these specific dates, they need to be in the neighborhood. She just went a little deeper on that to, to give us a little bit as to why.
And, and just maybe a friendly, or to clarify, to give direction to the superintendent or staff, I guess that's the right way. I'm getting, well, I'm learning. Nine months, I'm learning. That the RFP should be broadly construed to.
Okay, hold on, hold on. That's not in this. That's, we're going to talk about the RFP on October 26th.
Well, if we're to look for a facilitator, we got to give them.
No, we're going to talk about the RFP. That's the request for proposal, for proposal for the RFP for facilitator.
Okay. You're, you lost me.
Am I, am I correct?
Yeah. So on the 26th, I'll bring a draft of the RFP document. And then you all will provide feedback and input on that in order to finalize it so that then I can distribute the RFP that week.
Okay.
So we don't need to, we don't need to talk about the RFP today at all. It's not about our motion. We'll talk about the RFP on October 26th.
Okay. Just to help her do the draft, I guess we've covered that enough. But okay, thank you.
Yeah. And if she doesn't do it, guess what? We'll say, hey, yeah, we'll say this is something we want to be included, but that's not on the agenda today. So we want to stay. We want, I'm trying, we want to stay with what's on the search, facilitator, first search scope and timeline. Okay, further discussion, further discussion. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion is carried. So we are ready to go forth. We have taken our first important step. Uh, thank you very much. All right, all right. Now we're going to go to, we don't, we don't have, I don't, I don't think there's a new recommendation around this, but I want to have that opportunity if, if necessary. Uh, agenda item 3.06, this is our COVID item. We're going to ask Dr. Lamarcus. He's on his way. Okay, just a really, really, uh, really quick update. Uh, okay, we'll get some, we get really, really quick update. Cause I know there's, there's not going to be a new recommendation. I think is what I understand from the superintendent. But let's go really, really quick update and then we'll get some, uh, we'll get some public comment on this and see what action, if any of the board would like to take. So Dr. Lamarcus?
President Taylor, Board of Trustees, Superintendent McNeil, for the record, Paul Lamarcus, Chief Strategies Officer. We can move very quickly through the update. There's not a lot of new information. Of course, our guiding principles, previous board actions, the requirements of directive 048. The COVID risk meter, when we updated this, it was in the red region. It's actually in the orange region as of today, which is good news. We had an updated dashboard today. Again, we're in the orange region. We're at about 24 cases per 100,000. Test positivity is about 12%. So again, we're moving in the right direction. This is the cases per 100,000. We continue to drop, which is very good news. Test positivity is dropping as well. We want to bring your attention to the state dashboard for K-12 public education. It is a consistent tool across the state. It provides much of the same information that we've been providing. So I believe we are going to begin deferring to that dashboard for data updates. And I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Echard. Oh, this is a, I'm sorry. This is one of the displays that's provided. There are five different displays that are updated every week. And we can get you that URL if you need it. So unfortunately, I probably won't be able to go quite as fast as Dr. Lamarcus. But just on vaccinations, in partnership with Washoe County Health District, we will be hosting COVID vaccination clinics at our schools for staff, students and the community. And as with adults, these vaccinations are free of charge for anyone 12 and over. These vaccination clinics will be run by the Washoe County Health District with support volunteers from Washoe County School District. Just want to make sure everybody knows, it's important to note that vaccines for children 12 or 18 and, under 18 require parental consent in Nevada. So per the Washoe County Health District's request, we have set up a redundant system for ensuring consent. Guardians will fill out a one-page permission slip health form that is to be returned to the school, which includes an acknowledgement that they will be receiving a call to verify their permission. So Human Resources will be keeping a spreadsheet of these returned permission slips. And then Volunteer Services will then call guardians to verify that they were the ones who filled out the form. English and Spanish resources will be available for those calls. In regards to boosters, you've probably all heard it on the evening news, but I have had discussions with Washoe County Health District. And they have stated that people can make their own determination of being at a high-risk setting. And school staff are definitely eligible for boosters. And Pfizer is currently only one offering that's approved for boosters. And you can either go to your neighborhood pharmacy or go through the Washoe County Health District. And this is just a, a list of the current vaccination sites, dates and times for students since Pfizer vaccine will be administered. The second shot will be approximately three weeks later. Community members will have a choice of Pfizer and Moderna or Johnson and Johnson. And this information is also on our website and postcards to neighboring zip codes are being mailed out. Uh, oh, you'll also be able to get a booster there for Pfizer if you so, for a community member. And a school-specific connect ed call to parents will be sent out to the, via the principals. And it should be noted that these efforts are not ensuring, are just to ensure awareness and access, not promotion. And lastly, I really need to thank Melissa McClish and Human Resources for all of her ongoing work on organizing all this. She's just been amazing. And with that, I'll turn this over to Superintendent McNeil.
All right. Thank you very much. Dr. McNeil?
No, thank you very much. And I also want to thank our partners at the, at the Health District. This is an important opportunity to have those available. And then also to Dr. Lamarcus and his work on the dashboard. And so most likely, we'll be transitioning within the next two weeks to the state's dashboard. We want to give ample time to make sure that we can make that transition. It should be pretty streamlined, easy. But at this time, I have no recommendations to change any of the efforts, mitigation efforts that we are currently doing within our school district.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Let's go to public comment.
Melanie Sutton.
First?
The board also received an email from Elizabeth Eisenhower related to this item.
Thank you.
All right, let me work on this.
Ms. Sutton, thank you for putting it on.
Is this going to take my three minutes?
No, it won't. But we need you to keep it on once you put it on, okay?
No, I know, I, you know.
I know. I know it's a hassle. I know it's a hassle. Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
All right. As you guys know, I come here the second and fourth Tuesday of every single month. So we, we don't just show up here. We show up to county commissioners. We show up to health board, the health department meetings. We show up to city council meetings. Guess what? We don't wear masks there. Health department, district meetings, we do not wear masks. But we're wearing them here. There is no kids here. There is not anybody barely even in this room. There's more in the health district meetings that I go to. There's more in, I went to county commissioners this morning. There was definitely way more in that room than there was here. We did not have to wear a mask. Those are the people that are making the decisions for the state with the governor, okay? We didn't have to wear a mask. But you're making us wear a mask here? Why? Why? Is it the power that you get off of this? Is that why you're doing it? Why else? It's your power. Your, your trip on power is why you're doing this to us. I don't wear a mask anywhere, never. I don't, I don't go into a casino. I do not wear a mask. I don't go anywhere and wear a mask. Only reason why I'm wearing one right now is so I can freaking have my First Amendment rights. It's so I can speak my mind. Okay. So I'm a taxpayer, but no way in H-E double hockey sticks will I allow my children to go to school in this district. You guys are a failure. I will never allow my children to go to school in this district. I will homeschool my kids. I am everywhere. I am all over this county, everywhere. I can't even go into a store without someone not knowing me because I'm everywhere, speaking my mind for our children. And we will take every single seat that is open, Rodriguez. You're in my district and I'm running.
Please, no personal attacks, okay? Thank you.
It actually wasn't an attack. I just said I was running. Um, because he's my, my representative. And then, so, uh, I, as you guys know, I never come here prepared, but it's been a long night. Uh, so we're calling all parents to take their children out of this school district because you guys are failing our children. Our children is our future.
About COVID, if you can say, this is the COVID item.
It is. Actually, it is. It's about masks. I thought this was about masks, right? You're failing our children by making the masks.
Stop the clock if you're going to interrupt or Taylor. Stop the clock. Reset our time.
Everything I've been talking about has been about COVID. And that, I had, I had 20 minutes or 20 seconds. My apologies.
Ms. Sutton, thank you. Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you.
You interrupted me at 20 seconds.
And everything I've talked.
Ms. Sutton, Ms. Sutton, I'm so, I'm, I'm sorry your time is up. I'm sorry. Thank you for being here.
You will be.
Craig Newton?
And I'm here for the domestic terrorist.
Mr. Newton?
Right, I got 5.01 when I get to 10.
My name is Craig Newton. I have nine kids. So I have 18 grandkids across the country. I have grandkids in several districts, none in Nevada. My kids in California, they have to wear a mask to school. Kids in Colorado, no mask, no restrictions at all in Colorado. Kids in Kentucky, they are doing away with masks in Kentucky. But my kid, my 12-year-old or, no, the 14-year-old has an exemption for asthma. The 11-year-old, you know, she's a little girl. She licks her lips a lot or something. Anyway, she got impetigo. So the doctor said she cannot wear a mask. You know, she's got to dry this out. Kids in Elastin County, they got exemptions for the mask because my 11-year-old or 10-year-old had some kind of dental problem because he was wearing a mask all day long. I know a lot of people like wearing a mask. I don't care. They can wear them all day long if they want to. They can wear them the rest of their life. They can gloom on their face. But I don't see why there's a mandate for a mask. Because we, we hear it all the time. People are getting exemptions and, and for good reasons. And it's just going to get more and more exemptions. People are going to get them. They're going to figure out how to get them. And they're going to get them. And when it's all said and done, what you get, guys did to our kids, my kids, my grandkids, you know, over this COVID thing, this phony pandemic, you're all going to be sued. You're all going to be sued. Civil suits, maybe even criminal lawsuits. I was a cop for 30 years and I've never seen anything like what you guys do. This, this, this school board is just ridiculous. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Newton.
Kathy Reyes.
Welcome, Ms. Reyes.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for, to the men and women in blue. We appreciate you guys. Not defund, but you guys need pay raises. Thank you. We appreciate you. And to the board, you're there, well, the teachers, the schools are there to teach my children, to teach our children, to teach our grandchildren. You're not there to worry about their health. It's my life, my choice. I should be parenting my kids. If I think they should have a COVID vaccine shot, then that should be entirely up to me until they reach the age of 18. Other than that, teach them. And you guys are not doing a very good job academically where Nevada sits amongst the other states. Now, again, with the COVID, when you put that up there that you will verify if they bring a signed note back from a parent, have you done your homework? I'm divorced. So if they call my ex-husband and he agrees to it, you didn't check with me. I don't agree. And most parents, when it comes to medical, it has to be discussed or I will take them back. I'm telling you right now, I don't want my child to have a shot. And I surely don't want you giving her one. And what I don't want is you mandating what is in her best interest as far as her health. I didn't see any one of you with me when I took her to urgent care. I don't see any one of you worrying about her when she's having a migraine because she's wearing these silly masks. It makes no difference. And I don't see one of you questioning, maybe behind closed doors you do, when if we got the vaccine, we don't have to wear the mask. But let's even go back before that. Two weeks, two weeks to bend the curve. That didn't work. Let's rack it up with now vaccines. Now we have to have boosters and more boosters. At what point, at what point do you, you draw the line and say enough is enough? Enough is enough. And here's something else. We can't go after the pharmaceutical companies, but we can go after our employers if anything happens as a result of mandating a booster, of mandating a shot in the beginning, let alone the boosters. We can sue you. And he's right. We can't go after the pharmaceutical companies, but we can go after our employers. So keep that in mind before you make that mandated. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Duran.
Good morning. So I do, I do support of mandatory masks and vaccine because of, I saw the COVID rate is very high. So obviously, because winter's coming, so more people get sick. So I, I'd like to let you know, I got a message for, from, back of me, said that, so the vaccine for Washoe County School District is not mandatory for the, for the all students to get the vaccine. You guys, so, because say that the student who are under 18 of eight have signed, had to sign by pair of guarded, a consent. So you guys have a power to, to let the kid to, not to get the vaccine. If you don't want to get vaccine, that's fine. That's fine. You have to report those toys. So that's not just your, that's your decision, not our decision. So, so I do support mandatory masks all the police because of Nevada system of higher education are, get, are mandatory vaccines for all the. because of Nevada's system of higher education are mandatory vaccines for all the college student, faculty, administrative, all kinds of stuff to get the vaccine before spring semester of 2022. And I think this, I think Washoe County School District do the same thing for all the police staff, administrative, all kinds of stuff, but not the students. Let the parent decide whether or not they want their child or student to get the vaccine or not. So, thank you. And Mrs. McNeil, I know you resigned, but that's off the topic.
Yeah, keep you on topic, Mr. Duran. Thank you.
So, I do support this agenda. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have for this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. Back here to the board, the superintendent does not have a recommendation. Do we make any changes on this? So, if it's a pleasure, we'll see, Dr. Nicolet.
Yes, thank you. I just want to ensure that I'm clear. I think I am, but I'm gonna, I need to ensure. So, on Slide fourteen, school COVID-19 vaccination opportunities, that is a service. It's not a mandate. It's not a recommendation. It's just a service for those who might choose to take advantage of it. Is that correct?
This is strictly for awareness and access for our parents and for those who choose to have a vaccination, whether it's a staff member, a student, or anybody in the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee Church?
Yes, question. So, to answer the question of the public speaker, are masks in this building right now mandated by the governor's directive?
Yes.
And to this date, we've had this discussion before, but absent a medical thing, which we can't ask. So, but for students or speakers or whoever, the commonly called shield is not acceptable in general. Is that correct?
Correct.
And just for clarification on that, to go further, and thank you for asking that question for those who think I'm just trying to be on a par trip. It's called a mandate. It's just called a mandate. That's all it is. It's a mandate. It's been a mandate. It's been nothing other than that. Secondly, asking that question in terms of a face shield, when the governor put out the directive way back, not even zero four, but way back, and they just, zero zero four?
The most recent one was zero four eight.
Right, zero four eight, but the definition of face covering is what Trustee Church is alluding to, and face shields were not included in that. However, as a board, we've allowed that for those who come and say they can't wear face masks. We've allowed that, but we don't really have to do that. And I think that's probably your point. But that's, you know, we've allowed that. We haven't made a big deal out of that. So, thank you for that clarification as well. And that's been ongoing since we started. We've done that. So. Other comments, questions? If not, there's no action taken forward, that they want forward, then we thank you. Thank you for all your work. All right. And now, we're going to move on to student representative Liv In Klein. Thank you, gentlemen. And we wanted to make sure, she said she wants to stay as long as she could, but the superintendent said, make sure you get home before it gets dark. And so, she left soon. So, we go to the superintendent's report.
I don't have one.
No superintendent's report tonight, okay? That's what happens when you come back from fall break. All right. And then, we have public comment. Do we have any closing public comments, JJ?
Valerie Fianaca.
Welcome, Ms. Fianaca.
I've got handouts for all of our members.
And when people give us a handout, we'll all get them. A gorgon.
I'm going to reference it in my speech. It's past my bedtime, so bear with me. I would like to address the issue of intimidation. As many of you must be aware now, if you live in my world, Attorney General Merrick Garland, at the direction of the National Association of School Boards, instructed the FBI to go after parents and community members who choose to exercise their right to free speech at school board meetings. This is offensive on so many levels. I'm almost speechless. Not totally, but almost. I have diligently attended school board meetings in place of my children who are working and keeping my business running. I've been respectful and tried to address this board to get things done cooperatively. I've never witnessed any threat of physical violence against any member of this board. There is Supreme Court precedent, New York Times v. Sullivan, that protects vigorous and heated debate. The Constitution gives the people the right to peaceably assemble and to petition the government, you, all of you, for redress of grievances. Critical race theory has now shown itself completely as a money-making scheme on so many levels that all involved should be ashamed. Several Washoe County School District affiliated people make money in this business. Attorney General Garland's daughter and son-in-law have been paid $270,000 by Washoe County School District for CRT materials and more by Clark County. This may very well be criminal. Panorama Education, which is an education resource company, we've heard that tonight before, is funded by Mark Zuckerberg, among other radicals. We will be keeping an eye out for the name Panorama Education. This all feeds into the issue that Mr. Apolito has been petitioning this board about for twelve years. They are collecting data, and Mark Zuckerberg is helping to fund this. We should all be super concerned. He, with the most data, controls AI. You see, folks, there's big money to be made from social, emotional learning, and critical race theory. It's always about the money. We need to flip this script and make it all about the education of our children. Up until this week, I was discouraged about the state of our district, but I felt there was hope in fixing the system. I now feel like there should be a mass exodus. I never in a million years thought I would have to contact the Washoe County Sheriff for anything, but I have now had personal contact with him three times in the last six months. Two of these contacts regarding this district. My reply to this board, the National School Board Association, the FBI, and the DOJ, bring it on. If this is how you really envision using the Patriot Act, there's no salvation for our country. Parents, grandparents, and caregivers, listen to me. Do not back down. Do not give up and do not be intimidated. The government serves only with the consent of we, the people. Don't forget that point.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
Shannon Coley.
Welcome, Ms. Coley.
Hi. I am not a public speaker. I dropped three college classes because I was asked to speak in front of them. When I am here, I wait in horror for my turn to speak. I am truly in awe of eloquent speakers like the paid activist whom Trustee Minneto praised at the last board meeting. I believe his name was Kalen Evans. I absolutely agree with him. These board meetings have often turned into a circus. We must do better. Because Mr. Evans is such a gifted speaker and writer, I would like to quote directly from a speech he gave at our Capitol in February. When citizens turn out, we are the ones that have the power. When citizens show up and have a unified voice and message, it is we who create change. We, as voters, have to hold our elected officials accountable. We, as community members, parents, business owners, and citizens of Nevada, have to hammer our message over and over. We need to speak louder. We aren't going to ask. We are going to demand. We have to understand it is up to us that can bring about change. When we show up, when we fight for our students, when we fight for ourselves, that is how change comes about. Such motivational words. I agree with them. He may have been talking about funding for education, but I absolutely believe those words ring true for every person who has ever showed up to these board meetings. But I do have to disagree with him on one point. He said several times that it is sad that the children are watching and they can't see adults have civil dialogue and conversations anymore. There is no dialogue here. Dialogue is not allowed. That is why I have asked for a town hall over and over, so there can be exchange of thoughts and ideas. What the kids are seeing is frustrated citizens and a lone trustee pleading to people who espouse diversity but will not tolerate it when it comes to opinions.
Thank you, Ms. Coley. Okay, we all know, do we just keep it down to a small thing, okay?
Roger Edwards.
Mr. Edwards? Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Well, good evening, Roger Edwards, for the record. Thank you for another fun-filled evening. I'd like to talk about the agenda. Every time I come before you, I talk about the agenda and focus. Tonight is just on the agenda. This agenda has no item, again, regarding quality of education, violation of Board Policy 5050 and 6605, possibly 5100, 5025, 5310, 576160, and others, just those that I'm familiar with. All of the above policies refer to topics like either quality of education or student success or similar in the opening description of the policy, and it's not on the agenda. I realize that quality of education is not the only item the board must consider, but considering the national and regional rankings of our school system, quality of education should be on every agenda. Come on, guys. Another agenda violation, Board Policy 4500. It's labeled staff freedom of speech. There's no item on this agenda allowing for staff trustees, in this case, freedom of speech or trustee presentation. We even have presentation by a school child, and we don't have a presentation by our trustees. This agenda is flawed dramatically. I recommend this board, the board's management should assure it follows its own policies completely before accusing any of its members of policy violations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Melanie Sutton.
Welcome back, Ms. Sutton.
Try and get through this real quick, because normally I don't write this stuff down. This time I did. Okay, so, as far as we've been calling for all parents to put their kids' futures, number one, and pull their kids out of this government schools, because it's no longer a public school system. It's a government school. They're indoctrinating our children. So, that's number one. And then, we need to blow up this school district and then rebuild because you guys suck. The kids, so the kids, all of my kids are in the... I'm hope school, my kids, because I don't trust any of the district. So, the reason why I'm here is because I want to fight for the children that are stuck in this system. I will do whatever and continue to do everything in my power to continue each of... to take each, every one of your seats. Not me personally, but find someone that will take them. Because obviously, I can only take one person's seat here because that's my district. We need leadership that will be in your positions that are for the kids and not for yourselves or the power that you guys have taken upon yourselves because you are not working for the children, because we can see this every single day, that you guys are here. You're not working for the children. You're working for yourselves, and you're working for your own power. And then, it is the job of the schools to do the best of their ability to educate our children and nothing else. Educate the children, nothing else. That's your job, is to educate the kids. That's all that you guys need to do. Make sure there's enough teachers. There's no need for dean of students and multiple extra staff members. It's the teachers, the top teachers in smaller class sizes to educate the students, right? That's common sense. I guess maybe there's no common sense in this room since all of you wear masks every single day. And then, also, lastly, I can't remember the last time I've ever been here where there's been, actually, who was that said it? I think it was you, that there's ever been anything on the agenda that has to do with the quality of the education of the children. It's silliness. The quality of the education of our children. Isn't that what this is about? I cannot remember one time that I've been here. Almost a year. I've been here. Every second and fourth Tuesday of every single month, I can't remember one time that there has been anything on the agenda for the quality of the education of our children. Not one time.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
Jeff Church.
Welcome, Mr. Church.
Good evening, folks. Jeff Church. Well, as you know, board reports has again been taken off the agenda. I'm very disappointed. I want to cover a couple of things tonight if I have time, but it seems that because Johnny and Mary were bad, the rest of you have to pay the price that you don't get to speak, respond to board public comments. You don't get to give your opinion on anything. Call it gagged, call it whatever you want. It's disappointing that somebody has to come over to this side of the podium. I think enough said on that, except that every elected body that I know of in Washoe County, and most of them statewide, have some form of board reports, board comments, et cetera, except now for us. I want to move on to our board policy meetings, something I've been meaning to discuss for a while. We hold monthly board policy meetings. I know of no other elected agency around that does that. My understanding is we didn't use to do it. I've sat through hours of those, talking about policies that we're not experts on. We talk about changing happy to glad, this to that, and then it comes back to us as a board of trustees anyway. So, I just think we need to reevaluate that. We need to look at saying, maybe having a group of experts, a group of people, possibly one appointed by each trustee, as I mentioned before, to sit on that committee instead of us. That would free up our time to concentrate on quality of education. So, I just don't think that they're productive for us to do that that way. Thank you. I think we need a complete review of policy in general. We have just hundreds of them. And many of them are repetitious. They overlap each other, and we don't ever look at that. We just look at each policy. Today, we're talking about policy, blah, blah, blah. Okay. And then, every year, we just lather, rinse, and repeat. But we really need to look at what can be consolidated, what can be done away with. And again, that should be done by a committee other than us. And again, that way, we concentrate on quality of education. Now, any of those issues can only happen if another trustee joins me in asking that that be agendized on a future agenda. And finally, I don't see it on the trustee calendar, but I've been informed that the proposed censure of myself is set for October 25th, a Monday at 4:00 p.m. My understanding is that's going to be not a general meeting, but a special meeting, so the people that show up will have, not have to wait like tonight to give their public comment on that, although I assume they can give public comment in general later in that meeting. But I just wanted to put that on the record, that to the best of my knowledge, we should make plans for October 25th, and if not, let's correct the record. But 4:00 p.m., October 25th, Monday, I invite the public to attend or to write pro or con. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Oh, I thought that was it. Okay. Welcome, Mr. Duran. My bad.
Okay, so... Oh, so, so I did, I read all the email about Jeff Church, of censor Jeff Church, all kinds of stuff.
Just remember, no personal attacks, okay?
Okay.
You can talk about the censure as a whole, but you can't personally tackle.
Okay, so, I got no enough address for that. So, I think the trustee cover, maybe a white step for a school district because he doesn't live in two school districts. So, I would like to keep a message from anti-vax and anti-mask. So, I do, I know that sometimes you disagree with me, but if you disagree with scientists or all kinds of stuff, or if you harass the people who support mask mandate or vaccine mandate, or if you're fighting a termination... mandate, to ask you, you're buying a termination, that you as a total janitor or guard will hunt you down, so I let you know, so. So it, so, so I do, and I want to meet one-on-one meeting with Jeff Church at a meeting, give me a good reason why she should not be censored. Give me a good reason. So, so, and I'd like to concede the race, congratulation, to concede the race of 2024 for District Eight School for Canada and not go be one, so, because of we dissuaded all the kind of stuff. So I disqualify until 2028, District School Board, so remember. And, oh, also, I want to say a message to Fox News, back statement to, I'm apologize, I'm apologize for the action. If you disagree with me, I'm okay with that. Your opinion matter, my opinion is matter. So, so, and I got a message for Fox News. Happy 24, 24 year anniversary for you, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
John Appolito.
Welcome back, Mr. Appolito.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm John Appolito with Protect Nevada Children, and I'd like to thank the board for the discussion we had earlier about Infinite Campus. Thank you very much. I did notice on Ms. Smith's comments, the sheet that I gave out, the first four of those are legitimate data breaches. So I'll email those to you, because I think Ms. Smith spoke out her turn. Two things that didn't come up, who can Infinite Campus sell the company to? Can they sell that company to the Chinese, the Russians, the North Koreans? Who can Infinite Campus be sold to? I read through the package, the agreement with the school district, I didn't see it addressed at all. So that's something that we should find out. And even if there is never a data breach because of Infinite Campus affecting Washoe County School District students, the other thing that didn't come up, simply the existence of these databases, Infinite Campus and Sane, how is that going to affect the future of our kids? Your kids, your kids, my kids? We don't know. We know in Washington, there is some legislation to try to get that national student database that both the far left and the far right have been saying we shouldn't have, but there are people that want that. So we don't know how it's going to affect the future of our kids. So if we could get the, what we talked about five, maybe four or five years ago, the district has said we're trying to delete some of this data after time. Bryn told me outside, they're still trying that. It may never happen. Parents really deserve to know what's going on. It was a great discussion, most parents still have no idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
Natalie Mastick.
Welcome, Ms. Mastick.
Hi, I'm Natalie Mastick, and I'm a senior at Reno High School. I didn't really come prepared today, because I wasn't sure that I would be able to talk. But I know that there's been a lot of talk today about that, about just COVID in general, and just, for the record, I am, as a student, I am pro-mask, I am pro-vaccine, I think it's very important that we protect each other as students and we protect our teachers. But I wanted to talk today about a promise that was made by the board meeting, or the board of trustees in 2015 or 2016, I forgot the exact year, but the board made a promise to reduce water use, as we are in a massive drought. And I, it was decided in that meeting that there would be a lot of water reduce, water use reduced in lawns, in schools, because it is a massive problem. But I just haven't seen any evidence of that. I, personally, I go out into the lawn of my school, and it's damp, it's full of mud, it's, it's watered to the point where the grass is dying, because it's just so full of water. And I just don't think that that's sustainable, and I know that the board previously made a promise to reduce water usage, and I haven't seen any evidence, since I've been active at the school board meetings, that this promise has been, continued to be made, even as we, even as the drought has worsened, even as we have not been getting enough water. And I would just like to see a recommitment to that promise and a recommitment to helping reduce the school district's impact on climate change in general. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mastick.
Kathy Reyes.
I think, I think my superintendent wanted to just, would you want to just clarify?
JJ was very quick.
I'm sorry, Ms. Reyes, we'll get right back to you.
Hey, Natalie, what I will do, dear, is I will have somebody from our Capitol Projects staff get in touch with you over at Reno High School, as far as the efforts that we do have as far as reduction of water. So I'll have somebody get in touch with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Reyes, please. Thank you.
Hi, good evening again. I spoke on the agenda item, now it's open. So thank you once again. And once again, to the men and women in blue, we appreciate you. We appreciate you. Anyways, getting back to that, to elaborate, articulate a little bit more, once again, like I said, you guys are supposed to educate our children, and you guys are holding Jeff Church accountable for competency. And as Roger stipulated, if you are not putting that on the agenda, who's responsible for that? And just like Roger, we never hear you addressing the grades, where we fall out of 50 states, and why hasn't it changed? Even a slight bump, even a bump from, let's say, 38 to 35, to me, I'd see a remarkable improvement and say, you guys are doing your job, you need to be reelected. Several of you didn't run, so as far as your constituents, you're not listening to your constituents, you were appointed by, in this position. So you are not getting out there listening to your voters, because if you were, you would then understand, we're done with the mask, teach our kids, the traditional, three Rs. Stop with trying to tell our children that you know best for their health. Stop. Get back to the basics. Get rid of the silly programs that you put in. I don't want to hear another teacher say she doesn't have the time. Yeah, you do, but you got all these other silly classes and projects, because that's what you're instituting in our institutions of education, and that's why we're so low on the totem pole. And were you aware, and I'm sure you are, and if you're not, you should be, from the seats that you occupy, that most of the kids graduating from high school have to be remedial because they're not making the academic levels of those classes, the instructions? And from what I know, from, they dropped some of those classes, but the kids were having to be remedial, because they're not getting it when they should at their prospective K through, K through K. They're not getting it. Why? That falls on you. Getting tired of hearing all your pet projects and whatnot, your new schools and whatnot, that's great, and I understand you have to do it, but like Roger said, you're not. And if that's a violation, then we should either recall or censure you or file on you guys for that violation. And I will be checking with Roger on that and doing the homework to find out if that in fact is legit. If you're required to be put in it and addressing it, regardless of what scale, then get it on the agenda and address it. Let's get these grades up, because other people will be occupying these seats come 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes.
The board received emails from Michael McStroll, Joan Brivett, Allison Galden, Jennifer Tibbin, Robert Ares, and Dinah Anderson Mayer.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for those who stayed late to give your public comment. We appreciate it, we really do, and we will see you in a couple of weeks. We are adjourned.